Good evening and welcome to the City Council meeting for November 30th. I hope you all had an enjoyable Thanksgiving and hopefully some of you had power. Yeah. Would you please join us in pledging allegiance to the flag?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, can we please do the roll call?
Councilmember Adam?
Here.
Councilmember Jones?
Here.
Councilmember McNamie?
Here.
Mayor Protem Engler?
Here.
And Mayor Bill De La Peña?
Present. Thank you very much. We have no special announcements, so we will go straight to public comments. Madam Clerk?
This is a time and place for public comments for those wishing to address the City Council regarding items on the agenda or on a subject within the city's jurisdiction. All remarks should be addressed to the Council as a whole. Speakers are requested to state their name and community of residence for the record. Under state law, public comment matters be considered by the Council unless listed on the agenda but may be referred to the City Manager for administrative follow-up. Two individuals have requested to speak, and pursuant to Council standards, speakers are allowed three minutes.
Thank you very much. My computer is recycling. I'm not sure who the first speaker is. Madam Clerk, do you know?
Karen Wilburn.
Karen Wilburn. And is she here in person? Yes. And after Karen Wilburn, who will it be?
Natalia Staniva.
Natalia Staniva, in person? Okay, thank you. Good evening. Could you please start again? I forgot to turn on the microphone.
Okay.
No problems. Go ahead.
All right. My name is Karen Wilburn, and I'm a resident of Newberry Park. I'm here tonight to speak about transparency during public meetings. I was opposed to the Borchardt project. In April, I was maligned during a planning commission meeting by a speaker reading a long list of untrue comments that were supposedly posted on Nextdoor and at the end attributed these posts to me, Karen Wilburn of Newberry Park. In May, the same speaker spoke at a council meeting describing how she had to go out of town to meet up with her friends. The speaker was the wife of the owner of the Borchardt property. At the recent planning meeting, a VP of Architecture at Caruso spoke in favor of the development. The president of a local PR firm who does work for Toba, who supports this development, also spoke in favor. Thursday's supplemental packet had two letters from the same family in favor of the Caruso project. The husband, who owns AFC Real Estate, is a longtime friend of Caruso and acted as his exclusive leasing manager for years. The internet even lists him as the president of The Grove, a Caruso project. His wife, in her letter, states that they have found it impossible to find an affordable home to rent for their kids. They live in a 9,000-square-foot home in Lake Sherwood, so I doubt affordability is something they face. The common thread here is all of these people spoke as if they are just another Thousand Oaks resident without disclosing their affiliations. As residents of Thousand Oaks, they certainly have the right to speak. However, they should be required to disclose any conflict of interest they have. This should apply to anyone who would benefit financially or has financial ties to the developer. This should include realtors, PR firms, chamber members, family members, and employees of developers. Normal citizens are usually pretty open about their motivations to speak. Shills are for poker games and carnivals, not city meetings. I ask that you explore implementing such a requirement and keep transparency in our city on both sides of the dais. Thank you.
Thank you. We have one more. Our next speaker is Suzanne Duckett.
Good evening. Suzanne Duckett, Thousand Oaks. We need everybody to get down here tonight because this city, with a 3-2 vote, will go towards San Fernando Valley. Now, we need to be here so that you can see, so that you can evaluate three City Council people. To see, we need to evaluate them to see if you want to elect people who are non, who are reputable, people who have character, and take our city in an important way that we want our city to go. We need to address the City Manager. We need to get a new City Manager. We need people here who don't want rats at the transit center. That transit center is overrun with rats. We need a City Manager who builds for some homeless, so the homeless don't overrun our city. The city, because it does not have homeless, does not have homeless properties, they can go anywhere in the city. They are not restricted to go and stay overnight in any city property. Now, we need a City Manager who knows how many businesses are for lease. The city is overrun with for-lease business inventory. We need a City Manager who knows what the power lines are doing. The Southern California Edison needs to know when we have power lines that are up or power lines that are underground. Power lines that are underground, those houses should not be turned off in a wind-blowing situation. So, we need a City Manager who knows what's going on in the city.
Thank you. Your time is up.
Okay.
Thank you. And just for the record, our City Manager has the full trust and confidence of the City Council.
What?
Thank you.
What?
Next speaker.
What did you say?
I said, for the record, this Council has full confidence in our City Manager and City Attorney.
Well, I don't know.
Thank you. Next speaker, Natalia Staniva. Via Zoom, please.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I wanted to wish you all happy holidays and thank you for your investment a few months ago in the arts. And with your help and the help of our volunteers and donors, we're actually opening the season this weekend on December 4th. And I know I'm changing the subject a little bit, but I wanted to invite everyone to experience the Tales of Winter that we are presenting on December 4th in Thousand Oaks at 7:30 at Civic Arts Plaza. This is our inaugural holiday concert, and just like we survived the pandemic, with the help of a lot of partners, we engaged a lot of partners to help us put the season-opening concert together. So, we will have Los Robles Children's Choir, we will have ballet dancers, we have a comedian, Jim Maskeman, and the concert will be with a full symphony orchestra. So, I just wanted to invite the community to experience it. We have pricing starts at $10 for kids and $25 for adults. And if you visit our website, www.newwestsymphony.org, you can learn a lot about our season opening. And I just wanted to wish you happy holidays and thank everyone for helping us restart the arts in Thousand Oaks. And I know today's subject is, some of them are very heavy, but I think that the arts will have the power to uplift and inspire, so please join us this weekend. Thank you so much.
Thank you. That was Natalia Staniva, the Executive Director of New West Symphony. And indeed, the arts nourish our souls. And Natalia, I will see you on Saturday for the season opener of the New West Symphony.
Can't wait. Thank you all. Thank you.
All right. And next, we have our consent calendar. Are there any items that the Council wishes to move? None, then I will ask for a motion.
So moved.
Thank you. Motion by Councilmember Adam. Please vote.
Councilmember Adam?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember McNamie?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Engler?
Yes.
And Mayor Bill De La Peña?
Yes.
And that motion carries 5-0. And I do have two ordinance titles to read into the record. Ordinance adopting specific plan number 21, 1872 Newberry Road, and its associated general plan amendment, and authorizing the land uses and development standards in said specific plan, applicant Daylight, Thousand Oaks LLC, ordinance number 1689 NS, and an ordinance amending the Thousand Oaks Municipal Code, repealing in its entirety Chapter 2, Article 11 of Title 10, and adding Chapter 2, Article 11 of Title 10, adopting regulations for water conservation, ordinance number 1690 NS.
Thank you. And with that, we will go to our very much anticipated public hearing on the lakes, item number 8A. Madam Clerk?
Hearing advertised as required by law is open to consider Agenda Item 8A, mixed-use project at 2200 East Thousand Oaks Boulevard, The Lakes, applicant TO Lakes LLC. Speakers are requested to state their name and community of residence for the record. Fifty-eight individuals have presented speaker cards, and pursuant to Council standards, the applicant is allowed 15 minutes with a five-minute rebuttal, and remaining speakers are allowed two minutes.
Thank you so much. We will go to the presentation by the senior planner assigned to this, Mr. Nazar Slim. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, Madam Mayor, City Council members, city staff, and members of the public. The presentation tonight before you is for a horizontal mixed-use project known as The Lakes on 2200 Thousand Oaks Boulevard. Tonight, staff would ask that City Council accept the Planning Commission recommendation to approve the project and to adopt the resolution approving general plan amendment from commercial to commercial residential, to approve development permit for the construction of up to 165 unit apartment buildings and associated site improvements, to approve a land division which would divide the existing land parcel into two airspace lots residing on top and below the remaining ground parcel, approve a protected tree permit which would allow the encroachment of five protected trees, accept the mitigated negative declaration and the monitoring, or sorry, mitigation monitoring plan, approve the sale of the property pursuant to the terms and conditions set forth in the development agreement and purchase and sale agreement, approve the amended and restated maintenance, use, and reciprocal easement agreement pursuant to the terms and conditions set forth in the development agreement, read ordinance, sorry, read ordinance and title only, and if no objection, introduce ordinance to amend specific Plan 11 to modify and establish specific development standards for the mixed-use project, including residential development standards. Read ordinance and title only, and if no objection, introduce ordinance to approve development agreement. Now, for some background, the physical site itself is a 7.5-acre parcel located at 2200 Thousand Oaks Boulevard between Lakes Drive and Conejo School Road. It's currently developed with approximately 51,000 square feet of commercial center space, mostly composed of three buildings and associated parking lot, and that's a gross square footage. Topography of the site is relatively flat. It's improved with the parking lot and does have a slight transition upward from Thousand Oaks Boulevard onto the hillside adjacent to the 101 freeway. For some history on the project itself, in 2021, this year, on February 9th, City Council did initiate a general plan amendment, also allocated 228 units for the residential portion of the project, of which only 165 units are being used, endorsed the mixed-use concept. On June 16th, there was a pre-application meeting that was conducted with the applicant, and a pre-application meeting letter was also issued. On July 22nd, the applicant began submitting formal applications. On November 15th, the Planning Commission hearing was held. With regards to relationship to the downtown core, the project itself is a functional extension of the future modifications to the Civic Center campus. It is a key section of the downtown core. As such, the project itself furthers the realization of these Council adopted downtown core goals, adds to a walkable environment, adds more people who would live, work, and shop in within the core, activates the area and creates placemaking in line with the objectives contained in the downtown core master plan. It also introduces an additional mixed-use concept to the core. The project process itself has went through the pre-screen process, which City Council approved in concept, did do a pre-application review, as I noted. The formal applications were applied for, have the dates there corresponding. All these requisite steps having been satisfied, the Planning Commission has made a recommendation of approval to City Council. For some surrounding land uses, I have this slide here. It does present that there are some commercial uses to the north of Thousand Oaks Boulevard in the site, also to the west, as is City Hall and the Civic Center Plaza. To the southeast, we've got residential development, and 101 north, sorry, 101 freeway to the south of the project. We now turn to evaluating the project. The project summary is, again, up to 165 unit apartment building. It is going to be located on a separate air parcel, and will may have up to six associated carports, which is covered parking for the parking, residential parking. It does also reconfigure the parking lot, and as I noted, it's on a separate airspace and does have a parcel size of about 2.5 acres. In terms of architectural materials, it is going to employ a smooth-texture stucco panel array, if you will, along with aluminum window trim. And this elevation does show the six levels of living area over the podium parking. This is the north elevation. This is just a side elevation, I believe, the west, just to give you an idea of the side view in relation, again, to the 101 freeway there. During the course of the review process and after the Planning Commission hearing, the applicant had heard comments and had voluntarily made a change. They did let staff know, however, we don't have the full set of plans at this time, but the action does reduce the total number of stories by one floor. Here, we have it pictured with the old elevation with the top floor removed via the red cross hatching. So, it now goes to five levels of living area over podium parking. It does retain all the other architectural features that I spoke of. And this, again, would be just a north elevation for reference. This is a photo simulation of what that change might look like. As submitted, this picture does show what a seven-story apartment building may look like as seen at the intersection of Conejo School Road and Thousand Oaks Boulevard, looking towards the 101 freeway and ridge line. You can see this north, or sorry, the orange arrow here does point to the ridge, sorry, the roof line or parapet line of the building itself. I do have it noted in white, so you can see it clearly. I also highlighted the existing tree line that we see, sort of just adjacent to the, well, not really adjacent to the building, but adjacent to the property line. This next slide will demonstrate kind of the difference. And as you can see here, removing that extra floor does drop the roof line almost in level with the existing trees that are out there, at least from this perspective, obviously. That's all a perspective and ratio. I'm just going to toggle back just a little bit here, back and forth, just so you can see the difference. So, this is with seven, and this is with six. To continue the project summary, I spoke a little bit about the architecture materials. I want to talk about the form. It is contemporary in nature. There are building accents, horizontal as well as vertical treatments, banding, if you will, that help to separate the floors, so it helps to break up the mass. There's also some undulating roof line, and I believe the top floor also does have some additional relief to it, pop-outs and cutouts, if you will. It also has two wings that come off the main part of the building. Those wings are angled, so they do help to minimize a monolithic, you know, monolithic appearance of the structure itself. And also, the color palette that's being used is natural and muted, so it does help to blend in with the natural hillside that's behind it. The units that there are going to be proposing, whether it 165 or less, do meet RENA requirements. They do help fulfill that requirement to have housing within the city. The unit mix is as follows. There's going to be six one-bedroom units, 100 two-bedroom units, and five three-bedroom units. The amenities included with this project is a pool area and deck. There's a fitness center, an entry court. In total, the common area comes out to about 13,324 square feet. Now, I'm turning, kind of looking now towards private open space, and these are private balconies or decks that would be adjacent to the units that people would reside in. And they do range. They range anywhere from 80 square feet to 944 square feet. This is just a typical segment I took off of one of the levels. This one happened to be Level R6. And just to give you an idea of the sort of the variety of sizes and how they are placed within the building. I did note that the 80 square feet is below the 100-square-foot minimum standard that's found in Thousand Oaks Municipal Code. However, we did, staff did consider the fact that this project does offer 13,000 square feet of common open space, and that the project is located in very close walking proximity to The Lakes, which is a public park and one of the city's amenities that's widely used. And so, again, with that proximity and that access, we felt this would have been acceptable. For parking?
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Jones?
Yes. I didn't catch the first part of your last sentence, or the subject matter of your last. matter of your last. What was it that was 80 square feet? Or?
So, yes, so the private, private balconies and decks in this case go as low as 80 square feet, but go as high as 944 square feet. So 80 square feet is tip, is about 20 square feet below, but our current minimum is.
Oh, okay, you're talking about balconies.
Correct, just the balcony and deck spaces.
Thank you.
And that's, that's the private balcony and deck spaces. Turning our attention to parking, there is going to be a total of 551 parking spaces. The residential parking spaces are at 259, commercial parking spaces are at 292. It is, should be noted that the parking in general does meet or exceed specific Plan 11 as amended, and all the residential and commercial spaces will be parked exclusively on the airspace lots that they're, that they reside on. So the commercial spaces will be on the commercial airspace lot, and the residential spaces will be retained on the residential airspace lot. There's no need for shared parking. I should have also noted, there's actually a surplus of 26 parking spaces for the commercial section. Here's just another view of the parking layout. In general, there's going to be 136 spaces that are going to be contained within the building, within the podium portion of the building, and the subterranean parking as well. 123 of those residential spaces will be a combination of surface area parking or parking that's covered by carports. The commercial will have 292 surface parking spaces, and those are distributed throughout the parking lot that we all know now or familiar with, as well as some dedicated parking along Thousand Oaks Boulevard. This next slide does show the, the concept I've been talking about in terms of the land division and airspace lots. As you can see here, we've got the ground, the ground lot pictured. That ground lot remains to be 7.5 acres, however, there's going to be two airspace lots. One is going to be devoted to the residential portion, and the other is going to be devoted to the commercial portion. They do have a dimension above and below the ground, the ground parcel, and this configuration here is really more just to demonstrate the concept. This line has been reconfigured to, to better meet the current conditions. Next, we'll examine trees on site. Initially, when the application came in, there were 27 trees inventoried. During the course of review and during the course of validating the applicant's arborist report, we did send city personnel out and consultants, and they did determine that one of the trees was an immediate hazard, and therefore, city did take action and remove that. It was a valley oak, I believe. Of the remaining, we do have 26 trees that were considered. Of those 26 trees, only five were near any potential improvements, and those were the ones that were considered and evaluated for minor encroachment and minor pruning. This next slide kind of gives you an idea of the, of the layout and where those trees are located. The majority, as you can see, are, are right here to the, to the west of the slide, or rest of the property or development, and they really are unaffected, so there was no, they, they had plenty of distance between any development, any improvements. These other five that I mentioned are kind of closer to the pool deck area and potentially some site infrastructure, and hence, there was some minor encroachment. But in all cases, they are going to be retained, and there shouldn't be any, any other mitigation measures besides safeguarding the distance that's, that's been allowed to go in on, other, to allow to encroach on. And this red symbol here that I have shown, that's, that was the hazardous valley oak that I had mentioned that was removed. From here on, I'm going to turn the presentation over to other staff professionals to discuss the history of development of the parcel itself. And with that, I want to introduce Assistant Attorney Patrick Heer.
Thank you, Mr. Slim, and good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the council. Tonight, I'm going to discuss three legal agreements that are before you for your consideration. Before I do so, however, I will briefly discuss some of the history of the Lakes site and the development at the Lakes. And this history frames the options that the parties had in working through and developing the drafts that are before you tonight, these three agreements. If you can go to the slide. The one before that, please. Thank you. So in 2000, the city and the redevelopment agency and T.O. Lakes, they entered and executed a disposition and development, development agreement for the current commercial project. This DDA that outlines a general development of approximately 160 to 190,000 square feet of the commercial center. It would include retail, office use, restaurants, and even a movie theater. And it also was going to create the pond parcel. In 2002, the DDA was amended, and in that amendment, it reduced the overall project to 98,000 square feet. And there was two phases that were going to be executed, and phase one was going to be approximately 51,000 square feet of restaurant and retail, and phase two was going to be another approximate 50,000 for the movie theater and parking structure. And this DDA, DDA amendment in 2002 eliminated the office uses for the project. Next slide, please. Now in 2004, as part of this construction, the city, or the RDA and T.O. Lakes LLC, they executed a ground lease and a maintenance, use, and reciprocal easement agreement, or REA. The, the term of the lease was 55 years plus four 10-year options. If the Crusoe, T.O. Lakes or the Crusoe family were to use those options, this lease can go out to 2099. As far as lease payments to the city, it was based on a 12% preferred rate of return on development cost. Now, the permitted uses of this 48,000 to 51,000 square feet were for restaurant and retail, but the theater use that was contemplated initially was, had expired by 2009 because it was a five-year time, time window. Now, also, the REA sets forth maintenance obligations and easement rights for the parties for the uses of the area, including the pond parcel. Next slide. So in 2004, as part of this ground lease and the REA, T.O. Lakes retains the option to purchase the property during the entire lease term. The city is legally obligated, legally obligated to sell the property if Crusoe were to use that option. The city cannot sell the property to anyone else without their permission. The sale's price is either $2 million or the fair market value, whichever is higher. And the fair market value, according to the terms of this lease, is limited to the vacant, unimproved land and limited to the uses permitted in the ground lease. Next slide, please. So the three legal documents that we're going to talk about now include the purchase and sell agreement, an amended and restated maintenance, use, and reciprocal easement agreement, as well as the development agreement. Now, the purchase and sell agreement sets terms and timing, the process of how you're going to have the purchasing, the purchase of the property take place, including the option to purchase and the closing timeline. All those are contained in the purchase and sell. There are several conditions in that agreement that must be met before the purchase can take place. The purchase price is $2 million based on terms in the ground lease. The applicant must formally exercise the option within one year and then close the purchase within two additional years from that option exercised. Important for all of us is that the impact fees, like any developer has to pay, certain permits and permit fees that might be attributed to a development, all those, the impact fees and certain permit fees, must be submitted or paid for before the close of escrow for this purchase of the property. If the closing happens, the existing DDA and the ground lease are terminated. The REA that is in place right now is going to be amended and restated, and it's going to have additional terms based on additional uses that are anticipated for this project. Next slide, please. So the second document is an amended and restated maintenance, use, and reciprocal easement agreement. As we all know about the pond parcel, that is city-owned and will remain city-owned, and the pond parcel includes the front area where the lakes are, are located, the ponds, and also the front part of that street that goes from T.O. Boulevard towards the back of the retail operation. The applicant will own the ground parcel and two air parcels. The two air parcels are, of course, the retail parcel and then the residential parcel. The applicant will continue the obligations to maintain the pond parcel, just like they have now. The mutual easements that the parties enjoy and use and need for the properties adjacent to each other will continue. This would include such things as access to driveways, sidewalks, and enter, enter streets that are enclosed, and allows for the continuing ability for the city to advertise on the parcel. Next slide. So with this amended REA, there are some new easements that are contemplated based upon the residential parcel being developed. One of these easements is on the west side, or the side closest from the proposed apartment structure to the Civic Arts Plaza, and this is for a fire access. Now, the fire access is not actually for the fire department to take their vehicles or to use ladders, it is just for an access, an open area, to be maintained so that if people need to flee the building for some emergency, that they can have access to this area as part of an escape route. That just means that for this easement, the city will not be able to put any type of structures, such as a wall or any other type of building, to block that type of access. The other part of this west side easement is for, to allow for the balconies that are going to be on this apartment complex facing the west to overhang onto this city parcel property. Another set of easements that are part of this amended REA include the use of the service road that runs from Conejo School Road west to the rear of the Cavali Theater where the stage is. And, of course, with the access, the purpose of that access is to obtain access for the, the rear portion of the apartment complex that's being built and contemplated in that location. As part of those easements, they are also going to be allowed to build and maintain 24 exclusive parking stalls for tenants and workers or employees at the complex. In addition to these easements, there's also some new revocable licenses that are for landscaping, lighting, some security. All of these are, again, on the south side or the backside of the apartment complex as proposed. These new revocable licenses also would, would allow for them to build pool equipment and a pool enclosure for that equipment on the city property, fencing and an additional sitting area on that parcel, a part of the parcel. Next slide, thank you. The third document, of course, is the development agreement. And as we've said before, each development agreement is unique because it's going to be based on the factors of the development and, and the zoning and the land uses that are in place and, and other burdens that might be on the property. The development agreement sets forth, of course, public and private benefits. It sets forth the rights and obligations, conditions regarding the development of a multifamily residential building and related or necessary parking. It includes project approvals that are contingent on the agreement, and the applicant must purchase the property as part of this contingent condition precedent. With a typical development agreement, this one freezes the zoning code, but not the building codes. The building codes are something that are changed by the state every approximately three years, and the city adopts those new building codes. Again, those are going to change over time, and so it will depend upon when the development starts. This agreement requires the applicant to formally exercise the purchase option within 180 days or two, with two 90-day options, and that's where we get the approximate year for the option to purchase. The term of the development agreement is five years. That does not include the community benefits fee that, again, extend over time, and those will remain inactive. The purchase and sell agreement, as well as the REA, are exhibits in this development agreement. And the community benefits that we will talk about in more detail in a minute, the valuation and the payment schedule, those are an exhibit E to this development agreement. So with that, I'm going to turn this over to Finance Director Jamie Boscarino for further discussion.
Thank you, Patrick. As part of the DA, there are community benefit payments that are required of the applicant. This is distinct and separate from the purchase of the existing property and not part of the purchase price. As mentioned at the prescreen approval by city council, the existing mixed-use ground lease was the starting point for our discussions. Without approval of a new DA, the existing DDA and lease would remain in effect and likely continue to provide zero rental revenue for the city long into the future. If all extension options were exercised by the applicant, the lease would remain in place in its existing structure until 2099. In evaluating how the community benefit payments would be structured, staff's goal was to accomplish what the existing lease has not, to provide an ongoing revenue stream long-term to the city that is not tied to achievement of a performance return factor in order to contribute a payment. The city is in a very strong financial position, but of course, there is always uncertainty as to what the future holds 10 years, 15 years, 20 years from now. Thus, it is a prudent and strategic financial decision to structure the community benefit payments over multiple years, as opposed to a much smaller lump sum upfront. Staff negotiated in good faith with the applicant for a community benefit payment of $79,365 per actual residential dwelling unit constructed, for up to 13.1 million based on 165 units. Per the community benefit schedule, the payments would begin the 48th month after certificate of occupancy and would occur annually thereafter until all payments have been made. Payments start out at 1% of the total community benefit payments and increase each year, each, every five years to 5.31% of the total community benefits payments in years 34 through 37. This revenue would be receipted in the city's general fund, but could be restricted for use towards any number of city council priorities, including homelessness and affordable housing projects. And with that, I'll turn it back over to Mr. Slim to conclude our presentation.
Thank you very much. With that, staff would like to reiterate the recommendation to accept planning commission recommendation to approve the project and adopt, accept, and approve as appropriate the applications, agreements, ordinances, and resolutions stated at the beginning of the presentation, all based on staff report findings and subject to the conditions of approval in the attached ordinances and resolutions. With that, the presentation is concluded. Staff is available for questions.
Thank you very much for the presentation. My intention was to go from left to right, but Mr. Adam raised his hand, and I figured, since I don't have a mechanism here to, to gauge who is going first, we will start that in January for you, Mr. Mayor Protem. You'll have that convenience. I'd like to limit it, however, to three questions each, so everybody gets to know, gets to ask questions, and then we can go for additional rounds. Mr. Adam.
Well, thank you for your generosity, Mayor. And, well, I have a theme, there may be a little more than three questions, but it's an overall theme, so. That's very good, yes, thank you. And thank you, everyone, for the presentation, nice and concise. I want to talk a little bit more about the financial terms, and Ms. Boscarino, we, maybe you and I can talk a little bit about that. And as we've all seen, the $2 million is the purchase price, and there's a potential for another 13 million on top of that spread out over a number of years. And as you mentioned, right now, we're not getting any revenue from the lakes, and the likelihood that they ever will, that we ever will is just about nil, because as, as I understand it, all these years that they haven't hit 12% have collected in, in arrears, so if we ever did hit 12%, there's enough deficit that would, that would basically wipe that out. So the, the likelihood of ever getting revenue, revenue all the way through 2099 is just about, just about nil. And if I, if I have my numbers right, the, the payments accelerate, but in, in the largest years, it could be as much as about 700,000, is that correct?
I think they were a little, a little under 700,000.
Okay, approximately, 700,000 in the peak years. Approximately $700,000 in the peak years. I think there's a little more than that, though. The Caruso Company pays a kind of a quasi-property tax on this project. I forget, what is it called again?
Currently, they pay possessory interest taxes because it is governmental-owned property, so governments do not pay property tax, but because they lease the property from a governmental entity, then they're required to pay possessory interest taxes.
And that's about quarter million a year, $250,000?
Yeah, in calendar year 2020, they paid about $250,000, $260,000.
And the estimates now, if this project goes through, the actual property tax could go as high as 800 to, 800,000 to perhaps $1 million a year. Wouldn't that be correct?
Yeah, it's all dependent on what their actual construction costs are of the project, and then the commercial property would also be valued, because it's all on one parcel. So our low-end estimates were about 800,000, but it could certainly significantly exceed the 800,000.
And you would think, over time, as the property appreciates in value, the property tax would also go up as well. And you and I both know where most of the property tax goes, right?
Yeah, the largest share of property tax in the city goes to our schools.
School district.
The school district.
School district. That 10 years ago had 22,000 students, is now down to 16,000 and dropping rapidly, from what I gather. A little, couple more financial things, just to put a shovel in the ground. It's going to cross the Caruso Company about $5 million, isn't it, with the fees and everything attached?
Yeah, we're, staff's estimating total, whether it's traffic impact fees, Quimby fees, which go to our Park District, school fees that go to CBUSD, building permit fees, we're estimating about $5 million.
About $5 million. $2 million on that of Quimby fees. Tell the audience where Quimby fees go.
Yeah, our, the Quimby fees go to CRPD, our Park and Rec District.
So Councilmember Jones, having served on the Park and Rec District for many years, I'm sure understands the value of Quimby fees.
Okay, don't bring me into your argument, please.
Okay, that's not an argument, it's just, just delving into some facts. Also, of course, the project right now is 50% vacant, so you might assume that if this, a project goes through, the vacancy rate would diminish, and so the sales tax we get from this project could potentially increase rather substantially as well, correct?
But that would be the goal.
That would be the, the hope, yes. And then, of course, there's the economic multiplier effect. You know, if 165 units are built and we bring in a couple 300 people, that's going to be a consumer base there that is going to help our arts and our theaters and some of the businesses around the area, whether it be Rhineland Deli, or Beckman Dry Cleaners, or Leonie's Water Ice, or Nothing Bund Cakes, you name it. So there's an economic multiplier effect as well, would you not agree?
Yes.
Okay. So if I got my numbers right, in peak years, if you count in the property tax, oh, and I forgot one other thing, as you all heard, the Caruso Company's obligated to take care of the pond parcel. They don't own it, but they have to take care of it, and it's two acres, and everybody enjoys the pond parcel. I've seen lots of people out there, it's got the ponds and the lakes and the bridges and places for the kids to play. It's not cheap to maintain that, it's $200,000 bucks a year. So if I've got my numbers right, on a peak year, between the 700 for the, for the agreement that we're looking at tonight, and the other 800 or so in property taxes, a couple hundred to maintain the lakes, or the pond parcel, we could be pushing $2 million a year. And the increased sales tax.
Correct, and obviously, if this were 30-plus years down the road, your property taxes would be quite a bit higher than that 800,000.
Yes. So I've just, it just seems to me that there's more to this deal than just the 15 million potential that's on the table. And just one other point I'll make, and then I'm done, Mayor. We're very fortunate this year to run a pretty substantial surplus here in the city, correct?
Yes, that's correct. We're just finalizing our fiscal year 2021 financial reports, which are due at the end of December, but our current projections are $23 million surplus in our general fund.
So, point being that, from a fiscal management standpoint, it's actually beneficial, considering the surplus we have, to accept these payments on a deferred basis. Would it, would it not be?
Yes, as I mentioned, that was, our goal was to bring in an ongoing income and revenue stream into the city, going out multiple years, instead of a much smaller lump sum contribution upfront, looking at, you know, long-term financial strategic planning that the city always does. It's a hallmark of our council and our staff. We look at long-term, and this would provide guaranteed income stream to the city long-term.
Yeah, we do a lot of that. I'm on the Finance Audit Committee, I'm familiar with long-term planning, and you're right. So, you know, maybe it doesn't benefit this particular council, but 10 years down the road, that income stream could be very beneficial, and as you mentioned, it could be used for council discretion, affordable housing, homeless shelter, you name it. All right. Thanks, Ms. Boscarino. Thank you, Mayor.
Since we are already on the right, Councilmember Jones, would you like to weigh in before I turn left?
You didn't mention raising Councilmembers' salaries with all the financial benefits, I noticed.
No, we're not going to do that, Ed.
That was supposed to be funny. Did you ever, our planning director, was the idea of affordable housing ever suggested to the applicant?
That was discussed at one time, but as Mr. Heuser mentioned, these deals come together differently, and different avenues were explored outside of providing direct affordable housing.
Well, I know that one of the points made is that we need to increase the RENA numbers, Regional Housing Needs Assessment. Doesn't that also include affordable housing, the needs assessment?
That is correct. It includes housing in all categories, from market rate to the very low affordable housing categories, but not all of our RENA number is in an affordable category.
Well, aren't we mainly, because we have a number of these coming, and I've supported some of them, you know, for the General Plan Amendment, so I'm looking forward to them coming, but, but there seems to be very little affordable housing attached, and if there is, then, of course, they get a density bonus, and I just, it looked to me like this was an opportunity to have some affordable housing, but there was no interest in that, I presume. In the traffic study, I tried to wade through all the pages of the staff report. Did they mention traffic patterns of where all these cars? And I assume there'll be a lot of cars connected with this, with 165 units.
For that, we'll have our Deputy Director of Public Works address traffic.
Good evening, Councilmember Jones, Nader Hidari, Deputy Director of Public Works and City Engineer. Yeah, there's a traffic study included in the mitigated negative declaration that was prepared for the project, which forecasted the amount of cars coming out of the project. As you might imagine, there's two primary roads for them to take. That's Thousand Oaks Boulevard, and then the Cano School Road extending over to Willow Lane.
Yes. Did they talk about implications for Willow Lane?
There is, based on the figures and the existing traffic patterns on Thousand Oaks Boulevard and Willow Lane, the approximate impact to both of those streets is roughly 4% to 8% additional traffic on those two streets.
Well, Willow Lane is just one lane each way, right?
Yeah, and so one-lane road in each direction. Willow Lane currently has roughly 5,000 to 6,000 vehicles per day on it, which is substantially less than many other one-lane roads we have in towns such as Avenue de las Arboles, Hillcrest Drive, Reyno Road, some of those are up near.
I presume Willow Lane would be the quickest way to get onto the freeway from this project?
It would depend which direction. If you're going south, that could be, although Thousand Oaks Boulevard is an equal, equal mileage to get to the freeway. They're both parallel to the 101.
Well, you wouldn't have any traffic signals on Willow Lane. I just, this may be a little parenthetical, but we're going to need to be thinking about improving the on-and-off ramp at Hampshire and the freeway, if that's possible, because the more of these projects we approve, obviously, we're going to be increasing the impact on a very substandard on-and-off ramp there, so.
Yeah, we've identified that, and we have actually already advanced that project, the Hampshire 101 interchange improvements. We put that on the statewide list, and then in the federal tip list, they call it F-Tip, which begins to get the process of the project eligible for some grant funding. We're looking at this new infrastructure package as well to try to advance that project. That would be our last major freeway on-and-off ramp that needs, you know, to be upgraded.
Well, one final thing about traffic. Have we ever thought of trying to make some improvements on Thousand Oaks Boulevard? What I'm getting at is, if you try to, I know traffic studies, you know, take averages and percentages and so forth, but I'm talking about, especially being in a car, trying to do something. If you try to pull out onto Tua Boulevard from a driveway, and if there's a car parked at the curb on your immediate left, you can't see the people in the far-right lane coming toward you until you get out almost into the lane. Has there been any thought about doing anything about the existing traffic? Obviously, what I'm getting at is, if you have 165 units, to me, you're going to get an awful lot of cars, and I presume they would be at peak times. I know if you take percentages, it doesn't look bad. But I know people that actually, right now, avoid Thousand Oaks Boulevard.
You know, the access points for this project would not have those impairments that you're referring to in terms of...
Would not have what?
Those visibility issues that you're referring to. I think some of the, the older businesses on Thousand Oaks Boulevard, which have little driveways off the Boulevard, and because of various factors and efforts to support the businesses, some of the on-street parking is still there in close proximity to the driveway, so that's what you're referring to, is, you know, sometimes the line of sight is a little bit reduced, but on larger projects or as projects redevelop and develop, you know, that is cleared up, and we have plenty of site distance as you're entering and exiting the driveways, including at the Lakes Drive and on the Cano School Road exit, which there's no parking at all on the Cano School Road there.
Okay, so you're not concerned about traffic?
The amount of additional traffic that this project will generate is less than significant in, compared to the existing 20,000 cars per day on Thousand Oaks Boulevard.
Quiet, please. Quiet, please.
And what about parking? I know some people, I don't know if they're supposed to or not, but there have been two or three occasions where my wife and I had dinner there at the Lakes Mall and parked in the back, and then walked up the ramp to the Cavali Theater. I presume the reason there's a ramp there is so people can walk on it, right?
That is correct.
So you're not doing anything illegal by parking in the Lakes parking lot and walking up to the Cavali Theater?
Well, onsite parking is a, kind of a different matter, a little bit outside of the public works realm, however, I don't think parking at the Lakes was ever an anticipated or a requirement of the theater. That was a convenience that maybe some people were choosing to do, and parking offsite, basically.
But they have the, they can do that without violating any rules or anything.
Councilmember Jones, just technically speaking, that is, it is not allowed to park in that parking lot, to use it for the purposes of coming to avoid paying at the theater. So we have people that are patrons there, having dining, and so oftentimes that will, has occurred in the past, but as a general rule, and Caruso reaffirm that per their lease terms, you can't avoid paying the parking fee to park over here by going...
So you're not going to give me a ticket in retrospect? Okay. Well, it's good to know. Okay, one final thing. You don't see any problem with cars either taking up a lot of spaces in the parking lot, you know, coupled with the need for the Lakes Mall and perhaps overflow of the accommodations that are being made now? That doesn't bother you at all?
Well, in terms of the parking, I'll let the community development respond to that, but in terms of the traffic impact of Thousand Oaks Boulevard and Willow Lane, the additional impact of the traffic generated from this project is less than significant in terms of, as I mentioned before, it's about a 4% added traffic to Thousand Oaks Boulevard, and about 6% to 8% on Willow Lane, both of which can accommodate that additional, that small incremental additional amount of traffic.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Councilmember McNamee.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First question, it goes to Project Works Director Cliff Finley. Mr. Finley, I've got a couple questions for you about, one of my near and dear passions is water, wastewater, and utilities. With the additional of these units, what impact will that have? Can the city manage it? Do we have enough in the way of adequate piping to coming in for water and wastewater, as well as our recent blackouts, brownouts we had with the power outage? Where are we with our electric grid?
Yes, let me, let me start out with what I know most about, which is water and wastewater. Good evening, Councilmember McNamee, Councilmembers. From a water standpoint, this project will produce about, total used about 48.5 acre-feet per year. The city's current water system, which is really just the center of town, remember, there's really three purveyors in Thousand Oaks. We currently buy about 10,000, just over 10,000 acre-feet a year. So 54, or 48.5 acre-feet, it's roughly 0.05%. So very, I'm sorry, 0.5%. 0.05, but, so it'll have very little impact. It's within our growth projections. It's within our urban water management plan, plan projections, so plenty of water for this project. As far as infrastructure, there's no impact. We have plenty of capacity within our existing lines.
Terrific, thank you. This one, I think, would be for emergencies ingress and egress. That would be in emergency situations like evacuations. Would that be our chief, Harris, to address that issue? Sorry to put you on the spot, Chief, but good questions to ask.
Yes, so we looked at the project from an emergency services, as far as the police is concerned, and we have not found that there'll be any issues that will, anything that will impact our ability to address public safety issues.
So police, fire, no problem getting in and out in the case of emergencies?
Yeah, so we reviewed it on the police side. The fire department does that on their side. I've talked to Chief Shea, and he's, he's of the same opinion.
Okay, thank you. Given my background in law enforcement as a reserve, yes, I'm glad you're putting my concerns at ease. Thank you. And last one, Mayor. Ms. Boscarino, in 2004, I would characterize this as a bad deal that went down all the way around for both the city and for the Caruso properties, in that the way it was structured, size of the property, and so forth. $2 million, what I'm hearing from you, and correct me if I'm wrong, this would primarily go to the county and not to us. As a city, other than schools, parks, so forth, that would be county-funded.
When you, oh, sorry.
But having the ongoing revenue stream of 13 million over 37 years would go directly to the city for anything that council wants to do. Thus, we're actually getting revenue. Now, mind you, the Caruso property up to this point, we have benefited from sales tax, and we get a portion of that to come back to run the city. But this, if I understand you correctly, though, would make it a better deal, because now, instead of getting rent, we're now getting an ongoing revenue stream for the next 37 years to provide the services we do as a city. Is that an accurate statement?
Yes, that's correct. Property taxes in specific, very little of that comes back to the, to the actual city of Thousand Oaks, because we incorporate without a general municipal property tax. So the city itself only gets about 4% of property taxes. Like I said, the school district gets the majority of it, a third of property taxes, the county does, our fire district does, our Park and Rec District gets it, Community College District, our own library gets about 2% of property taxes as well. So that's how the property tax share is generally broken out. But as far as the community benefit payments themselves, yes, 100% of that would come directly to the city to use on affordable housing or other things.
So to clarify, the property is owned by the city, therefore, the Caruso property is not paying property tax per se, but you said there's something that is in lieu of, is that the... is that the same amount as a property tax or is it something less than a property tax?
So the assessor, we're required as a governmental agency to report to the auditor controller, the assessor, all of our leases. So any building or property that the city owns, we have to report that to the county and we have to give them the lease agreement. So they look at the lease agreement, look at how much the entity is paying in leases and they decide how much they will pay in possessory interest taxes.
And we would be getting more now that if they were to own the property-
Oh, absolutely. Yes.
Okay. Madam Mayor, that's my third question. I thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Potem Engler.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I think I'm able to count to three, like one of my colleagues at least. But I've got a couple of questions. In the staff report, we talked a little bit about the nominal cost of the property. And a lot of people have approached me and said $2 million seems like it's pretty low for prime property on the Boulevard. Can you, it mentioned it in the staff report, but can you go into how we arrived at that amount of money for this property?
I can probably answer that question. Mayor Potem, can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Okay. So in the ground, in the existing ground lease, there are provisions that set forth the opportunity for the Tooe Lakes LLC to exercise an option to purchase the property. It's set forth in the ground lease. What it also does is it sets forth the methodology that the property would be appraised at for sale. So it starts off saying that it's either $2 million or fair market value, whichever is higher. But then it further defines fair market value as vacant, unimproved land limited to the uses that are permitted on the property. If you look at the ground lease, the uses that are permitted on the property, even though it's seven and a half acres, is no more than 51,000 square feet of retail and restaurant use. That significantly reduces the value of the property. Based on that amount, appraisals were done. The parties did meet and discuss those appraisals in concert with what the terms of the ground lease are. And at this point, the city, the city staff is recommending that the property be sold for $2 million as representing fair market value based on the terms of the ground lease.
And I assume based on the appraisals that came back?
Correct.
There's also a lot of discussion on the height and perhaps, Mr. Slim, you can, you can talk about this. A while back, we went through the general plan amendment and we did a lot of work on keeping most, most buildings in town to about a four-story height. My understanding is this has a height overlay. Can you, can you go a little bit into what a height overlay does to a property?
Councilman, if you don't mind, we'll have our planning manager, Steve Kearns, answer that question.
Sure.
Thank you, Councilman Engler. Going through the general plan evaluation, there were different categories that were placed on the general plan land use map. And as part of the discussions, there were heights assigned to those various categories, which did not get endorsed by city council. So they're not part of the general plan land use alternative map going forward. There are standards such as the downtown specific plan, Thousand Oaks Boulevard specific plan, which limits buildings along the Boulevard to four stories or maximum of 50 feet, average height. Other zoning designations have development standard limitations assigned to that zoning district itself, but not the general plan land use category. So for SP 11, which is the civic center specific plan, it allows up to 75 feet under certain conditions. And as fact, as a matter of fact, the civic center itself is over 100 feet.
So it's the specific plan that created that height limit? Okay.
It is, yes.
And then finally, my third question, Madam Mayor, has to do with, we have an inclusionary housing ordinance in place, I believe, in the city. Currently, there is no dollar amount set to that. So if we have a sale price of $2 million, is the 79,000 and change, could that be considered an in lieu fee of some sort that would otherwise be part of our inclusionary housing?
That's correct. So we do have an existing inclusionary housing ordinance and as is typical with most cities, the developer is given an option of either building affordable housing onsite or paying what is called an in lieu fee. Our in lieu fee right now is set at zero and it was set back in 2008, 7, or 2007 or eight, right when the real estate market, you know, busted. So it was crashed. So it was set at zero and it has not been updated since then. Staff will be reevaluating the inclusionary housing ordinance and bringing back another one next year. But when you look at a per-unit fee that has been, that Ms. Boscarino discussed, it could be construed as an in lieu fee to the extent city council wants to use those funds for affordable housing projects.
Thank you, and thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. I will limit my questions to three as well. But I'd like to just start out with a statement about a packet and a decision this significant with 1,334 pages being dropped on the council and the community on Thanksgiving Eve. That's not something we have done before, is it? And I'm not sure who would be able to address that.
I'll take the first stab at it. So we do have, most development packets are large packets. The Timber School Packet, earlier this month, was, was over 1,000 pages. Most of those documents are the environmental document. It includes the nesting bird surveys and the Chumash cultural reviews and those types of components, traffic studies. That document's been on the streets since back in October. So it's not as if these documents are all coming out at that portion of time. They were included in the planning commission packet and otherwise. So development packets are all very large. That's just the nature of CEQA and all the things that go associated with it.
And this being a very complicated development agreement, I thought it was unwise to have that put on the agenda and released on the eve of Thanksgiving when there were power outages and really for residents, not much of a chance, also those who are away, to take a look at this development agreement. So I just wanted to be on the record as saying that I was extremely unhappy with that and hopefully that can be avoided in the future. You know.
[applause]
Quiet. Sorry, sorry. I have to ask you to, to not react. So that was a statement, well, and a question. So my second question would be, this particular parcel in question tonight was purchased as part of a bigger parcel in 1989, maybe, and the city paid close to $20 million. And it was part of a legal settlement because this land was taken by eminent domain, I understand, was jungle land. So if you carve out this seven and a half acres back then, that was $6.7 million. My calculations may be off a little bit. And this is just to give historical perspective. So if it was worth $6.7 million 30-plus years ago, how come it dropped in value over time? Who can address that? And, and if, and if, when you address it also, can, is there an opportunity for a second opinion on an appraisal, for example, is what I'm wondering?
So again, the terms of the ground lease are what set forth the valuation of the property. So let's talk about the sale, what, let's talk about the money that was spent to get us to here today. Obviously, there were investments, significant millions of dollars of investment by the developer in building what you have right now, the existing commercial shopping center. So to the extent that the developer purchases the property in the future, there's no basis to charge them twice, if you understand what I'm saying. So to the extent property value increases based on existing uses, he shouldn't have to pay for that twice because he already paid for it in terms of the construction costs for building the project. So that's one basis. And again, the second basis, the most important basis, is the terms of the ground lease itself. The ground lease sets forth how to determine the actual value of the property, what the fair market value is of the property. And so staff went through, we did hire a certified appraiser who provided information and a certified appraisal with respect to the valuation of the property based on the terms set forth in the ground lease.
And so that was the second appraisal that came in at just under $3 million.
That's correct.
And the applicant said it was worth, the applicant's appraisal, appraiser said it was worth anywhere from 1.3 to 1.7.
That's correct.
And then you came to the agreement that $2 million would be fair?
Represented fair market value based on the terms of the ground lease.
Based on the terms of the ground lease, yes.
Very important that we understand that. This is not a traditional fair market value appraisal, not even close. And I don't think anyone sitting here will say that it is a traditional fair market value appraisal. This is a fair market appraisal analysis that is based on the confines and the language set forth in the ground lease.
Correct. Now, the, my last question before we go for another round is, what was the upfront lump sum that was discussed?
So as part of our negotiation, I think I mentioned this in my comments, our goal was to have an ongoing revenue stream. We were very upfront with that at a staff level in our negotiations with the Crusoe team, that that's what we were looking for. So there was no lump sum dollar amount contemplated that was stated by Crusoe that they would be willing to pay because we didn't really consider that as part, because that's not what we were seeking to achieve. So I don't have a dollar for you on, to answer that question.
Okay, yeah. Yeah, the reason I was asking is because obviously $13 million over 37 years declines in value.
Correct.
And it's not the same. We might as well just see what, if it's $4 million in 37 years, why not pay that upfront now? I, I have additional questions about that, but I wanted to now go back to my colleagues. Councilmember Jones, perhaps, do you have any additional questions? And then I go to Councilmember Adam.
I'll just clarify one thing. We've been hearing a lot, and rightfully so, Councilman, Adam brought up in very, very well the financial implications of this. But is one dependent on the other? In other words, we, we have to approve the, the building to do the financial part of it?
Yes. The, the development entitlements and the sale of the property are contingent on each other.
Thank you. That's my only question.
Councilmember Adam.
Well, thank you, Mayor. Oops. You know, I look at this whole thing as, as a package. And I don't think you can talk about the $2 million sales price without talking about the 13 million income stream. So to me, this is just to me, it's a $15 million package. And then all the other benefits that I listed, as far as property tax, as far as sales tax, as far as the 200,000 a year to take care of the parks or the pond parcel, that all plays into it as well. You know, I just wanted to talk about that height for just a minute. And I see some signs in the audience about height. I just, I don't think you can judge height in a vacuum. I think you have to judge height as to where it's situated. So the applicant is proposing a five-story residential project with one-floor podium parking at the bottom. So just to give, talk a little bit about the scale here. How tall is the Civic Arts Plaza next to it? And, oh, by the way, this is, I think the applicant, we're talking about somewhere around 65 feet. How tall is the Civic Arts Plaza next to it?
It's just over 100 feet.
100 what?
About 109.
109 feet. Okay. So that's on one side of it. And how tall would that berm be behind the proposed project? It starts at the floor of the parking lot and goes all the way up to the freeway. Ballpark.
About 30 feet.
About how much?
30 feet.
About 30 feet. Okay. And again, how far away is this project from the Boulevard?
If you allow me, Councilman, it is actually 200 feet away from Caneo School Road and approximately 380 feet away from Thousand Oaks Boulevard.
Okay. So it's a couple hundred feet away from Caneo School Road and it's a football field and a half away from Tooe Boulevard. So it's certainly not right on the Boulevard. So again, that would factor into, you know, the perception of height. How big is the parking lot?
And just, I beg your, beg your pardon, in terms of width or?
Isn't it about two acres?
Roughly about two acres.
About two acres. And so this project will take up maybe 10% to 15% of the parking lot, stuck back in the corner?
Roughly, yes.
Roughly. Okay. All right. I'm just trying to give the audience and ask you folks a little bit about, you know, the size and the height and the fact that, in my mind, you can't judge it in a vacuum. You got to look at what's around it. And so you've got a 110-foot tower on one side. You've got a 30-foot berm behind it. It's almost 400 feet off the Boulevard, a couple hundred feet away from Caneo School, sitting in a two-acre underutilized parking lot tucked back in the corner.
And if I may, I'd like to also volunteer that there is a commercial center screening it along Thousand Oaks Boulevard.
So, right, the Lakes blocks the view of it, especially considering the applicant's willingness to take a story off. The Lakes blocks the view of it from Tooe Boulevard. So I know height is a concern, but again, I just would ask you to look at it as far as where it's sited versus just in a vacuum.
Thank you. Councilmember McNamie.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm a big supporter of the arts and before COVID, many of the youth in our community were taken to the Civic Arts Plaza for wonderful shows and concerts, plays and so forth. Buses would pull in to the Crusoe property, drop the children off, sit there, wait until they were done, and then it would come back out. It's great operation for safety with the children and easy access to the Civic Arts Plaza. Given that this is going to be a reduction in their abilities, what has the city done with Crusoe and what is Crusoe willing to do to allow for us to have that same access for the children here in our community?
I'll take that one. Obviously, it's an incredibly important aspect of what we do here, supporting those youths. So it was absolutely something that was discussed at length internally. We've explored a number of different, different options, all of which with safety at its, at its heart. The end result there will be determined based on when building begins. Crusoe has even volunteered that they'd be willing to continue to let a flow, buses come through for drop-off. And we've got a number of different scenarios that we've taken a look at and would be happy to put in place, depending on the timing. We're talking about several years before that would come into effect. But we've been in consultation with our theaters director and our public works team and our risk management team as well, as that's a key component of this.
So Crusoe properties, our Crusoe developers are open to still maintaining that type of relationship?
Yeah, it'll be adjusted. It'll obviously be adjusted, given the fact that we'll have a new building there. But we'll work in concert and have that commitment.
Terrific. Thank you. I'd like to come back to Councilmember Adam's question regarding the height. I'm trying to get an idea of seven stories at 75 feet relative, not to the berm, but to the sound wall that's there and six stories relative to the sound wall. Is it above, below, spot-on? Where are we with seven floors and six floors relative to the sound wall that's there already?
The 75-feet design would be about 12 feet higher than berm, or the sound wall. Obviously, 65-foot would be right around the height of the sound wall itself.
Thank you. I've had a number of people inquire that this would be precedent-setting and that if you do seven stories, six stories here, what's to say we don't do it somewhere else in the city? What can staff say regarding that happening in other parts as, quote, precedent-setting? I'd like to hear what your response is.
This project would not be precedent-setting from a story aspect. Each individual project must stand on its own merit. And it takes into consideration not just the zoning standards that are in place for each individual parcel, but also many of the surroundings, as the council has pointed out this evening. So this particular project is differentiated from other places in the city, simply because of its proximity to the Civic Arts Plaza, the sound wall to the freeway, the distance it's set back from the street. So it's actually unique in that aspect. And any other project that would propose such stories or height would have to stand on their own merit as well.
When you say stand on your own, meaning like at the, I don't know, Hillcrest and Herb's Road? When you say stand on your own, meaning like at the, I don't know, Hillcrest and Herb's Road? Seven stories, six stories building would not be able to, quote, "stand on its own" there at that location? Is that what you're saying?
Being that you brought up that particular example, that would be correct. They have a different topography at that location than this site here this evening.
Thank you, that would be my last question right now. I'll come back to more.
Councilmember, Mayor Portem Engler.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. I think, and the reason that they could do it this location, we do have that height overlay at this particular location. So I think that ties in what you were saying, Mr. McNamee, that it probably would not be precedent-setting on its own. I guess, one question I have is, when I read through the SEQA document, there's a lot of information there as far as, you know, the trees and all the traffic mitigations and everything else. Was there any SEQA topic that was not mitigated to less than significant?
No, any potential impacts were mitigated to a level of less than significance.
Okay. All right, and then the, there was quite a discussion, I know at the planning commission, about what airspace meant. That's some, it's a planning term that most people are not familiar with. Can anybody in the panel up there talk a little bit about airspace and why that's even a significance to us?
Yeah, essentially what the airspace lots or parcels are creating are developments, polygons. So you have 100 feet from the ground up that they have development rights to. Then they have 50 feet below the ground level that they can develop, which based on the geology out there would not, likely not happen. And the construction would not require them to go down that deep. But it's also for lending purposes, financial reasons.
Okay, and the fact that we're going to five stories above a parking garage at this location does not affect anything we've done with our draft general plan update that we're doing? It doesn't have any connection with that?
No, it does not.
Okay. And then finally, I did read through the entire 1,300 pages over the weekend. Riveting, riveting topics, I tell you. But I wanted to point out a typo that's kind of a significant typo. In the drafts, the draft Plan Number 11, the specific Plan Number 11, on page five, it talks about, I believe it's supposed to be two to three stories, but the actual document says 23 stories. So I want to make sure that gets corrected.
Noted.
You had more time on your hands than I did, Councilmember Engler, Mayor Portem Engler. All right, going back to the history, obviously, when this first thing came together in around 1990 or so, maybe a little, actually, no, a little later than that. There were several public hearings held and council meetings held to come up with this development agreement that was eventually and finally approved in 2004, right? So the public had two years or so at least to weigh in on the negotiations rather than, say, five days or six days. So I think this is our first meeting discussing the, the new amended development agreement. So I just wanted to have that for comparison.
I did want to mention, the development agreement was part of the planning commission packet. So that was out in the planning commission.
But not every detail was in there. There were certain numbers and amounts of appraisals and so forth that were not included.
Those appraisals weren't part of the development agreement per se. The development agreement is intact, I think, from what was there.
Okay, well, okay, so we had a planning commission meeting and that had most of the information. So this is our second meeting with more information on this. All right, and so as part of this particular decision in 2004 that was so regretted by, you know, it was a 3-2 vote. But there was a phase two that was never exercised. And that was to develop the parcel further and to include more commercial. For example, a movie theater and a parking structure and so forth. Perhaps this is a question for the applicant, but do we know why that was never exercised, that option that the developer had at the time?
I think you got it, it's a good question for the applicant when they give their presentation here a few minutes.
Okay, so there were options to do something else with that parcel. It was just never done. And obviously, when it comes to property taxes, every developer that comes before the city and has come before the city with pre-screens, they all are subject to the same requirements. And, and so every development that comes before the city, the property taxes will help the various public agencies. Parcels owned by a public agency obviously don't generate that. And of course, the decision that 12% return on the investment never materialized again because that was part of a poorly conceived development agreement in 2004. So the, in terms of the affordability, where do we have the biggest need with the new pressure coming from Sacramento in terms of housing? In which income category?
That's going to be in the low and very low category. Those, that's where our arena number has been broken up into the largest need. In the lowest category, it's roughly 158 units in an affordable category. Correction, 733 very low and 493 low. So those are the areas of greatest need.
Mr. Powers?
And I just wanted to, one point I wanted to add because I think it's important for everyone to know. Every pre-screen that's going through process now, coming back to the city council, these will all be, you don't count it towards your arena numbers until building permits are issued. So these will all be part of the next arena cycle across the spectrum. So everything that's being considered in this interim time, it's not for where we were, but where we're going within there. And as Mr. Parker was saying, different categories at different levels there.
Okay, so the, the answer that we have is that the bigger need for the city of Thousand Oaks is in the, the low-income to very low-income category. And we were anticipating that the income stream or revenue stream over 37 years would assist with that. Not sure what $150,000 a year can do to assist with building affordable housing or providing affordable housing.
Well, I, I don't think that that would be used to build affordable housing. You know, as part of the homeless ad hoc committee and what went to council was a couple of agreements we made with two affordable housing providers and, you know, doing motel conversion, utilizing Project Home Key money from the state to rehab existing motel, convert them to permanent supportive housing and, you know, shelter. And so we have a couple of projects that we are currently working on with these developers and affordable housing providers, Mini Mansions being one of them, to rehab existing motels into permanent supportive housing. And that will require an ongoing financial commitment from the city every year to make those projects feasible. So this is a way that we are able to guarantee income to the city in order to be able to provide that operating subsidy for these affordable home projects that are going to be coming online hopefully in the next year. Project Home Key moves very fast in order to be eligible for their funds. So that will be a significant financial commitment for the city. And then we also, of course, have the Hillcrest parcel that we purchased as well that we'll be getting an RFP out on the street soon for a project there. So we, we know that we have projects coming up that will provide permanent supportive housing in the city and will require financial commitment from the city in order to make those viable in the long term. You're talking a minimum 15-year agreement with these providers and 55-year potentially covenants to restrict them to affordable. So we know this is going to be a very long-term commitment for the city to bring these projects online. And this helps assist us in making sure that those projects are viable long-term.
Thank you for that. The, we were able to do the $10 million with Hillcrest, with that Hillcrest Christian School property and take immediate action. Spreading out $13 million over 37 years is not going to provide the same sort of impact for the city to provide workforce housing, not, not homeless shelter or, or a permanent supportive transitional housing for those who are coming off the street as well and are being rehabilitated. So, so the money really is urgent now, not 37 years from now. We can always talk about income stream over the next 37 years in a different fashion. But past development agreements, we required applicants to put money into a development fund and they paid that in there and it sat in there in a accrued interest. So why wouldn't we be able to do that with a lump sum right up front so that we can actually use it to provide and help nonprofit developers who specialize in affordable housing and workforce housing to actually develop something with a land trust or, or something like that?
Well, the Hillcrest parcel was a land acquisition.
Yes.
So the city acquired the land and will be working with a land trust or something to develop that parcel. We need all sorts of types of housing in the city. And some of it may be the city doing a land acquisition and providing the land. So now the housing provider doesn't have to have those costs and can reduce the price of whatever project they build. But also, as I mentioned, we know we're going to have a couple of projects, you know, hopefully coming online in the next year that does require ongoing financial commitment. We have, as, as Councilmember Adam mentioned, we had a $23 million surplus last year. We have the funds, council set aside $16 million in this existing budget for affordable housing and homelessness. We still have $6 million of that left. So we do have funds already budgeted and set aside that, you know, large lump sum that we can use if council were to have another project come before them for those big one-time commitments. What we don't have is that ongoing income stream. And so that's why we scheduled, we did this deal and that method because we have money set aside in the budget. And as part of that $23 million surplus, we're actually setting aside even more money, restricting that to affordable housing and homelessness as well on top of that $16 million. So we have, we have enough one-time money that we can access in the city's budget to do what you were talking about. This provides a different opportunity and method for the city to also provide permanent supportive housing.
Except it's over 37 years and it's not going to have the same value as it does today. So that is my biggest problem, that we're looking at tax, at dollars in 2050 or whatever they are, is not the same as today. And there could be another pandemic, we don't know. There could be issues coming up where we will not have that, that income revenue, this revenue stream.
It's required every year, no matter what.
There were a couple of clauses, though, that.
The, if, they have five options to do the impairment clause, but even if they were to trigger the impairment clause, they would still be required to pay a minimum $100,000 contribution. They would never get out of not, there's never going to be a year where they pay zero.
So they would have, they have the option then to pay a smaller amount rather than the $600,000 that lasted.
Depending on what year the impairment were triggered. And whatever that difference is between what they should have paid and the $100,000, that gets added on to the end. So they're never out, they have to pay all of it no matter what.
The preference would be to have it really upfront. I, I'm not in agreement with the long-term one. But at any rate, I know, are you counting my questions? No. Councilmember Adam.
I just want to, hold on. Remind everyone that the council has made a very serious commitment to affordable housing. We have a, we did a pre-screen for the Kmart project, which would include 50 affordable units, largest number of affordable units ever in a housing project here in Thousand Oaks. 299 is under construction, it's got 15 affordable units. And we just bought some property where we're hoping to sell anywhere from 40 to 60 units for sale, affordable housing through a, Drew, what's the name of that?
Land trust.
Land trust, thank you, through a land trust. So we understand the need for affordable housing. And I just want to make a comment, if I may. I did a little research about market rate housing and its relationship to affordable housing. And all the latest information, all the latest empirical research from Notre Dame, from Dr. Mast, from Notre Dame, actually is saying market rate housing puts downward pressure on rents, downward pressure. And this is market rate housing, that's what it is. New apartments start like a chain reaction in the rental world. So as people from old apartments move up to the new one, it creates vacancies below. And you can have a chain reactions of many, six different levels of vacancies being created as people move up to the latest market rate housing. For each 100 market rate units, 60 units are created in the bottom half of the neighborhood income distribution through vacancies. So market rate housing actually contributes to more affordable housing. 29 vacancies in the bottom quintile of income. I'm quoting the study, I'll give it to you afterwards if you'd like. I was kind of surprised myself, to tell you the truth. I'd always thought of it the opposite way, but it's, it's not, it's not. They call it a moving chain. And it's more likely, more likely to reach lower-income neighborhoods. 40% of the movers are below average income. It's called, they call it filtering, filtering. So bottom line, new market rate apartments free up space in lower housing markets, not in years, but in months. And it creates upward mobility, too.
Well, then technically, we shouldn't really have a housing crisis, right? I mean, we look at Orange County.
Or should what?
A housing crisis, a housing affordability crisis is what I'm saying, yes.
Hey, we need housing in California, there's no question about it.
No, absolutely.
But the point I'm trying to make is, market rate housing can create affordability because of this, this chain move-up and freeing vacancies on the bottom end.
Excuse me.
I'll be happy to give you the report if you'd like.
We have to remain.
Civil.
Civil, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
And maintain decorum, thank you. Yes, so we will now go to Councilmember McNamee.
Councilmember Adam, I'd like to dovetail on your comment there. If you were to take an apartment complex of 100 units at $3,000 per month market rate and 30% of them became low-income and very low-income where they pay basically zero to the profit margin, that would raise the rates of the other 70 to $4,200 a month. So those people that could afford $3,000 a month now can't afford $4,200, they don't have housing. So essentially, this is government policy forcing the other 70% to be a charity to offset the low-income housing. The best answer, based on all the studies I've read, is let it up to the market. Putting in low-income housing drives up the price and makes housing unaffordable for everyone else. So that confirms, from the studies I've read, Councilmember Adam, that yes, low-income housing drives up the price of housing for everyone else, making it unaffordable.
Well.
Well.
That's exactly what I was saying.
I hope not.
The point, the point, there's a place for affordable housing, there's no, no question about it. You know, but there's a place for market rate housing, too. We need to get to public comments, but the only point I'm making is that, according to the studies, market rate housing can contribute to affordability for the lower rungs of income.
Madam Mayor, this is, this is a fascinating economic discussion.
Isn't it?
However, I think we have a lot of people here waiting to speak.
Yes.
So I would prefer that if we don't have any other questions for staff, that we allow our citizens to talk.
Absolutely, and just as a reminder, the fact that we haven't had any in lieu fees or set at zero since 2009, because I've been harping on that since 2009, I have. It is actually, we have relied on supply and demand and we've let the free market dictate housing, only to be accused of being racist, basically, by certain community members for not doing enough. And then Marxist by others because we want to do inclusionary housing. So we're, you know, stuck between a rock and a hard place. However, we all know that the goal of California is to provide enough housing, but also affordable housing, and that's the problem with these bills coming down from Sacramento. None of these housing bills actually demands affordable housing, and that is a problem. That's why cities have to basically come up with their own tools in order to provide workforce housing. So I have about 12 more other questions, but I understand there are other, we have 49 speakers, I believe. And so we will start with speakers that are in the audience.
Madam Mayor, the applicant presentation.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, applicant presentation. That would be, let me see. Whom do we have for? Whom do we have for the presentation?
Madam Mayor, Rick Caruso is starting us off.
And that is via Zoom. Okay, good evening, Mr. Caruso.
Well, good evening. Can you hear me okay, Madam Mayor?
We can, yes, we can.
Well, good. Well, I've been listening to your robust discussion. I appreciate all the time that staff has put into this project for us, and I appreciate all the time that members of the council have in analyzing this. And I'm sorry I'm not there in person tonight to say hello to you in person. But I just wanted to tell you that I am absolutely thrilled with this project. I'm thrilled to be a part of it. And I want to just point out a milestone that we have. The month of November is a very important month. In addition to celebrating Thanksgiving, it's also when we opened up the promenade at Westlake. So just for a little bit of history, 25 years ago, on November 7th, we opened up the promenade. That was a very important day, I think, for the City of Thousand Oaks. Also a very important day for my company because the City of Thousand Oaks and because of the projects we've been permitted to do and continue to operate in your great city have really built this company. And we take great pride in the relationship we've had for over 30 years with the City of Thousand Oaks. And that leads us to this project, which I'm extremely excited about. And we hope that we've been a great contributor to the growth and the quality of the city. I'm also grateful for the community input. It's been a hallmark of everything that we do is going out to the community and getting the input on every project that we propose. And this project has been no different. And because of that input, we believe that this residential building is even better. And that also goes to the input that we received and the guidance we received from staff in the city, which has been incredibly helpful that we've worked with over the last year. And of course, as the council remembers, and Madam Mayor, you remember, 16 years ago, as you've talked about, we did embark on the Lakes project. Now, that project was scaled back to about 50,000 square feet, if I recall. We originally proposed a couple hundred thousand square feet. And we've never really had the critical mass to have a vibrant retail project, or at least the vibrancy that we would expect and had hoped for out there. Nonetheless, we've been very committed to that property. We've maintained it in first-class condition. And it's a source of pride for us because it does sit next to, obviously, the Civic Center and City Hall, and is in the middle of the city. Now, the goal back then was to have that property be the, the key starter of having a downtown in the City of Thousand Oaks next to the Civic Arts Plaza. But nonetheless, not everything happened the way we had hoped it would. But I truly believe, and I know my team truly believes, that adding this residential component to the retail will create a synergy and an energy that is going to really start this growth of having a vibrant downtown. Residential is an important part, I know, of the city's goals of having residential. It's certainly an important part of the future of Caruso, our company. But I also think it's an important part of any great city to have different residential opportunities for people to live. So I just want to say thank you again for the time that your staff has given us in this project, the courtesy, the input and the help. They've been terrific to work with. I want to thank the community for their feedback. But most importantly, I want to thank the community while I have a chance, and the city, for 30 years of partnering with us and growing together. It's a relationship that I hold dear, and I mean that sincerely. It's a relationship that we have had that's allowed us to build our company. We have tried to be always good stewards of the property that we have in the City of Thousand Oaks, to represent the best in a retail format, to have things that are entertaining, provide vibrancy to the city, but also a sense of community where members of the community can come and relax, spend time with family and friends, and just enjoy life. And it's been rewarding for us. So with that, I want to turn this over to Chris of my team, and she's going to go over and talk about the details of the project step by step. We look forward to continuing to work with the city. We hope to get this approved tonight so we can move forward and start with the construction. And we look forward to continuing our great partnership with the City of Thousand Oaks. Thank you, Madam Mayor, for the opportunity, the city council members. Chris, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Rick. Good evening, Madam Mayor, city council members. It's a privilege to be here with you tonight. My name's Chris Robertson. I'm vice president of Planning and Government and Community Relations with Caruso. And I'd like to start by echoing Rick's comments and extending our gratitude to the city staff for working so closely with us over the last year. We really appreciate all the support and guidance that they've given us. To begin, if we have the, we add the, load the presentation, Mr. Slim? Great, thank you.
Apologies.
Having some trouble with advancing the slides here. There we go, okay. All right. So to begin, the project before you tonight is the product of an extensive community outreach effort that really began over one year ago. As Rick mentioned, community is at the core of our company. We never bring anything forward to a city without reaching out to the community first. So when we approached the city council back in February of this year with the pre-screen request, we immediately reached out to the community and began our community outreach in earnest. We started by reaching out to everybody who spoke at the pre-screen hearing to get a better understanding of the comments that they shared with us. We then launched a project website, providing an overview of the concept of adding residential to the lakes, where the community could come, sign up for email updates. There was an infographic so that they could follow along and understand where we were at in the process, and then they could reach out to us directly to share any thoughts that they might have. We also sent a letter out to residents and businesses within 1,500 feet of the project site. That was both occupants and owners, advising them that we were thinking of adding residential to the site, inviting them to visit our website, and then inviting them to a series of community meetings. We also worked with the city to identify a broad cross-section of the community throughout the city. We reached out to 28 different homeowners associations, and we held a variety of community meetings with them. We also held a number of meetings with more organized, more community organizations, including Thunderbird Mobile Home Park across the street, the Kiwanis Club, the Chamber of Commerce, the Conejo Climate Coalition on three different occasions, Thousand Oaks Boulevard Association, and of course, over the course of the last year, we've engaged extensively with all the different city departments involved in development review, including Planning Department, Public Works, the city attorney, and the Fire Department. The Fire Department was one government agency that we reached out to incredibly early in the process and was very important in helping us to sculpt the project to where it's at today. We also reached out to a number of major employers in the City of Thousand Oaks, including Amgen, Etara, and Les Robles. And all of them stressed that the lack of high-quality housing presented a real challenge in that to them in their efforts to appeal to the talent that they were trying to attract and retain. We, of course, have also reached out to our tenants throughout the process, all of which are very excited at the idea of bringing residential to the site, not only because it will add a built-in customer base, but because it's going to contribute to a more lively and active environment. And just by, just by purely announcing that we had envisioned possibly bringing residential to the lakes, we've received interest from a number of restaurants and retailers interested in coming to the lakes. And we know that this is just the beginning. As we move forward with approvals, that interest is only going to grow exponentially. So some of the key community feedback that we received, it was great to hear how important the lakes was to the community. Everybody had grown to really love it. They wanted to make sure that it thrived and continued to be sustainable. They really enjoyed the community outreach events that we put on, felt that it was a family-friendly environment, something to do for, for people of all ages. They also really enjoyed the partnership that we had established with the performing arts community, particularly during the pandemic and helping them stay afloat during very difficult times. Some opportunities for the future of the commercial, we heard from the community that there was an interest in creating more of a destination-type environment. So as opposed to going there to run an errand, like running to Lassens, grabbing some groceries, or going there simply to have a meal, the community thought that there was an opportunity to create more of a destination where you could spend all day or all evening. Some of the specific uses that came up were ice cream shops and coffee shops, excuse me, that, I think particularly because that appeals to a wide variety of demographics, people of all ages. And we also heard that a coffee shop could not only serve to, you know, provide coffee and pastries, but was also an opportunity for some people to come and enjoy live entertainment in a venue where they would be more comfortable. Some folks might not want to go to a bar or concert, but they still wanted an opportunity to go out and experience a lively setting. We also heard from the community that there was a desire to incorporate some fitness uses, which could serve as a nice amenity to the residential. And then there was a strong interest in maximizing opportunities for outdoor dining, particularly because of what we saw during the pandemic, but because we also have, of course, the beautiful Southern California weather, and we don't see that trend going anywhere anytime soon. When it came to adding residential to the existing property, there was a strong consensus that whatever we built at the lakes would be done, it would be a beautiful project with the utmost attention to detail. The community knows us, they trust us, they know that we build beautiful projects. We've been here for 25 years, and they know that we want to be here for a lot longer. Some of the inspiration images you see on the slide reflect a more modern aesthetic, but incorporate some of the vertical elements that you see in the commercial building, which the community stressed was important, in addition to earth-tone materials, which also complement the built environment in addition to the natural environment. You also see that there's ample landscaping, which of course is emblematic of the landscaping that's currently at the lakes. We talked a lot about height, specifically the 75 feet that's allowed by the existing specific plan, and juxtapose that with the height that's currently in place of the Civic Arts Plaza building, which, as we've discussed earlier, is around 107 feet, translating to around a 10-story building if it was a residential use. The community in general felt that because the building was set so far back with setbacks that ranged from 400 to 550 feet, because the massing was tucked back to the southern portion of the property, which is in line with the building next door, because of the surface parking and the existing commercial building, and the very mature trees on site, that that made sense. One person recommended that the building should in no event be larger than, should be a third shorter than the Civic Arts Plaza, which actually translates to about 75 feet. Everybody agreed that the building should not be higher than the Civic Arts Plaza. But that said, we did receive some feedback during our outreach from community members who felt that a six-story building could be more compatible. And I know that you heard some of the discussions that went on with the commission. So to that end, we always want to be responsive to the community. We did agree to the idea of reducing the building by one story before going into commission. And as you know, they made the recommendation that we reduce the building. To, to that end, we have prepared a number of images. I believe staff presented some in their staff report. So the image on the screen now shows the building as currently proposed or as filed at 75 feet on the top. And then the bill, on the, the image to, the image below it is the building with the reduced height. This is from Thousand Oaks Boulevard and Conejo School Road, of course, looking towards the existing development. And you can see from the images on the screen that because the building is set so far back from Thousand Oaks Boulevard, again, up to 550 feet, because those earth-tone materials are incorporated, and because the trees are so tall, it's very difficult to see it, even with a seven-story building, but even more so with the six-story building. This is a view generally from Lake Strive and Thousand Oaks Boulevard, looking the other way towards the lakes. Again, the building as originally filed is shown in the top image, the reduced building is showed in the bottom. You can sort of see the building poking through, but again, because of the significant setbacks and the mature landscaping, it's very difficult to see at all from this vantage point. The next image is from the 101 freeway going southbound. Again, the image at the top is as originally filed, the image below is the building reduced at six stories. Even with the building at the top, the building does not project above the ridge lines, and because of the earth-tone materials, it does blend into the background even more so with the six stories. And again, we're traveling at very, very fast speeds on the 101, so the amount of time that you actually see the building poke through is very minimal. And then this is the view from the 101 headed the other direction. The top and the bottom really don't have much of a difference because you really won't be able to see the building headed northbound on the 101 because of the sound wall and because of the mature trees in addition to the positioning of the driver. This is the watercolor rendering of the building coming up Lake Strive as originally proposed. Again, you can see the earth-tone materials and landscaping. This is the modified building, and we included a dash line above just to show where the massing was eliminated by dropping a story. And there you see a clean version. And this is from the pool deck, again, the original image as filed, the modified building with a dashed white line showing where the massing has been scaled back. And then this is a clean version here. So in summary, again, we have been extensively engaged with the community for over a year and feel that we've been very, very responsive to a lot of their requests. We have reached out to a broad cross-section of the community to make sure that we hear from all different stakeholders and all different opinions, and we've tried to strike a strong balance. The project will have significant project benefits, not only contributing to a more walkable and vibrant downtown, which the city's been trying to create for so long, will also help to support the existing retail, will attract new retailers. The project itself will be required to pay significant development impact fees, around $5 million, which is separate and apart from the community benefits package discussed previously or the transaction. As we've already discussed, there will be a robust community benefits package that's around $80,000 per unit. And then we have been incredibly sensitive and responsive to the design. Again, we have setbacks from Thousand Oaks Boulevard around 400 to 500 feet. We have very mature landscaping on site. We've also incorporated a very robust green building package, which includes EV chargers, solar panels, battery, and then electric heating and cooling. We were very, very cautious when we went into design to avoid any impact to oak trees because we know that that's incredibly important to the community. So all of the design will cantilever over and not have any, any real encroachments into the oak trees. Again, incorporating earth-tone materials and colors so that the building blends seamlessly into, into the natural environment as well as the built environment. And just in closing, you know, as Rick stressed, we just celebrated a really important milestone with this community. We plan to be here for a very, very long time. We are very strongly committed to the city and the community of Thousand Oaks, and we look forward to working together as we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you very much. This was Chris Robertson of the Caruso team, representing the applicant and giving us a detailed report. And while I have you at the podium, you and I, we met several times, I disclosed it, and so did other council members with other Caruso team members in the supplemental packet. The, the purpose of the, of the meeting, whether it was in person, Zoom, or telephone calls, was to keep council members updated and also to get some feedback. And I, I know from our conversations that what was super important to me was affordability, workforce housing, as well as all-electric, and sustainability. And those items, I mentioned gray water also, but that was not that high on the list. They didn't really make it into this agreement, and I'm wondering why.
So, thank you for the question, Madam Mayor. We did discuss extensively the idea of doing an all-electric building. We engaged with our operations team, we did surveys, we looked at market, and we just don't feel that the market's there. It's in nobody's interest to build an all-electric building that we have difficulty leasing out. We need to make sure that we lease these units and the project is successful. To that end, we have incorporated the vast majority of green building elements that, for example, Conejo Climate Coalition asked for, like the EV chargers, like solar panels, the water heaters. We've also incorporated battery storage. We've gone way above and beyond what the code would require. And we're at a, we're at a really... And we are at a, we're at a really, we are at a really great place in terms of where the building landed vis-à-vis green building elements.
Do you feel that you have enough EV chargers, knowing that in a couple of decades, all cars are supposed to be electric? Well, less than a couple of decades. And so do you feel that this project is forward-thinking enough in anticipating these changes in terms of electricity? I mean, there may not be a demand for induction stove now, but that is really the trend going. And we're talking about millennials, well, not millennials, but the newest generation that are really, really environmentally conscious. So why not plan for that?
So absolutely. Right now, we're committed to 50% of the covered garage spaces being EV-ready, and we're installing 25. That being said, if our tenants have electric vehicles, we will meet them where they're at. We've incorporated EV charging stations at pretty much all of our properties, or we're in the process of doing so now. It's paramount to our company and meeting our tenants and our guests where they're at. So if there's a need to install additional, additional chargers, we will absolutely do that.
Your project on 333 La Cienega under construction, you're offering 10% affordable housing, you're also offering gray water connections. Why can't we have that same or the same?
So 333 actually is not under construction right now. It was entitled, it's not even in design yet.
Thank you for the correction. The, what, what I was reading is that it is going to be gray water. Well, it was approved by the LA City Council, I think, in 2018, right?
The entitlements were approved.
Okay. So it's at gray water, and I believe it also said, yeah, well, 10% affordable housing. Is that still going to happen for that particular project?
That project included a density bonus, which this project does not. If we had pursued a density bonus at this site, we would be allowed to do upwards of 300 units. We're proposing up to 165, which is significantly less than the density bonus would allow for. We don't have a gray water system proposed here, but we do have a lot of water-efficient features. We'll have low-flow faucets, showerheads, plumbing fixtures that will comply with the Green Building Code in addition to the plumbing code. We do have, we are building on an existing surface parking lot, but we actually are reducing the impervious coverage. And we will be capturing a portion of the stormwater that falls on the deck, which will be used to irrigate a portion of the new landscaping.
So we have had a couple of pre-screens, developers coming before the city council, and they all have affordable housing component. One also did not, at least one, did not ask for a housing density bonus. And they did it because they wanted to do that for the community, knowing how much we need workforce housing. We want the teacher at Conejo Elementary School, two blocks up the street, to be able to, you know, maybe live at this, at this building and walk to the school, for example. So we have developers that are doing it whether they're required or not. And, and I'm just a little baffled that there isn't a, more of a willingness to, to, to do that.
Well, to be fair, I don't think those projects are proposing $80,000 in community benefits per unit. As we engage in conversations with the city, it became, it became clear that they wanted an ongoing revenue stream and the ability to use their discretion to funnel those monies into whatever priority the city had at the time. We understand that affordable housing is a huge priority for the city. It is, it is for us, too. We support affordable housing. It's just that as those conversations evolved, this is, this was the best, in the best interest of the city.
Well, I'm not so sure that that is really in the best interest of the city. But I'm going to check with my colleagues whether they have questions. Councilmember Adam.
Thank you, Mayor. This mask. Hi, thank you. Pardon me for leaving the dials. I had to go, have a little coughing fit there. But I watched the presentation on the TV and came back in. Anyway, what I wanted to ask, just wanted to state first that, you know, we have a number of social projects pending here in the city. We just approved a permanent supportive housing site in the city at a, at a motel in a very ideal location. We're looking to build a, a, some affordable units, you might have heard, on our Hillcrest property. And we're looking to build a shelter as well, homeless shelter. So the mayor mentioned the payment schedule. And what I'm wondering is, with that in mind, and we have some imminent needs, I know the first payment isn't supposed to start in, for four years, I believe.
I believe that's correct, yes.
Yeah. What would you think of accelerating that and having it start in, say, two years? So we could start the income stream a little quicker.
I think we would need to discuss that as a team briefly.
Okay.
If there are additional questions, maybe we can move forward with those, and we can huddle as a team.
Okay, very good. I'd like to put that on the table. Because like you mentioned, Mayor, the payment schedule, maybe we could speed it up a little.
Well, it's not only the payment schedule, it's also the amount. We know that $13 million today is a quarter or a third of that in 37 years. So we're losing so much in value. We could be taking these $13 million, put it in a fund like we've done with Dos Vientos, in a developer fund where accrues interest, for example. But I, no, that doesn't work?
It wouldn't be, sorry, councilmember.
Why not?
It wouldn't be $13 million if it were a lump sum payment.
Okay.
It would, it would be a significantly less dollar. You mentioned four, four, $4 million net present value. We didn't talk about dollar amounts, as I spoke of upfront, one-time payments, but it would likely be in that dollar range.
Yeah, but we can put it in a developer fund like we did with Dos Vientos, where it accrues interest and then, or a housing trust fund, actually. Put it in the housing trust fund.
But the city is very restricted into how it can invest. We are earning 90 basis points because we are restricted into how we can invest taxpayer funding. So $4 million earning 90 basis points, you're hardly going to earn anything on that investment.
Well, and also too, you know, the payment schedule accelerates over time, which takes into account inflationary pressures.
And then you have this balloon payment, so to speak, toward the end of this.
But my idea, Claudia, is just let's let it start in two years instead of four, so we get that money going a little quicker.
I'm not quite sure if, I have to look at all the numbers and see because my concern is, again, we have money. So we, you know, we, a steady income stream is nice, but if the value is going to deteriorate and lessen, as we know it will, you know, I'm not sure why we should do that when we have immediate, immediate workforce housing issues. So if there were an affordable housing, a workforce housing component, I mean, we have interns that are starting and just started at Los Robles Hospital, for example. They make $63,000 a year. I'm not sure if they could afford to live at this new residence here at the lakes, depending on what the rent would be. And so while we do have many professionals, they, they have to have a place to live. And so, you know, I wanted to find out what the, would the rates be or the rents be similar to Americana at brand? Or what, what would, what would it be? I tried to find that out over the weekend, just to see. I mean, this is, I'm imagining luxury housing, but you won't have the concierge that will walk the dog of the tenants or so, or make reservations for you, although I think that's really cool. And so I'm trying to really be realistic as to what will the rent be? Is it going to be true workforce housing? I printed out a schedule of teachers' and teachers' salaries. We have Conejo School Elementary there. We've got the daycare center right across the street that is also employed with teachers and next to the mobile home park. So I'm trying to paint a realistic picture. And that is why that income stream that the city doesn't really necessarily need, I really like to see the immediate benefit for workforce housing, which is an area that, where we are lacking, basically.
Well, I'll say the rents have not been established yet. The rents are always reflective of the market conditions, and we're, they will reflect the market at the time they come online. We have incorporated a range of bedroom types and unit sizes to appeal to a broad variety of demographics. Some larger units will be comparable to single-family homes. And then we'll have smaller units, so we'll have a range of sizes. And the smaller units will, you know, presumably appeal more to the workforce housing. But it's, it's completely up to the city's discretion as to how it decides it wants to use the money that we're ultimately going to contribute.
Madam Mayor, if I might just follow up on, there's been a lot of pieces there. I know we have a lot of speakers, so the, the deal and terms, as I'm sure council knows from reviewing the packet, are quite complex. And so I think I understand the question from Councilmember Adam. So during the public speakers, we'll, we'll certainly sidebar and be able to have a better response to that on the, at the end as it relates to that piece.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody else have any questions for Ms. Robertson? That would be Councilmember McNamee. And by the way, I really appreciated our meetings and the feedback. It was very helpful. I was just disappointed that it went the other way, where affordable housing was completely abandoned, and, and that didn't sit well with me, sorry. Councilmember McNamee.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Ms. Boscarino, I just want to clarify something. For the sake of financial terminology, 0.9 basis points, is that like 0.9%?
Correct.
So 0.9%, which again is much lower than inflation, and now that inflation's taken off. Basically, if we got the money now, it would be losing value.
And that's, yeah, then that, that's continuing, that has declined over the pandemic and is continuing to decline. We can only invest out five years in what we were purchasing in January and February at the height of the pandemic. We were doing five-year investments for 50 basis points, for a half a percent. So it'll, it'll decline.
That's, that's, that's really good money.
Yeah.
The other is the $79,000 per unit. Is that factoring in future dollars in 37 years when this is finally all paid off? Whereas if we took it today, it wouldn't be the $79,000. It would be much less in today's dollars. So essentially, there is an inflation factor factored into that $79,000 over that 37 years that we are looking at present value out in the future.
Right. So if you were to do the net present value, and it can, it depends on your discount rate. But if we were to negotiate a lump sum upfront payment as opposed to an ongoing revenue stream, it would probably be more in the $4 million range, not 13. I guarantee it's not $13.1 million.
Thank you for clarifying.
All right, councilmember or Mayor Potam Engler.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you for the nice presentation. It was a well-rounded one. Thank you for that. I think the, the $79,000, $80,000, I, I look at that sort of as an annuity going forward. That's not a real accurate way of looking at it, I suppose. But it's money that'll be coming to us later. Our, Ms. Boscarino says that's not something that we need at this exact moment. And I'm happy to see it coming into the future for, for our future councils. One question I had, though, and it's based on feedback from the community. In our, in our reciprocal ease agreement, there's some, there's some verbiage having to do with being inclusive in the use of the park and that sort of thing. Some feedback I've received is that some members of the community don't feel as if they're welcome at the park. And I don't have personal experience with that, so I am only giving you what I've heard. What, what types of policies do you have as Caruso to ensure that community members feel that they can come to, to our locations?
Well, I, we always try to include everybody. I appreciate the feedback. I think we would love the opportunity to engage with those people that you've heard that from, so that we can make sure that they do feel welcome.
Is there any, any policies that you have specifically aimed at that? I mean, you have large properties. Is there, is there policies you have in place that ensure that?
I mean, we value diversity tremendously, and we, you know, we try to make our properties hospitable to everyone. We recently had an event at the lakes for Halloween that we put on in conjunction with Calabas' mommy and me. And there was a very, very diverse group of people that came there, all ages and backgrounds. And it was, it was a really great event. So that's the kind of thing that we're committed to. That's the kind of thing that we'd like to do more of. And again, if anyone has a concern about not feeling welcome, we'd love to talk to them about that.
Well, thank you. I may, I may be able to hook you up with that person.
Absolutely.
Thank you. The question, if I may just follow up on the affordable housing component, the website for the residences at the lakes states that you're committed to affordable housing and that you would provide affordable housing. If, if we cannot invest the money and if we're losing in value over 37 years, which is basically, I viewed as an interest-free loan. But if, then why not provide the actual housing units for workforce housing for the nurses, the teachers, the interns at the hospital, for example?
Well, we were committed to including affordable housing as part of the project when we went to city council for the pre-screen. We are still committed to that. It's just that as conversations with the city evolved, it was clear that they preferred an ongoing revenue stream and giving the city the discretion to use money in the way it saw fit. So we would, we would assume that a portion of the money that we contribute will be used for various affordable housing efforts, whether it's housing or homeless housing, or buying out expiring covenants or whatever, Project Home Key. It's just ultimately in the hands of the city to decide what's the best course of action.
I'm just thinking, we have schools that are near the lakes, and wouldn't it be great if the teachers or the substitute teachers, a kindergarten teacher, could live there? So that is what, what I'm thinking. If we're going to be building something that is different from other apartment buildings in the city of Thousand Oaks, then let's invest in workforce housing, which is what we need. And revenue streams, if it's $100,000 a year, $200,000 a year, it really, what I think matters is providing the housing right now and not 37 years from now or whatever it may be. We will find other revenue sources for the shangri-la, the permanent supportive housing, for example. But I'm, I'm really very focused on reaching the numbers because we're severely lacking in that category. So thank you. Any other questions? Nope? Okay. Then we can finally go to, thank you so much. I appreciate it. You may have a seat because I need to call on all of the residents now. And thank you so much for your patience. I appreciate that, everybody waiting. I thought I'd be out of here by nine o'clock, but maybe not. So I was overly ambitious. So let me see here. I don't see the speakers on my screen. What should I press, Madam Clerk? I'm going to click on speakers. Here we go. Oh, I see. We have the very first person. That would be Diane McKay, followed by Julia Lad and then Amy Cummins. So we're going to be calling about 10 people who are here in person, and then we'll go over to those on Zoom. And you have two minutes. Good evening. Oh, and if you work for the applicant, please mention that as well. Thank you.
My name is Diane McKay. I'm from Thousand Oaks. I do not work for the applicant, so I do own a PR firm, but I don't work for Caruso affiliated.
That was a generic announcement, sorry.
Just want to be clear. Anyway, I moved here, as I told the planning commission, about 90 to 100,000 people ago. There was no mall, and our proms had to be outside the Conejo Valley. And so we let people in, and I snuck four children and myself that I also raised here. And somewhere along the way, though, we became a city of no, and I can't really figure out when that started. The threat of us becoming the San Fernando Valley is really just kind of tired. The city is well-planned. This council, councils prior to you, they've all done such a great job of planning the city. It's never going to become the San Fernando Valley. There are people who want this particular housing. We need housing of any kind that has the housing increases. It just makes sense. The developers that come here to build, they know their business. They're the experts, and they know what the market will bear. We need all kinds of housings. So how do we find a way to yes? How do we keep our city vibrant and beautiful? To keep it vibrant, we need the influx of property taxes. Maybe not for you, but the schools matter to me, particularly, community colleges. I like their part of it. And the stream of development funds, it will be nice to have, that it can be planned on and budgeted for to help the needs of our diverse community. It is a community benefit, and this project makes sense. Is it big? Yep, but it fits here and the scope is appropriate. Is it perfect? Absolutely not. Nothing is and ever will be. People that live here, live at the lakes, can walk to the theater, walk to dinner, walk downtown, walk to healthy groceries. It's all very appealing. It's what we have been looking for, so please find a way to yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Julia Lad, followed by Amy Cummins, and then Billy Martin. Good evening.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and councilmember. It's good to be here tonight and staff. I should have made my statements a little larger, so I'm going to have to hold this up. I underestimate my loss of eyesight here. But I, my, my name is Julia Lad, and I'm a 17-year resident of Thousand Oaks. And I'm here tonight speaking on behalf 17-year resident of Thousand Oaks. And I'm here tonight speaking on behalf of myself as well as Mace Rich, the owner of the Oaks Mall. I appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight as housing is a critical component to the future of success and vitality of our community. We are a community that has consistently prioritized quality of life. We have preserved through a conscientious emphasis through council decisions and the community support on maintaining the elements that define Thousand Oaks, such as open space and great public schools. However, in recent years, we have not responded to the rapidly shifting need for diverse residential housing choices within our city. There are employers that are and will be investing in our community and that is creating a diverse range of opportunities and a workforce that desires to live in Thousand Oaks. However, they may not be able to access the predominantly single-family home market that is very scarce right now. Inventory is low and there's really no other options. That dominates our housing inventory as a whole. Unfortunately, this lack of diversity in housing options has limited our community's desirability. And we have a long-term effect on our vibrancy if we don't make a change. We have the opportunity to take action now by embracing something new. It will bear fruit and for the near term and in longevity. This ultimately is how we prosper. We need to have diversity in options and this is one option. We will prosper and evolve by doing so. Development in the downtown core and on the boulevard outside of residential areas is a really good place to start. So I just want to say, as a longstanding resident committed to Thousand Oaks, I urge you to take us forward to create new residential pathways and options and diversity. And let's steer where we're going ahead instead of letting the state dictate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Amy Cummins, followed by Billy Martin and then Daryl Lafferty. Hello.
Thank you so much. Amy Cummins, 40-year resident of the community, Madam Mayor, members of the council and esteemed city management. As one of the largest employers in the Cano Valley, I represent Los Robles Health System. And we are also, in the month of November, celebrating our 53 years young. So cause for celebration. Welcoming every man, woman and child, it is our mission to, to serve this community, to be a, the most trusted resource and a regional destination for care. And with that means, we've had to grow and change. Change is the only constant over the years. Several years ago, we, we introduced Tower One to Los Robles Hospital. About five years ago, we expanded our east campus, adding an additional 20 beds to meet the needs of a growing community. So with that, many of our primary care physicians have been retiring. So we decided we had to get to work to meet the needs of our community. And we added a residential, residence program, forgive me. We are now a teaching hospital. So that is wonderful change. And with that means that we are looking to, you know, to, to meet the needs that I, I've talked with some grassroots efforts, meeting with our human resources department. And a part of the concern is the professional staff and the need for affordable, sustainable, multifamily housing remains top of mind to increase the need to attract the most, or the best talent, really, to be competitive in this competitive climate. So the development of a multi-use residential community, which encourages local foot traffic and economic growth, is definitely a win-win for Los Robles and the communities that we serve. You know, we're so fortunate to have a developer such as Caruso, one that has such vested interests. We've seen the body of his work. And with our expanding ER, with our expanding operating rooms, again, we're trying to meet the needs of our community. So with this thoughtful design, our residents, but are also our physicians that are looking to move to this community, many of them want to rent before purchasing. And this would provide an opportunity. It's a drop in the bucket for the housing needs. So I thank you and applaud the approval of this initiative. Thank you. Good evening.
Thank you. And it is residents, not interns, correct? Amy? It's, it's, it's residents, not interns?
No.
Oh, the interns. Yeah, okay. All right. I wanted to make sure I, I used the correct term. There you go. Thank you. Billy Martin, followed by Daryl Lafferty.
My name is Billy Martin and I'm a Thousand Oaks lover. And I've been a Thousand Oaks lover for the 45 years that I've lived here. And two minutes doesn't work for me. I think I still have the record for 12. So I'm going to start my remarks backwards. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak and happy holidays. My sentence before that is make the deal. This is a good deal. We need it. Nothing has happened on the boulevard short of Lupe's and there are major problems there. There's no retail. We need this project for more than all of the reasons that Al spelled out, and I agree with every single one of them. We made this deal and city council, when Caruso came to town to, to work on the lakes, he was invited to work on the lakes. He came in with a proposal and he said himself a few minutes ago that that proposal was changed. And it was changed because city council members sat around and felt that they could do development better than the best developer arguably in Southern California. We owe him the opportunity, and no one else can get in anyway, we owe him the opportunity to finish this project the way he envisioned it. And I would trust his judgment on just about everything. With regard to affordable housing, I ran for city council in 2010 on an affordable housing platform. I am totally into affordable housing. In fact, I would rephrase it because what I'm really into is housing that's affordable. I don't know what the dots and dashes that the city has, I mean, that the state has. I don't know how they'll ever get. But if we can get housing that's affordable. I bought an affordable house in this town on a Thousand Oaks program of affordable housing 40 years ago in the eighties. I was in my twenties and hundred now. Camelot was built and so was the Megan Place Properties. We should be studying what we did 40 years ago. And
Thank you. Your time is up.
Yeah.
Has been up. Sorry.
I didn't get to say what I really wanted, see?
I can't give you 12 minutes. Can't give you 12 minutes. All right. Daryl Lafferty is next, followed with, by Vincent Burnakis.
Thank you. My name is Daryl Lafferty. I live across the street in the Mobile Home Park. Here in Thousand Oaks, we have protected our city for decades from high-rise buildings with obvious success, which is what most residents, I believe, want. Why would we now want to open the doors to such extreme heights being proposed here at the lakes? Our average has been mostly around 35 feet range or three stories high. We are now being asked to more than double that. If this structure were to be approved as proposed, we would be looking at a Hilton Hotel structure as we drive out of our Mobile Home Park and the traffic level, levels at unimaginable levels. The landowners, of course, want to develop their properties and juggling around with the purchase price offered by Mr. Caruso is understandably a negotiating strategy. Letting a developer sweeten the deal to get a foot in the door for taller buildings would be compromising our city's longstanding master plan, I feel. More living space obviously is needed in the downtown area, such as the lakes, which I agree with. Obviously, a few more residents living in this location would help small businesses stay solvent. Considering this particular location and all of the factors, I believe a reasonable deal can be negotiated. For me, would be in a 50-foot range or a four-story structure. I urge the council members to stay within the general master plan to maintain our height balance from our perspective throughout the city, both visually and aesthetically. There's a following note, a few notes I wanted to quote here from the updated Thousand Oaks 2045 general plan, the GBA, GPAC. The city limited building heights to lower-profile buildings because residents wanted a city where the cityscape was dominated by the surrounding beauty of the valley hillsides. Heights are generally limited in commercial zones to 35 feet or three stories high. Additional changes over and above this limited scope should be considered significant, enabling voters to have the power to vote yes or no when significant changes to the general plan are proposed.
Thank you so much. Your time unfortunately is up. Next speaker will be Vincent Burnakis. Again, you have two minutes. And then followed by Tim McDougall and Vince Vlasic.
Hello, Vince Burnakis. I'm a, I'm a longtime Thousand Oak resident, along with my wife and two kids who go to Lang Ranch. My, my son had a student council meeting today, so he was so psyched that I was coming here tonight. So I just wanted to, to get that out there. We moved from the Midwest out to California and when we landed here, we lived in a Caruso property in Glendale. You referenced it, the Americana. So I've experienced firsthand the value add to the community. This project gets a big thumbs up and a yes from me. I also want to mention that I do work for Caruso. I work in the human resource department. So I don't know much about setbacks, REAs and everything like that. But I can speak to the values and how we do business. I've, now, I've never been called a shill before. So I'd like to extend an offer to everybody here. If you ever want to sit down, have a cup of coffee with me, I'd be happy to discuss our company and our CEO with you. So I'll leave you, yep, thumbs down. I get you. Okay. I guess that's a no over there. This project gets a big thumbs up and a yes from me. So thank you for your time today.
Thank you. Next, we have Tim McDougall, followed by Vincent Vlasic. As you hear your name being called, just if you could move forward toward the podium, that'd be great. Hi, Tim.
Hey. Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, City Council, city staff, public in general. Thank you all, for everyone's time to be here. This is a very important project in front of us. There's a, a real need for housing. I think we all have discussed that, talked about the, the benefits of different types of housing and how we need it in all categories. But this particular site is very unique in that it does have encumbrances on it, that the developer is willing to, you know, work with the city. The city staff has gone to a lot of trouble to, to present to you a viable plan to put more energy into this area and make this what it was envisioned to be and what it will be for the future when many of us aren't here anymore. I love this community. I love the, the feel of Thousand Oaks and stuff. And I actually believe that this development will complement what is already here and help, help us, you know, attract people like for the hospital, for other biotechs and for our schools and stuff. Because we need more students and we need families to live here, too. And to Councilmember Adams' point about, you know, opening up housing that is maybe at above market value or at market value, it also creates somewhat of a vacuum in places where people are moving from that and they could have those houses that are more affordable for other folks. So there is a real domino effect when we approve at that. And it's not just not getting affordable housing. It's getting more housing for everyone because some of those people will transition into something, something different. I didn't mention, I am a resident of Newberry Park. I've been in the community for 21 years. And I think, I don't think of a better place that we could all live. But if we could all just get along and maybe move this along, I think this would help everyone. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Next, we have Vincent Vlasic, followed by Diana Mervil, and then Richard Lamo. Why does it say Richard? It's Rick, right?
My name is Vince Vlasic and I, and let's see here. Greetings to Madam Mayor.
Mr. Vlasic, could you get closer to the microphone, please?
Mayor Pro Tem, council members, city manager, city staff, applicant, Caruso and citizens of Thousand Oaks. As a resident and an active civic citizen for this, with this city for over 43 years, I felt compelled to voice my concerns and appreciation for this significant chapter in our very special and wonderful city. Regarding this project, mixed use at 2200 East Thousand Oaks Boulevard, the lakes, my concern is that this project has been put on a fast track and could be overlooking some key components of what we expect and what the applicant has to offer. The applicant has decided to build a seven-story building, 165-unit apartment building, which will satisfy our city's need for additional housing and a state mandate to have 2,621 units over the next eight years. The applicant intends, well, to learn, to lease the, the buildings or the apartments at market rate. No unit can have, no units have been set aside for the essential population based on income rates. Also, why can't the leases that are being prepared afford the tenants an opportunity to buy the building or the apartment? The height of the building does not comply with the existing height maximum for the residents. And despite the special location next to the civic center, it should not be exempt. Four stories is more than appropriate. I guess I'm out of time.
You are. Thank you. Next speaker is Diana Mervil and then Rick Lamo.
Hello, Madam Mayor and City Council. My name's Diana Mervil. I've been a resident of Thousand Oaks going on 22 years now. First of all, I'd like to start by saying I brought you all a gift today. The gift is the Little House Book. And it's about a house that grows up in, you know, comes in the small country and the city grows around it. And it's about what happens. It's a childhood book. But I'd like to share this with city council with a homework assignment, which is to share it with a child in your life who's important to you, whether it's a grandchild, niece, nephew, read it to them. And please do that and pass the book around. I wanted to get five copies. The bookstore had one. But if you could pass it among yourselves before you go on to make all these general plan changes of height restrictions and things like that, what we're talking about. In regards to this particular project, the Caruso project, a couple of things come to mind. One is, to me, these seem like luxury apartments. This does not seem like middle-class apartments. So Thousand Oaks is based on a middle-class community. That's what it's been the last 20 years. The average middle-class person who rents an apartment can't be more than, say, $2,400, $2,500 a month. So if these apartments are going to be $3,000 to $4,000 a month and up, that's luxury housing. That's not for the average middle-class person. Also, as regards to the payment plan over 37 years, to me, that's a concern because in the business world, companies go belly up. They sell to a larger fish. The larger fish goes belly, belly up. I mean, look at like Wang word processors, gone. So what happens? What if, if, if Caruso can't continue to pay the payments over 37 years? What kind of backup plan, what contingency plan do we have if they can't meet that commitment? They haven't been able to turn a profit more than 12% the lakes in 20 years. So if they can't turn a profit there, how do we know that they aren't biting off more than they can chew in this development and can't be financially solvent for the next 37 years? So that's just a question I ask.
Thank you so much. And your time is up. Just reminding everyone that you have two minutes. Everyone has two minutes. And so the next speaker, before we go to our Zoom speakers, is Rick Lamo with, oh, you're not. Okay, you're not.
Good evening. Mayor Bill De La Peña.
Oh, that is a different Lamo.
Members of the council, city staff, I'm Richard Lamo, not to be confused with Rick Lamo. Thank you for having me tonight. As I stated, my name is Richard Lamo and I'm a 35-year resident of Thousand Oaks who owns and operates a small business in the greater Cano Valley area. My father works for Caruso and has for 23 years. However, where he works has nothing to do with my freedom of speech and the reason that I'm here tonight. As someone who is deeply rooted in the region, I place a high value on keeping our community on a path for success long after I'm gone. The project in front of you tonight is one piece of a much bigger puzzle that has been put together for some time and will continue to be put together. Over the last decade, Thousand Oaks Boulevard has begun a brilliant transformation. Tarantula Hill, Oak and Iron, and the apartment complex on Herbs and Thousand Oaks Boulevard are just a handful of the newer additions as part of the beautification of the, the boulevard. The project in front of you tonight gives the opportunity to continue its path of momentum towards the goal of providing a destination for those looking to make Thousand Oaks a long-term stay. It's important to highlight a few points as it pertains to the project. Traffic has been talked about. Many have editorialized that apartments, both in general and specific to this project, will contribute to increased traffic. The reality is that studies will support that mixed use, if the council continues to maintain its current trajectory beyond this project, will actually cut down traffic on the boulevard potentially. Additionally, it's a certain Additionally, it's a certainty, the traffic will cut down on freeways with what are currently commuters find themselves living in the town in which they work. I've heard several mentions of the height of the structure being an eyesore. Again, the reality is that even prior to Mr. Caruso's concession to cut the building down a story, the building will sit 35 feet lower than the Civic Arts Plaza itself and will be virtually unseen, as you saw from the pictures tonight, from many of the important angles. It's also important to remember that the business that's been done with Mr. Caruso in the past, the Caruso teams invested millions in the current property, not to mention other properties in Thousand Oaks, and have an untarnished track record of 27 years in providing projects that benefit the community. In closing, it's the utmost importance that the city continues to think about the future, perpetuate its commitment to young families, and ensure that a stringent, calculated effort continue to be put forth, dedicating Thousand Oaks Boulevard to being the crown jewel of this great city. Consider the benefit, the greater good, for decades to come when you vote tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And sorry about the mix-up and confusion on my part. So we now go to our Zoom speakers. And I hope that technically we are ready to go. All right. Then our first speaker is going to be Mary Ann Van Zyle, followed by Willie Lupka, and then Rosanna Guerra. Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Mayor. As a resident of Thousand Oaks, I appreciate the opportunity to participate in our local democracy. I'm in favor of building housing on the current lakes parking lot. This is a site in Thousand Oaks that can support a six-story building. I am, however, sorely disappointed that no affordable housing is being required for this development and that it is not bringing in in-lu fees dedicated to affordable housing. The development agreement before you, which has been structured to exclude affordable housing, is a result of negotiations between city staff and Caruso. And based on this negotiation, I think it just highlights what I hope council will consider in the near future, which is an inclusionary housing ordinance that has some teeth, that requires affordable housing or requires stiff in-lu fees that go into a dedicated fund for affordable housing. I hope you vote to approve this project. It's not structured in the way that I would structure it, but I am not queen and I defer to my elected officials to make the wise choice. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker is Willie Lupka.
Madam Mayor, he's not on. If you could go to the next speaker.
Okay, then we go to Rosanna Guerra.
She's not on as well, so the next.
All right, then we go to Gordon Clint. I see Gordon Clint. I don't hear him.
On mute.
Oh, there you go.
Newberry Park. I'm disappointed that Caruso offers no affordable apartments and that he promises payments so far in the future that inflation will reduce significantly, it'll reduce their value. But if you go ahead and approve this deal, you should at least require that the project be all-electric. It should be adequately, it should also be adequately prepared for electric vehicles because it costs so much less to install the conduit underground during construction. By the time people are actually living in these apartments, our climate crisis will be worse and more people will be driving electric cars. You must require that each unit have their parking spaces ready for EV chargers to be easily connected from their own electric meter. That's a big difference. When I got an electric car, it was simple and easy to plug in the fast charger because a 220-volt unused dryer receptacle was already there in my garage. I have been able to charge at home at a lower cost than chargers that are privately owned and unregulated. Our state Cal Green Code has required all new single-family homes to be EV-capable since 2015, but apartment and condo dwellers were left out. This is not fair. People renting apartments should have the same opportunity to charge an electric car as homeowners. Please make sure Caruso installs the necessary infrastructure from each tenant's electric meter to their parking spaces. A livable future depends on everyone doing their part to reduce climate-disrupting greenhouse gas. Caruso should do his best, too. If he is a forward-thinking developer, he claims to be. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Adam Haverstock, followed by Max Guinness.
Hello, Mayor Bill De La Peña and members of the City Council. My name is Adam Haverstock, and I'm the Director of Government Affairs and Tourism for the Greater Caneo Valley Chamber of Commerce. While I normally talk about the Chamber's position on these projects, tonight I wanted to share some of my personal story. I'm speaking to you tonight from Fort Worth, Texas, because I relocated out of state earlier this year. I still work remotely for the Greater Caneo Valley Chamber of Commerce, and I commute one week a month from Texas to California. Prior to relocating, I was a 20-year resident of Moore Park. I was president of the Rotary Club, and I served a term on the Parks and Recreation Commission and three terms on the Moore Park Planning Commission. Unfortunately, when my wife and I started to have a family, we quickly realized that it would cost a small fortune to buy a single-family home in the Caneo Valley. In fact, the modest condo that we owned in Moore Park sold for more money than I could afford to spend to buy a house. I love Caneo Valley, and I didn't want to leave the area, but it's hard to deny the reality of the cost of housing in Thousand Oaks. Now my parents have to fly to Texas to visit their granddaughter and future grandson. In fact, of the six siblings in my family, four now live out of state, so Grandma and Grandpa do a lot of flying. I mentioned all of this because the only way to stop the trend of rising housing costs is to build more housing, housing of all types for all income levels. This project proposed by Caruso will help meet the future need for housing in Thousand Oaks. Please approve this project so that future Thousand Oaks residents don't have to see their kids and grandkids move out of state. Thank you.
Thank you. I didn't know you had moved to Texas. Yeah. All right. Next up is Max Guinness, followed by Tom Cohen, and then Natalie Yanez.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. On behalf of Ventura County MB, we are a pro-housing group throughout the county. I'm asking that you support this project. Dense mixed-use housing like this will make Thousand Oaks more affordable, sustainable, and inclusive. On affordability, the study mentioned by Councilmember Adam identifies the filtering effect, and actually, a new study from Stockholm confirms that. But many other studies find that new homes reduce housing costs and their associated problems like displacement, poverty, and homelessness. Now, as Councilmember McNamie mentioned, studies also show that requiring developers to subsize housing for low-income people increase the cost of housing for others. They are effectively a tax on market-rate residents. Now, taxes have their place to provide public benefits, but taxation should be fair. Why should the families who live in these apartments be taxed more than families living in single-family homes? Finally, on sustainability, consider where these families will live if not in these apartments. Most likely, they'll live in single-family homes farther from jobs, driving more and polluting more. It's very unlikely that they live in an electrified building. A recent study found that doubling population density reduces per capita carbon emissions by 46%. That would make these dense, walkable homes some of the greenest in the city and maybe the county. And last, I'd like you to imagine on inclusion, that's 165 families in the audience, if they were there with you today. They're asking you to allow them to live in your community. They're already paying $80,000 each, plus impact fees, plus all the other taxes that other residents pay. I think the moral calculus is clear, and I don't think it'd change as much if there were only 20 families that would live on the top floor. So I hope you'll approve these homes as proposed. Thank you very much.
Next speaker is Tom Cohen, followed by Natalie Yanez.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council members. My name is Tom Cohen. I'm a 60-year resident of Thousand Oaks. Thousand Oaks Boulevard has languished for years. The lakes have, has languished as well. We need to revitalize this, the lakes, and this project is really the first opportunity to do that and create a walkable village, which I think it only enhances both the retail opportunities along the Boulevard, but it is also more environmentally superior. And we know Caruso and his commitment to quality is real. It's not bluster. As a board member on the Greater Caneo Valley Chamber of Commerce, we hear all the time from our local businesses that housing of this type is desperately needed. The height is not an issue. It meets the requirements of the specific plan and will not block views or distant vistas or tower over Thousand Oaks Boulevard. Prior and existing leaders through the Civic Arts Plaza specific plan saw this as a unique opportunity that cannot be replicated anywhere else in this city. Please support this project and trust your staff that is getting everything it can for the city and its residents. Thank you very much.
Next, we have Natalie Yanez, followed by Berus Kuklan.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and City Council members, for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Natalie Yanez, and I'm the current Board Chair for the Greater Caneo Valley Chamber of Commerce. And tonight, I'm speaking on behalf of the Chamber. This project, as echoed before me by many of those who spoke, will bring much-needed housing to our business community and contribute to creating a true downtown environment. Are young professionals looking for this type of housing near amenities such as shopping and the nightlife? This project provides that. We need to create housing opportunities that are attractive for the talent that our large employers are trying to attract and retain. And lastly, I just want to say that this project does align with the vision that, of the updated land use map that was supported by the council earlier this year in May. I want to thank you all for your time tonight and hope that you are voting yes for this. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Berus Kuklan, followed by Clint Foltz and Gary Raymond. And if you work for the applicant, please say so. Thank you.
Hi. My name is Berus Kuklan. I'm speaking tonight voluntarily on behalf of my wife, Berus Kuklan, and myself. My wife and I are residents of Thousand Oaks for 27 years, and we have raised our two daughters here. I'm also an employee of Caruso since 2008. However, I don't think my employment diminishes my rights as a resident of my beloved city of Thousand Oaks. I was a resident of this city long before my employment at Caruso. In fact, I was a supporter of the original lakes project many years ago. My family, my friends, and I have enjoyed the lakes, the promenade, and the commons for the last many years, a safe and enjoyable environment. The Caruso organization has proven for the last 25 years that they are trustworthy and they care about our city and our residents. The reality is that we need more housing in all scales. I believe we should support the projects such as this one, which are beautiful and beneficial to our city by providing safe and vibrant environment. I respectfully request you to approve this project. Thank you.
Thank you. And we will go to Clint Foltz, the last one joining us via Zoom.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Clint Foltz. I'm a Thousand Oaks resident and a member of the Caneo Climate Coalition. Personally, I was pleased to hear about the many forward-thinking and sustainable features proposed for this project when we met with the Caruso group, and I'd like to thank them again for meeting with us. Thousand Oaks absolutely needs more multifamily housing that is walkable and close to services, and this project checks those particular boxes. However, there are no affordable units guaranteed in this project. There's a possibility that some of the community benefits could be spent on affordable units elsewhere in the city, but this won't happen for years, if at all. We have so many people commuting into Thousand Oaks for work because they can't afford to live here, which increases our vehicle miles traveled. Transportation accounts for 62% of TO's greenhouse gas emissions, and providing affordable units could help reduce that percentage. Additionally, it doesn't seem to make sense to run gas lines into this project, but to instead electrify everything now, as retrofitting later will be costly. Who will pay for these retrofits in the future? The tenants, the city? At a minimum, all infrastructure for electrification should be included. We have the opportunity to electrify new buildings now and save on costly retrofits in the future. We need to future-proof our community, not just continue down the same path we've been on. If the Caruso project can deliver on its promises in writing to provide the sustainable features that we verbally, that were verbally proposed, along with an all-electric building and affordable units built now, that could go a long way to benefit the community in addition to providing the much-needed multifamily housing that I support. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And just so that, for clarification, we will actually have additional speakers joining us via Zoom after we are through the in-house speakers. All right, didn't want to scare our public speakers at home. All right. So now we go back, as I mentioned, Gary Raymond, Karen Wilburn, and Sean Maradian.
Good evening, City Council members. Appreciate being here. Gary Raymond, 40-year resident. The argument that Caruso needs 165 apartments to make the lake shores successful is fallacious. None of the other malls in TO, the Oaks, the Promenade, or Jan's Mall have any apartments at all, zero. Not only that, but the lakes has Thunderbird Residential with 161 units across the street and Camelot condos with 180 units within short walking distance. An additional 165, 80, or any units isn't going to matter. I'd look more at the rents Caruso is charging and suspect Caruso has given up on the commercial income and just wants to make his money off of residential income at the lakes. Second point, we must not change the allowed apartment building height, which is four stories. Story poles must be used to demonstrate the proposed outline of the four-story building, and the mountain ridge line rule must be applied to verify the four stories do not block the view of mountain tops from TO Boulevard. I contacted a Caruso representative and verified there is no drawing in the over 1,300-page report showing the proposed apartment building's west side view. That's the one that comes forward to TO Boulevard that's parallel to Lakes Drive and which includes Thousand Oaks Boulevard and the 101 freeway. There's no drawing that includes all of that. The side elevation drawing on page 964 does not include TO Boulevard. The photo from TO Boulevard and Caneo School Road, which has been shown several times tonight in the report, is misleading as it is at a diagonal and approximately 40% further away, thus making the apartments appear smaller. Caruso's people must provide this missing drawing, which needs to be verified by our city staff, and with a reasonable amount of time for public viewing and citizen comments before a vote is taken by the city council. Please, this critical drawing is not in a 1,300-page proposal. The city council must postpone the vote tonight until we have it, no more than 14 stories at the lake. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Karen Wilburn, followed by Sean Maradian and Dave Gulbranson.
Well, it's me again. I am just, not only am I representing myself, but I'm also representing Canal Valley Advocates for Sensible Planning. I ask that you, I please, please ask that you stick to the vision of the general plan. The height should be kept to no more than four stories. There have been comments tonight about the current plan being 75 stories, I'm sorry, 75 feet. That's true, but it does not allow for residential. So as we're changing the specific plan to allow for residential, we certainly have the right to put in the four-story limitation. I think it's misleading to stay otherwise. I had a big old speech about affordable housing, which I think it has to be in there, and it's been solved because Ms. Robinson basically said they don't have, they don't have a problem with affordable housing. It was the city staff that, you know, they were trying to meet with the city staff one. And so council members, all you have to do is go educate the city staff as far as what you want for affordable housing. Let's go back and re-discuss this a little bit more. Sounds like Caruso's willing to do it. I also have a big problem with the sales agreement being paid over 37 years. The value of money changes, yes, it's not going to be $13 million, but there are issues about bankruptcy, et cetera. If the developer doesn't agree to this, let it languish. Let nothing be built because we need to draw a line in the stand and let the future developers see that we're serious. One last comment, if this lot, parking lot is supposed to be available for civic center parking, I have to ask the question of why all the parking spaces that are closest to the civic center have a sign limiting parking to one hour? Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker is Sean Maradian, followed by Dave Gulbranson and Bill Kohler.
Good evening, honorable council members. Sean Maradian, lifelong resident of Thousand Oaks and president of the Thousand Oaks Boulevard Association. On behalf of our membership and the thousands of professionals we employ, we ask for your support and approval of this affordable housing project this evening. That's correct. We consider this an affordable housing project. We are the ones that work, live, and manage the businesses surrounding this project and have been waiting nearly a decade for its fruition. Our support is based on facts, respectful advocacy, and our expertise in the industry and intimate market knowledge of the and intimate market knowledge of the need for these units. This project isn't going to meet all of our community's long- and short-term goals. However, as we've heard time and time again from this council, we're going to take it slow and have a measured approach. Does a measured approach mean that if this applicant doesn't concede to where every council concession is to be denied, despite the vast and overwhelming benefits the project delivers? We'll see what happens later tonight. What concerns us and needs to be addressed is the departure from respectful, healthy community advocacy. We acknowledge and respect that there are varying opinions on housing, which is healthy and expected. However, recently, a micro, highly vocal segment of our community have begun a dangerous campaign of baseless personal attacks on city staff, council members, and other members of the public with no evidence whatsoever to support these frivolous accusations. Staff and council have been accused of corruption, incompetence, bribery, destroying the quality of life of Thousand Oaks residents, and more that should not be repeated from these chambers.
Thank you so much. Your time is up. Our next speaker is Dave Gulbranson, followed by Bill Kohler.
Good evening, Dave Gulbranson. I live in the Thousand Oaks side of West Lake Village. I'm a newbie here. I've only been here about, well, nearing 50 years, but I say newbie because you compare it to the longevity of my friend, Ed Jones.
I remember when you came, Dave.
And you didn't stop me. A 45-year businessman on Thousand Oaks Boulevard. I started two community banks in Thousand Oaks. I taught at UCSB Negotiation and Sales. I sat on the grand jury for a year. I've bought and sold with investors in some of my own properties, about 16 properties on Thousand Oaks Boulevard. One time, I was told I was the second-largest property owner on Thousand Oaks Boulevard after the city, and they weren't for sale, or I'd bought them. But, you know, it's amazing to me that, and I speak from experience, that affordable housing, affordable housing keeps coming up. You know, I speak from experience, because you can't take the most expensive property in Thousand Oaks, Thousand Oaks Boulevard, and put affordable housing on it. It makes no sense at all. I've lost two development deals from developers, because our illustrious group here said, "We want, 'Downsize your project, and we want more affordable housing.'" They were on Thousand Oaks Boulevard. Come on, folks, let's use some common sense. Let's put together a blue-ribbon committee and come up with a solution to low-cost, affordable housing in our community. We can do it. Ed, the Park District isn't poor on real estate. It's poor on money to develop real estate. How about carving off little pieces of these vast properties that the Park and Rec District owns and, I don't know, putting in low-income housing? Or, we're surrounded with open space. Some of that open space, and I lived near it, has sewers and offsites already in. How about carving off a little piece of that and putting in some affordable housing? I'm talking about the south side of Las Rubles Golf Course. There are a lot of ways to solve this problem without taking the most expensive property in Thousand Oaks and trying to shove affordable housing on it. You can't do it. I'm in favor of this project. We need it. We have a lot of middle-income people who work for our big businesses here that are living in those massive apartment units down in Camarillo, Simi, and the Valley. We need to have these projects. We need to provide this housing, and we need to do it now. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Bill Kohler, followed by Carolyn Gyo. Good evening. And you are on the Agoura Hills City Council?
Yes, Mayor.
Yes.
I served 12 years on the Plan Commission and 13 years as a council member. I'm here tonight as a board member of the Greater Caneo Chamber. I'm also a 44, 45-year property owner here at Thousand Oaks, so I am invested in the entire valley. I've heard the presentation this evening and made a couple of quick notes. I will try not to repeat what some of the others have mentioned, but your Civic Center Campus Master Plan, while the design is still ongoing, of importance is the objective to create a pedestrian-friendly and work-like environment supportive of local businesses and establish a critical mass of people within the walking distance of this campus master plan. That's what this project will do. One thing I have not heard this evening is, and I'm not saying this with the idea that a applicant may try to hold a city council hostage, but if a plan is not worked out, you revert back to what you have, and that is a long-term lease that has not produced any money to the city. So that has to be looked upon as a critical component in what your decision may be, because at the very least, the lease would continue to 2036 or '37, and with the options, it would take it to, I believe, 2099. So those are important factors to consider. Whether the developer will ever reach a number beyond the 12% value of his investment is hard to say, but he hasn't in the last 20 years. The proposed development, which is within the specific plan and meets the specific plan, would provide up to 165 units of drastically needed residential in the community, in the center of the community. As to the environmental impacts, the level of service that-
I'm so sorry, but your time is up.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you so much, though.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Next, we have Carolyn Gyo, followed by Lauren Lurch and Danielle Borja.
How can I get it to you? My name is Carolyn Gyo. I've lived here since 2006. I'm opposed to this seven-story apartment building, because it is too high for our city. Our tallest buildings are five stories, and those five stories are at the center of the buildings. One is Amgen, and it's way away from the freeway in an industrial area. The other is the Hyatt Hotel. It's sunk below the freeway, so it almost looks like a two- or three-story building from the freeway. And this seven-story building will change the character of our city, and it will set a precedent for more seven-story buildings. It's too much density, too much traffic, and uses too much of our water, which is already in short supply. I want to also put special attention on the design of this building. Please look at what I handed you. It does not fit with the character of our city. Surely, Mr. Caruso knows this, because he designed the West Lake Promenade and the Strip Mall at Moore Park and Thousand Oaks Boulevard. Both of those malls are Spanish-style, Spanish architecture. And most of our beautiful buildings in our city are Spanish architecture with cloisters. Look at the Hyatt Hotel. Why did he design such a building for this location? To me, it looks like it's designed for glitzy Las Vegas, not downtown semi-rural Thousand Oaks. One council member agreed with me about that and was going to bring it up. Does he not, does he want to transform our city? Please do not approve this building tonight. It has come up for a vote without enough study, especially concerning the financial benefits to our city.
Thank you.
But also, it is too tall. It doesn't fit, and it is too big. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Danielle, no, wait a minute, Lauren Lurch, and then Danielle Borja, and then Kathy Schutz.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council, and city staff. My name is Lauren Lurch, and I'm a Simi Valley resident. Three and a half years ago, I opened a small business here in Thousand Oaks. So while my residents might not be in this town, I can assure you guys I spend the majority of my time here. When I'm not working, I also find myself back here, whether it's date nights with my husband, dinner with my girlfriends, or mommy-and-me dates with my kids. We enjoy our time walking around, eating, and patronizing businesses. If we wanted an empty space, we'd go to the Simi Valley Mall. But as a small-business owner, the idea here is generating more foot traffic for a lot of these local businesses. One of my biggest adversities, I would say, would be foot traffic for my business. So to think of the hundreds of businesses that'll benefit from so many people is just, I think, a win-win. I also agree that there's a difference between affordable housing and housing that's affordable. And I think that there's a lot of great options for not only single residents, but also multifamily options, too. The property is not just very attractive, because it's beautiful, but it's very vibrant. And I think that that's very attractive for people my age as well, to be able to have a place that you can have fun, create good memories. It's vibrant. There's people walking around. I'm in supportive of this, and thank you for your time. Have a great evening.
Thank you. And I'm amazed that you can read this off of your little watch. I don't know-
I would like to add that I had my phone on airplane mode and on low battery, but it died, so thankfully, I was able to send it here.
Oh, okay. All right. I think that's the first one. I think it's the first speech off of an Apple Watch. All right. Next speaker is Danielle Borja, followed by Kathy Schutz.
Good evening, Mayor De La Peña and members of the City Council. My name is Danielle Borja. I'm a Thousand Oaks resident, also raising my three daughters here with my husband. I'm also the President/CEO of the Greater Caneo Valley Chamber of Commerce. We represent over 800 businesses locally. Our Board of Directors would like to express our strong support for this project for you this evening. We all know there's a critical need for housing, but in addition to the quantity of housing, we also need different types of housing options, especially for our growing biotech sector. Many professionals are looking for housing that is close to amenities, entertainment, shopping, and restaurants. One of the city's top goals is to maintain strong local employment base geared towards retaining high-quality businesses. You will hear from and have heard from these high-quality businesses tonight, like Las Rubles Hospital, and they need more housing, and housing that is going to be attractive for their employees. Another city goal is to implement high-quality revitalization projects on Thousand Oaks Boulevard and develop a pedestrian-oriented downtown. Caruso is the equivalent of quality, and this project aligns with the recently endorsed land use map and the overall vision for the downtown area. Caruso has already brought the height down, and it will not obstruct any views that we all love in this area. Let's look to this as an opportunity to place more local residents in walking distance of our businesses, meet the needs of our economic growth, support the arts, and activate the Boulevard. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Kathy Schutz, followed by Stephen Caston. And after Stephen Caston, we will go back to our Zoom speakers.
Good evening, council members and staff. I'm here this evening to speak about the many positives of Mr. Caruso's housing projects in Thousand Oaks and at the Lakes. Mr. Caruso has certainly proved himself, not only with his outstanding projects here in Thousand Oaks, but he also has many award-winning projects all over Southern California. And I think we're really lucky to have him here in Thousand Oaks. Mr. Caruso has consistently kept his word on all of his developments here in the city, and he is now bringing his housing expertise to our city, and we need to embrace it. The well-designed and functional housing project being discussed this evening will be significantly shorter than the adjacent Civic Arts Plaza, and it also will be shorter than what is allowed at the Civic Arts Plaza-specific plan. It will also begin to create the critical mass our Boulevard needs. Knowing the very high standards Mr. Caruso has set for all of his properties, I hope all of you will vote to approve this excellent project this evening. It'll be a win-win for our city. Thank you.
And our last in-house speaker for now is Stephen Caston, and then we'll go to Zoom.
Again, my name is Steve Caston. I'm a property owner in Thousand Oaks. And I've been a real estate investor, property manager, for 39 years, having started in Santa Monica, where my parents owned property on the Santa Monica Mall, saw the development there that went way too far. I then went to Los Angeles, witnessed the same issues of bad developments that happened, and I've left Los Angeles. I've come into Thousand Oaks to open my family-based business. My daughter lives in Thousand Oaks, and we love the community. I'm the last one to want to see over development. I want to note that I've been a seasoned ticket holder at the Civic Arts Theater since it opened, and over the years, I've gone to the lakes to have dinner with family and friends, and I've seen the lakes fail. Restaurants move in and out, and it's not been successful. What will happen now with Caruso Development, that will all change. I think the lakes will be enhanced, and I don't think anybody will be leaving. And a really important issue that we've all talked about, affordable housing. It's needed all over the state of California. But why penalize Caruso? I mean, his project, his development is perfect. I think it'll be the jewel of the Boulevard. So I just want to say again, we're fortunate to have Caruso do this development. I've seen his projects, being in real estate. They've all been very well-done. And lastly, I want to say, I do not work for Caruso.
Thank you for saying that. I think the question is, is it all Zoom from now on? Is it? No. Thank you. So the next speaker is on Zoom. It's going to be, and I hope that... I'm so sorry. Can we go to the first two? Because we have some elderly. Yeah, after the first two, and then we can take a break. All right. Well, actually, I'm looking... Oh. Yeah, well-
We have a total of 30 left. It's 10, 10, 10, and 10.
Yeah, no, I see. I see that we have someone there that's probably already very, very tired. But in order, it says Jackson Piper first, Isaac Yun, and then Kinsey Flame. So let's take a quick five-minute break then. Sorry about that, but a quick five-minute break.
It was gorgeous. And then the arts really came. I wish Mr. Caruso, with all his promises about supporting the arts, were really doing that. He's not. Don't be fooled by his rhetoric. He is not a friend of the arts. And the arts are very important in this community. It's what has pulled us together and kept us alive and made this community what it is. I appreciate Claudia that you let me speak. And I am so tired, I gotta go to bed. But I don't think the aesthetics of the building are in keeping with Thousand Oaks. It's not a beautiful four or five or six-story building. It's concrete and steel. There's nothing beautiful or soft about it. It's going to bring terrible traffic to the corner there, the Civic Arts Plaza. We need the arts to be supported there.
Thank you. Thank you so much, yeah. Thank you for waiting three and a half hours and your time is up. Thank you, Nancy. Next, we have Jackson Piper, followed by Isaac Yun.
Good evening, members of the City Council. Can you hear me?
Yes.
My name is Jackson Piper. I'm a resident of unincorporated Newbury Park. I've lived here for over 30 years now. And I am calling in support of this project. I know it's not a perfect project, but it is going to bring benefits to this community. I do not work for Caruso, by the way. I'm an urban planner and interested in urbanism. And I believe that Thousand Oaks does need to allow some change. If the 165 units are so proposed for this site are denied here tonight, those units are going to have to be developed somewhere else in the city and possibly push out other units that would have been developed in those places that would have supported more the workforce housing and the low-income housing that we need most desperately in this city. So I think that allowing this housing to be built here, even up to the height that's proposed, would be a benefit to the city. I think that really having the basis for walkability at the core of Thousand Oaks and a basis for accessibility for people in this complex to go walk around, go to the lakes, go to the Civic Arts Plaza is the beginning of something which will redefine what Thousand Oaks is, not in a bad way, but in a way that makes us much more sustainable and much more humane to live in. The concerns of traffic and parking and height have all been addressed by many other speakers and by staff. And I feel like I trust their judgment in saying that those are pretty much nonissues that shouldn't stand in the way of this project. I think that people fear us becoming the San Fernando Valley. But really, what the San Fernando Valley is mostly is single-family homes, sprawl suburbia. It's very similar to Thousand Oaks.
Thank you, Mr. Piper. Your time is up.
Thank you.
Next, we have Karen Martin.
Hi, how are you? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. First, I'd like to comment on that night lady. I agree, the building looks like a dormitory that I stayed in in college. So it's not pretty. There's some really pretty ones. The one on La Cienega is beautiful. And I would like something like that. I don't care how tall it is. But I think, for me, this is all about the deal. I'm resident and a business owner on the board. Forgive my lack of optimism on the city's ability to negotiate this deal, but you negotiated this one, the first one. So you know what? Maybe we should hire a city attorney that's first in real estate law instead of California Environmental Quality Act. You know, I opened my business in the 90s when the city hall was going in, right across from the Blue Rock Project. And two and a half years of piled rivers didn't help me. I just think that you have to look at Rick's website to understand who he is. And you need to get everything in writing. Because his website is saying it's all going to be green. It's already a done deal. It's 100% occupancy at the lakes. That's not true. The planning commission declared no traffic study was needed because these tenants won't travel so far from their home as other residents. Who guarantees that? Why is there no vibrational study? This thing is off against the freeway. Caruso has stated...
I'm sorry, you're breaking up.
And traffic, and he'll pay fees. Why isn't there a study? And we don't know. Because just like down here on Lynn Road, which I am far away from you people, you're impacting me. I guarantee you, you only have one place that sells building materials.
Thank you.
I think you really need to think about this. And don't do it. Don't do it.
I'm sorry, but you have been breaking up and time is up as well. Thank you. Now, we go to Isaac Yun, followed by Kinsey Flame and Kat Selm. Do we have Isaac Yun? No, then we will go to Kinsey Flame. Kinsey Flame.
Good evening, Thousand Oaks City Council, staff and community. My name is Kinsey Flame. My husband and I raise our two children in this community, as well as have two businesses locally. I sit on the Greater Canejo Chamber Board of Directors, the CBUSD District Advisory Council, Executive Board, and our county's only diaper bank, and a few other local boards. As requested, I am not on anyone's payroll. I am here as a local citizen who has lots of opinions. Anywho, sitting on these boards allows me to have an insight and hear what our community needs from a variety of different viewpoints. On top of that, I admin a Facebook group of over 23,000 local moms in which daily posts are made in search of smaller apartment-style homes with less maintenance. Mr. Caruso has consistently created well-thought-out developments and given back to the communities he partners with. This development would give our community the apartment-like housing that people are looking for. This development is not an open space land. It's in the back of an unused parking lot. This development is pretty much hidden from sight, standing on Thousand Oaks Boulevard. This development would give new families moving into our area a choice. This development would give those seniors living in our community the ability to move out of their larger home into a smaller home, staying in the area and allowing for new families to move into our area. Caruso's property would truly be an added benefit to our community. I hope the City Council chooses to vote yes on this item. Thank you and have a good evening.
Thank you, you as well. Next, we have Kat Selm, followed by Faith Grant.
Hi, good evening, Madam Mayor and Councilmembers. Thank you all for hearing all of our various thoughts tonight. I know it's going to be a long one. I'm here on behalf of the volunteer-led organization, the Canejo Climate Coalition. And I'm also coming to you as a renter in Thousand Oaks who is absolutely terrified of her rent being raised. So we need more affordable housing in To. And housing that is multifamily, walkable, and near services is a win for the climate and for people. However, to really reduce our transportation emissions footprint, our largest emission source in the city, we need to address the real problem, which is people commuting from out of town that can't afford to live here. And this is one reason why we believe the project should be providing the community benefit of affordable units now. We are appreciative of the project's dedication to solar, battery storage, heat pumps, and EV charging. But we also believe council has a real opportunity to address the sustainability features of the project at a greater scale. At this project and all other recent string of approvals are conveniently occurring before the CAPP and the general plan update are approved and the new Title 24 building codes are adopted. This means that projects will not be future-proofed and will continue to tap into nonrenewable sources of energy for many decades to come, even as our grid gets greener and greener. So it can be argued that the city's not getting the best deal on this project. And we believe that because of that, the taxpayers should see the community benefits we want now. Please guide the developers towards a better project for all of Thousand Oaks residents and for a better, cleaner future, require all electric or at least electric-ready so that we can avoid costly retrofits and some affordable units for working-class people like myself. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next speaker is Isaac Yun. Hello. Well, he was there. And then he was gone. There you are, okay. But we cannot hear you, Isaac, for some reason. Can you please unmute? I think he is unmuted. No. I'm so sorry, Isaac, we cannot hear you. So I'm going to have to go to the next speaker. And hopefully, we'll figure it out meantime. Next one would be Faith Grant.
Good evening. My name is Faith Grant, and I live in Westlake Village. Since buildings and transportation make up the majority of greenhouse gases that contribute to global warming in Thousand Oaks, the city needs to keep the environment in mind when evaluating the lakes project. Caruso has been touted for designing architecturally beautiful buildings. However, of more importance is that these buildings reduce their impact on the environment and are designed to adapt to global warming over the next 10 to 30 years. Caruso representatives Chris Robertson and Bryce Ross met with Canejo Climate Coalition during the November 11th meeting. The representatives verbally stated that green building features would be included. Some of these were 50% of covered garage parking spaces to be EV-ready, rooftop solar, battery storage to pair with photovoltaic, electric heat pumps for space heating and cooling. These are all features one would expect of a forward-thinking developer. However, to date, Caruso has failed to document these features. It would be helpful to know why this proposal has to be approved so quickly. With over 1,300 pages in the supplemental package released on a holiday weekend, it's insufficient time for residents and the City Council to review. Even Chris Robertson of Caruso shared during our November 11th meeting the lack of time to write up the proposed green building features. Isn't global warming important enough to allow time for Caruso to put their verbal green building proposals in writing? It would be beneficial for the City Council, residents, and the developers to get this right and to take the time to review this development from several perspectives, but especially the sustainable building features that will address global warming. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Scott Hirayama.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council. My name is Scott Hirayama. And I've been, I've lived and worked in Thousand Oaks for the last 15 years. My wife and I have raised our family here. We both, we have two boys who went through the local public school system here and are now in college. I support this project for a number of reasons. First, our family has been a longtime customer of the lakes. The project will provide existing struggling and empty storefronts with a stronger customer base from the existing apartment residents. Secondly, the project will also guarantee revenue for the city for several years, which we don't have today. And lastly, I like that the apartment buildings are set back from the To Boulevard and closer to the freeway, which will help to minimize the impact on the street view. So please approve this project for our city. Thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you. Next, we have Douglas Baker, followed by Lila Faz. Do we have Douglas Baker?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, hello.
Hi, my name is Douglas Baker. I live in Newbury Park. I have been living in Newbury Park for one year. I am in favor of this project. I'll keep it short, since there's so many speakers that have already spoken and so many more to go. Essentially, I think we do need to approve more projects that increase the number of houses, housing in this community. As an example, I am one of those young professionals that's just trying to get their career started here in Thousand Oaks. And it has been difficult for me to try and find housing that's close to where I work. In particular, in my example, in the 14 months that I have lived here in Newbury Park, the place that I was lucky and fortunate enough to find is now estimated to be around 20% to 25% higher in its estimated value, which means that if I came along this time, right now, looking for a place to live, I would not have found my current house. I would not have been able to find anything affordable for my given price range, for, you know, my given, you know, career point. So again, I would just like to say thank you for the City Council for all the wonderful points that you guys have been bringing up regarding the affordable housing. But I think in this particular instance, we should move forward with the proposal as it currently is. Because I think at this point, any housing that we can build now is going to pay off. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next is Lila Faz. And then we will go back to Isaac Yun.
My name is Lila Faz, and I'm a resident of Thousand Oaks. I'm actually speaking tonight on behalf of myself and my husband, Jose Carlos Faz, in favor of the apartments being built at the lakes. My family has lived here for 30 years. I grew up here, and I recently moved back to the city with my husband and two-year-old son. As a full-time working mom, I work about 50-plus hours per week as a marketer. My leisure hours to spend with my son and my spouse are absolutely precious. We typically love to spend those hours partaking in family-friendly activities at Caruso properties in the area, like the Promenade and the Lakes. They're a beautiful, safe, and perfect environment for kids. When I think about all the city has to offer, the one major gap that currently exists is apartment living close to amenities that's affordable for millennial working families and young couples, many of whom are hoping to capture the benefits of city amenities in the suburbs. In my view, the Caruso team is the perfect one to execute on this in a way that is trustworthy, forward-thinking, and that will retain the integrity of our beautiful community. This is a team that will help this community take a big step towards the building of a vibrant and energetic downtown area. Of all the people who have ever stepped foot on a Caruso property, I have never once heard someone say, "I wish this wasn't here." On the contrary, they love going there with friends and family. With this in mind, my husband and I are in strong support of this project of the lakes and respectfully ask this committee to vote for its approval. Thank you.
Thank you. We go to Isaac Yun again. He's gone. He's gone, okay. Then Gary Hartung, followed by Mike Noom. Oh, Isaac Yun is, now we're going back to in-person in the Sure Form. Good evening, Gary, and then Mike Noom after you.
All right, I'm Gary Hartung. I live in Thousand Oaks. I support the project to build more housing here. I think that $4,000 a month, though, is not affordable housing. It should be a lot less than that. Secondly, if there, if this project is built, they mentioned that they're going to, they would have a pool there. The pool must be indoors. I have suffered for the last eight years with at least seven really bad skin cancer surgeries. And I mean bad ones. You can't, you cannot know what it's like to go home and be told to wear a Houdini bandana around your whole freaking head for two weeks and do nothing but sit in a chair because of skin cancer surgery on your head and face. So if they build this, which is, I hope they do, the unit should be less than $4,000 a month. The pool must be indoors. And every vacant lot in Thousand Oaks here must be used for housing. This old Christian school up here on, what is it? Hillcrest or Jan's Road. Why don't you tear that down and build a four- or maybe five-story apartment building like that so the average working guy can live there and have more housing for seniors? And there's another
Thank you.
school around here, too, that's sitting there and rotting. Build housing there.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Mike Noom, followed by Suzanne Duckett and Michael Dutra.
Good evening. My name is Mike Nowm from Thousand Oaks. I'm strongly opposed to this project because it's a terrible financial deal and contains no affordable housing. Net present value calculation is a basic financial tool used to discount future cash flows, like the community benefit payments, to today's true value. City staff has been telling us what a good deal it is for the city to sell this seven-and-a-half-acre parcel for a net present value of only $4.6 million, based on 165-unit building and a discount rate of 6%. Net present value falls to about $4 million if only 138 units are built. This is the true value of the $2 million sales price plus the community benefit payments. City's own appraisal showed that the value of just the residential parcel was $7.67 million, with a value of $5.9 million as commercial. For some reason, the city was convinced that the residential land should be considered surplus with little to no value and requested a subsequent appraisal, which valued the property at $2.9 million. The appraiser characterized this approach as extraordinary. City has a right to clawback the portion of the site not being used by the applicant under the 2004 ground lease if the proposed theater and parking garage were not developed. This can still be pursued. The proposed agreement also has a number of unusual giveaways. By taking a community benefit payment instead of an all-upfront cash for the sale, city becomes a banker to Caruso for the project, and property taxes on the true land value are under-realized. To make matters worse, Caruso can claim hardship and defer all but $100,000 per year on five community benefit payments to be added to the very end of the payment stream with no interest cost. This could stretch the payment stream out to 47 years from now. The city is also granting an easement to Caruso for an additional 23 parking stalls, pool equipment, and walking paths and gates on city property. The applicant should use their own land for this. Deal so bad, even the balconies don't meet city standards. Please deny this bad deal.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Suzanne Duckett, followed by Michael Dutra.
Suzanne Duckett, Thousand Oaks. I don't believe that Rick Caruso really does care about this community, at least now. If he did, he would be building a four-to-five-story building. Period. So obviously, he doesn't, he only cares about himself. With that said, I can't even imagine anybody wanting to live there. You're right on the freeway. It's bad air, unhealthy air. Nobody from the hospital is going to want to live there. The noise level is going to be horrendous. And a noise wall doesn't do anything for that. We can, I'm, I don't know, two, three miles back from the freeway, and we still get that drone because of the way, the shape of this valley. So believe me, the noise level is going to be horrendous. There's going to be vibration from the freeway. And the traffic is going to be awful on Willow Lane. I use Willow Lane like once a month, maybe twice or three times a month. And when it gets, goes into Hampshire, you have to make a right turn, quickly get into the left lane so that you can make a U-turn to get on the freeway. So apparently, you, none of you who are going to vote for this have been on Willow Lane, at least going to Hampshire and trying to get on the freeway.
Thank you. Your time is up.
We need to vote for people who have character and who are not corrupt.
Our next speaker is Michael Dutra, followed by Andrew Garl, and then Janet Miller-Wall. And after Janet Miller-Wall, we'll go back to Zoom.
Good evening. My name is Mike Dutra, and I'm a resident of the Canejo Valley for 31 years. I'm also a business owner in Westlake Village. And basically, the issue here is I started this housing crisis because I'm staying in my home and I'm not leaving anytime soon. So that's not allowing my kids to move back into this area. This project right here, I've looked at it, I've talked to some people. It looks great. Younger people are really drawn to having things where it's close to them, with the shopping and the restaurants and such. I know my kids will eventually move back here. I don't want to be chasing them around the United States like Adam Haverstock and his parents. So I'm really hoping that this project comes through. It's going to be beneficial for the city, and it's going to be beneficial for myself. I'm very selfish about that. And just real quickly, I'm also on the board with the chamber. I'm on the board with the YMCA. And I'm also president of the Rotary Club of Westlake Village. And the consensus in our area is that we really need a workforce. We're dying because of this lack of workforce. People are not going to be commuting to this area because they'll be able to find jobs and they'll be working remotely. So we really need housing that's in this area for the potential workforce for our community. And Caruso, please open a 24-hour deli, because I'm starving. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. We now have Andrew Garl. Is Andrew Garl here? No. Then we will go to Janet Miller-Wall. And then we will go back to Zoom.
Good evening, Mayor Bill de la Peña and council members. Happy Giving Tuesday. We'll see who gets the most gifts tonight. I'm just going to read a couple of things from my letter because it was sent very late. We just arrived home from being away with family. And I definitely did not read very much of the 1,334 pages. So my first point to you was that council pays lip service to workforce housing while aware of several housing applications in the pipeline, including the one tonight. Yet you refuse to recreate an inclusionary housing ordinance that ensures how those income units get built. And I believe Tracy said that you have an inclusionary housing ordinance, but it allows for zero payment. That's not an inclusionary housing ordinance. So this is something that you need to fix. You actually should be postponing this meeting. You should be postponing any other applications that are in the pipeline because this is important. And you've got the state demanding you build over 1,000 low and very low-income units. How are you going to do that? How are you going to get anywhere near that? So you get 50 from Kmart, Al says, and you've got 15 from 299, Thousand Oaks Boulevard. You need to do better. This is important. And you have claimed in your goals for the city that this is something you're going to accomplish. So do it. My next point is approving five, six, and seven-story buildings redefines the character and nature of our community. Is this something you really want to do? I think most of your constituents in this city would say, stick to four. Maybe you could have five here. Six, seven, no. One of the things I want to know that isn't apparent is, will the HVAC system be on the roof and higher than the maximum building height?
Thank you. Your time is up.
Oh, great.
That's too bad. We got that question, I think. Now, we go back to Zoom, and it will be Matthew Trout, followed by Elizabeth Dritz and Roseanne Witt. Do we have Matthew?
Yes, I'm here.
Oh, hello.
Thank you so much, guys. Happy to be here. You know, I don't think, I mean, this is a no-brainer at this point, guys. Thousand Oaks is going to get units, kind of whether we like it or not. And I really couldn't think of a better company to be building these units for us here in our town. Rick Caruso's company has got a golden reputation. Rick Caruso's company has got a golden reputation. Everything they touch kind of becomes more beautiful. You know, if you look at Thousand Oaks Boulevard, the lake stands out. It's our most beautiful property on the Boulevard. So I'm all for it. I think it's a yes. And I'd love to have the Caruso team beautifying that parking lot. So I say it's a go. I'll let someone else talk. Thank you.
Thank you. Elizabeth Dritz, followed by Roseanne Witt and David Mead.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the city council. My name is Elizabeth Dritz and I've been a resident for 25 years. I'm here tonight speaking as the head of manufacturing for Takeda in Thousand Oaks in support of the Lakes Residential Project. We encourage this expansion of diverse housing options in the Thousand Oaks area. This will not only help us retain our current employees, but it also helps us attract candidates who might not be interested in buying or renting a house. We also like the proximity of the project to the Civic Arts Plaza for entertainment and the closeness of restaurants. Features like these in particular can help when we're trying to entice candidates who are contemplating moving to Thousand Oaks from bigger cities where they are accustomed to nearby entertainment and food options. And just thank you for the consideration.
Madam Mayor, may I ask a question of Ms. Dritz?
Yes, Ms. Dritz, if you're still there.
I am.
Councilmember Jones has a question for you.
Yeah, what would be the average salary of your employees?
Probably between 75 and 80K.
Okay. And you think that that would be affordable, these units?
I think it would be for the one bedrooms and the twos, yes. For a starting family, yes.
Okay. I don't know what the rents would be. I just wondered. Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Yeah, we heard that. So a two, a one bedroom and the twos is what we have right now going in, in the city. I would be surprised if, but pleased if that were the case with the Lakes project. Next, we have Roseanne Witt.
Hi, I'm Roseanne from TO. The 10,000 of us spent Thanksgiving in blackout to avoid the risk of wildfire sparked by power lines spanning drought parched landscapes encapsulates the need for clean, resilient local energy as a prerequisite for every project approval. Yet, a flurry of developers are rushing proposals before our Climate Action Plan and CalGreen 2022 Standards become law. Until then, you must protect our community. Last year, when Community Development Director Mark Towns said each project is assessed for community benefits, including will the developer commit to constructing new buildings to exceed green building standards? But not a single project approved since has actually bettered those mandates. Caruso Inc. verbally assures you of its commitment to sustainability and promised some Climate Coalition priorities like solar panels with battery storage, electric heating and cooling pumps, and 25 EV chargers. But without binding agreements, we cannot trust those promises will be kept post-approval. Though cutting 62% of emissions from transportation is hard, cutting 20% from gas in buildings is straightforward, simplifies construction, saves money, improves health, slows rising heat, and appeals to young workers. But Caruso plans to use mixed fuels without higher voltage outlets needed to ease the inevitable conversion to electric, thereby ensuring costly disruptive retrofits for tenants and avoidable air pollutants toxic to health and climate stability. Do not approve the Lakes as proposed. Meeting climate goals is an essential community benefit. Only our climate action is passed, until our Climate Action Plan is passed, only you can require compliance. Begin future-proofing new construction now. Every dollar invested in disaster mitigation saves six in recovery spending, saves lives and creates jobs.
Thank you. Your time is up. Next, David Mead, followed by Tim Gallagher.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. My name is David Mead. I'm the current Chair of the Board of Directors for TO Arts. I support this mixed-use residential development at the Lakes because it's going to be a positive benefit for the arts in Thousand Oaks. The addition of residential living in such close proximity to the Bank of America Performing Arts Center will likely result in their attendance at events held there. This will help strengthen and solidify the continued success of the arts in Thousand Oaks and will help TO Arts fulfill its mission. In addition, I believe the three resident companies, Five Star Theatricals, New West Symphony, and Pacific Festival Ballet will also benefit from having potential patrons in close proximity to the Performing Arts Center, which also benefits the city and TO Arts. Because ongoing success of these resident companies, which TO Arts significantly supports, will lead to continued success of the arts in Thousand Oaks. I also believe that having residents at the Lakes will add a vibrancy to the arts and cultural environment of the city and will play an important part in the downtown plan. Finally, I want to say that Caruso and the Lakes have been a great community partner with TO Arts and the alliance for the arts over the years, including their support during the pandemic for our drive-in concerts. And we believe that the proposed residential development will lead to many more successful collaborations in the future. In conclusion, I recommend a yes vote on the application. Thank you, and I invite everyone watching and listening to support the arts, especially today on Giving Tuesday. The Board of Directors of TO Arts is matching any gifts up to $2,500 in total. And we also highly recommend you come out and see a show at the Bank of America Performing Arts. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We will go next to Tim Gallagher, followed by Carrie Lynn. Do we have Mr. Gallagher?
No, Tim.
All right, then let's go to Carrie Lynn.
Hi there. It's actually Carrie Line. Thank you so much for giving me some space here. I'm a teacher and a coach up at Thousand Oaks High School, and I've been there for 21 years. And I just wanted to speak on behalf of this project as something that I really feel like could bring some vibrancy to the community, help our tax base. You know, we've got some declining enrollment and, you know, I think it would be great to see some more families moving up into the community. Also, you know, I love Thousand Oaks, but the Lakes, it's a great spot, but it could use a little bit of a kind of a facelift, a bit more energy. And it just seems like this is something that would kind of modernize Thousand Oaks and help to bring more kids in and help us to beef up our tax base and keep the schools that we work so hard to keep in great shape moving forward. And I think for our kids, too, I think it would give them more of a sense that Thousand Oaks is a place where they can go out and have some fun. They don't have to leave the community, go off to Los Angeles or something like that. And I think it could really be a fun and vibrant part of the community to see the Lakes kind of woken up and to bring this new set of housing here. So I think it seems like a great idea. I think it would be great for our tax base, great for our kids, a lot of fun. And that's kind of my spin on it, so I appreciate my chance to chip in and thanks for the time.
Thank you. Next, we have Lisa Powell, followed by Fu Deng and Jake Saranandia.
No, Lisa.
Okay, then Fu Deng. No, Fu Deng.
Hi, good evening. My name is Fu Deng and I work in Thousand Oaks. I believe that Thousand Oaks needs more housing developments and Caruso is the right company to build quality housing in the community destination centers. I support this project and its future development. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Jake Saranandia, followed by Joanne.
No, Jake.
How about Joanne? No, Joanne? You said yes.
I'm here. Good evening.
Hello.
Hi, my name is Joanne Habron. I work in Thousand Oaks and I approve Mr. Caruso's project. Thousand Oaks will only benefit for Mr. Caruso as his projects bring people together. His standards for high quality, cleanliness, hospitality, and safety will only serve to benefit the community. The company I work for has allowed me to work closely with Mr. Caruso's team for the past 15 years. And during that time, I've witnessed great professionalism from all involved in his businesses. More importantly, I've observed the growth of a community culture and the city of Thousand Oaks will continue to fit greatly with the goals and standards of these properties. Mr. Caruso cares and works to ensure that a diverse group of individuals will feel welcome at his properties and take significant steps to ensure that people feel welcome. I give my complete support for this development with the confidence that they will serve as a major benefit for the community of Thousand Oaks. Thank you and have a nice evening.
You as well. Ashley Deeringer, followed by Britt Nielsen.
Hi, my, good evening. My name is Ashley Evelyn Joe Dantcher. I'm speaking for myself. I work in Thousand Oaks and live in the community. I believe there should be more housing. I think Caruso does an amazing job with quality in buildings. He keeps the property very nice as well around. I think it'll be good for the new families and he has a history in the community as well. He shows for it as well and I approve. Thank you.
All right. Britt Nielsen, followed by Veronica, Veronica Haverbeck.
Hi, my name is Brett Nielsen and I am a 12-year resident of the community. I also am an employee of Caruso, very proud, 25-year-plus employee. And I just want to say on behalf of myself, living in a community, would love to see this project approved and built. My family, who I'm raising out here right now, loves all of our projects, loves the lakes, would love to see the vibrancy continue on the property, but most importantly, very proud of the projects that we build. And it's a true testament of what we've done for the community. And again, very proud to be in this community with my family living it. So with that, I would please ask for your support with this project and thank you for your time.
Thank you. And our last Zoom speaker is Veronica, second to last, Veronica Haverbeck. Do we have Veronica?
Good evening.
Yes, hello. There we go.
I am here. Okay, let me see if I can. Sorry, I will just start my video. Thank you. Good evening, Veronica Haverbeck, resident of Newbury Park since 1986. And very briefly, I would like to chime in and say to please vote no on this project. The city of Thousand Oaks needs affordable housing and not billionaires' giveaways. So if Mr. Caruso loves the city so much, I believe you have a moral obligation to the city and to have, so that the city of Thousand Oaks can meet the needs for inclusionary housing for all the residents. The city of Thousand Oaks has already exceeded market-grade housing and the need is affordable housing. So this is a great opportunity for him to build affordable housing. And unless he's going to do that, please vote no. Thank you and have a good evening.
Thank you. Our last Zoom speaker, well, how many more do we have? Because it keeps popping up more and more and more. Just two more? Okay. So Christina Burke and Isaac Yun. We're going to go back to him one more time. Christina.
Good evening. Thank you so much for your time, everybody. I will make this brief. I know it's very late. I would also like to oppose and vote no on this due to the affordable housing issue. There is a lack of it and there is a need for it. So I urge you, unless there's going to be that affordable housing built here in this city that I've lived in for over 30 years. Thank you so much and have a good night.
Thank you. And we will try once again. Isaac Yun.
Hello, can you hear me?
Now we can, yay.
Okay, awesome.
Third time's a charm.
Cool. So it's okay if it's audio only, right? No video? That's fine.
Sure, sure, that's fine.
Okay, cool. So I'm Isaac. My family's in Noguera. I'm currently in Alhambra, but I do work with TO Lakes onsite, not for them as an employee. My company, Wayne Daniels Production, we've been helping put together free community events at the Lakes Commons Promenade for about a decade before the company torch got passed down to me. And it's been my pleasure to continue working with them for these free community events, one of which is a weekly kids event at the Lakes. They put in the budget to provide free entertainment and shows for the families and young children. We also have these like yearly Easter events, Halloween events, hundreds of happy people. I don't see how this diminishes the arts in TO. Also, you know, I see people of all shapes and sizes and colors having such a good time there. And I know so many people are concerned about money, but I know the whole team behind TO Lakes wants to bring good things to the community. I truly believe this project will be a good thing for them. For the record, although I work with them, I don't gain anything from this. I wouldn't be spending the time here otherwise. Just for context, I have spoken out in other city council calls to stop certain buildings and change zoning in LA, but this project is helpful. So also, just to end on a somewhat unrelated note, you know, everybody in TO acts like they want affordable housing, but you know, when it comes down to it, they try to construct the high multi-story building somewhere else. Everybody would be trying to stop it. So that's it for me.
Thank you. And I believe this was our last speaker, yes? Yes, I'm told this was our last speaker. So what I will do is I will have staff comment on the questions or other concerns that were raised or mentioned, or not only concerns, but overall, address those. Thank you.
Absolutely, Madam Mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry. Can I just say real quick, from the written statement cards, 15 opposed and two in favor.
Madam Mayor, I'm going to just make a couple of quick comments, pass it over to Ms. Bascarino and then up to CDD staff. Just wanted to clarify one point that there seems to be some confusion around based on some of the comments, and that's relating to the negotiations. So when council met in February, one of the key components that they provided was to return with more compelling deal terms as it related to the project. And so one of the important pieces not to get lost in this is that we have an underlying lease deal. And that lease deal colored everything in this negotiation. And as with any negotiation, there are only a certain number of things that can be on the table at any given time and you have to prioritize those things. And so for, from the council's direction, to return with more compelling deal terms, that was staff's focus coming out of that meeting. And that drove the package that you have before you. Certainly, affordable housing is part of a discussion. It's part of a discussion both from a land use entitlement standpoint and as part of a negotiation standpoint. But when you prioritize and you have to prioritize regarding the deal that colors everything here, that's where we ended up with the package that we have here today. And I'll let Ms. Bascarino add any additional pieces to that. One more, one more piece. I think it was mentioned that from a staff standpoint, that we got into a bag deal before and why would you trust staff? Thankfully, none of us were here in there, so we have very plausible deniability in any of that deal from the early 2000s. But we were very committed to ensure that the package in the deal that's in front of you tonight was not just vetted in an echo chamber. And so we engaged the services of outside support, both on the economic side and on the land use and legal side. We actually worked with one of the preeminent land use attorneys in Southern California. He's actually here this evening with us, was on our side. So he was able to check assumptions and provide guidance throughout the process along with our economic consultants. So we absolutely had a strong team in this and just want to make sure everybody understood that we approached this very differently than perhaps earlier deals were approached.
Thank you. I just wanted to first address Councilmember Adams' request of the applicant. We did have a chance to get together with the applicant during this meeting and discuss your request that you made on the community benefits fee schedule. I think the applicant is amenable to your request and moving that first payment, as you mentioned, from the 48th month, so year four, to the 24th month, year two. And then instead of the final payment being in year 37, the final payment would be bumped up two years to year 35. There was also a provision in that community benefit fee schedule that if they did not close escrow within the first year, the first payment would be moved up a year to the 36 month, year three. We would just keep everything at year 24. So whether they closed escrow in a year or not, that first benefit, that pay- So whether they closed escrow in a year or not, that first benefit, that payment would begin in the 24th month regardless. So as I mentioned, we did talk with the applicant and they were amenable to your request. As far as some of the speaker comments tonight, I just wanted to clarify a couple of things. And there's a question about what happens if Caruso goes belly up? What happens to the community benefit fee payments? If they were to go belly up, go to bankrupt, the project is, the residential permanent building is sold. The community benefit fee schedule would then be assigned to the new owner of the residential property. I think Pat, Mr. Heher, mentioned in his presentation that the DA is five years, has a five-year term, but that the community benefit schedule extends beyond that five-year term because it's for a lengthier time. So that would be assigned to the new owner of the building. And then there was a comment made that the sales agreement is 37 years. I think I also mentioned the 13.1 million in community benefit payments is not tied to the sale. So the sales agreement is not a 37-year sales agreement. This is not a loan to Caruso. And there is also a comment by a speaker that I had mentioned the impairment, that they could exercise the impairment option five times during the length of the term, that that would extend the schedule to 47 years. That is not accurate because it's only five-year, five options. That would only extend the payments for five years. So if I'm gonna get down to 35, then it would be five years from that, so 40 years. It would not be 47 years. And then I'll turn it over to our Community Development Director, Mr. Parker.
Thank you, Ms. Boscarrino. Just in reference to some of the comments that were made this evening, in particular, the inclusionary housing ordinance, that will be addressed in alignment with our housing element in general plan update. It's one of the projects that we are sequencing in a specific order, and we anticipate returning to council with some preliminary steps towards moving forward with that in 2022. There was also reference to Viewshed in terms of a mountain ridgeline rule. I just want to reiterate that a regulation of that nature would be subjective, which is contrary to the objective standards that staff is working on and returning to council for review and hopefully adoption. And it also runs contrary to the direction that we've been pushed in in terms of establishing our new housing regulations. And with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Kearns, who will address a couple of more comments.
Thank you, Mr. Parker. Just want to address a couple of comments. There was a number of statements made regarding the height and an absolute limitation, number of stories and height limit. The height limit for the Civic Arts Plaza for this area is actually 75 feet. This is not a citywide standard. This is an isolated geographic location that has a 75-foot allowance. The developers within that allowance, the proposed project is at least, and we are not establishing a precedent that's gonna go across the city and be a new development standard. The other item I would like to address was the comment about having the entire facility EV-ready. The applicant will be required to install the EV-ready charging station areas in accordance with whatever green building code is in effect at the time of their plan check process. There'll be new codes adopted here in the next few years or so. And whatever those standards state is what they'll have to adhere to. However, we did hear the applicant state that they are gonna exceed the existing standards and actually install EV charging stations for a number of their parking spaces at the onset. That's all I have. Thank you.
And I just have one final comment with respect to the comment regarding the appraisal and the financial terms. Again, I think that there might be some confusion with respect to the financial terms of the project. The original appraisal, first of all, didn't take into account the language in the ground lease that limits the valuation methodology. And it was never intended by staff to be used for the purpose of identifying fair market value for any potential sale of the property. The city does not consider the land as surplus, but rather it is burdened, and we've discussed this. It's burdened based on, until 2099 actually, burdened based on the language in the ground lease. So again, and then as Ms. Boscarrino reminded, the community benefit fee, I just want to make it really clear, it is not part of the sale of the property. It is completely separate and is distinct, and it is related solely to the actual development of the project and not the sale of the property.
Thank you. Were there any additional comments from staff? That was it? Okay. Thank you very much. So it is 10:30. Yes, 10:30. So at 11 o'clock, I might need a vote if we're not done by then. We do have questions. Before I close the public hearing, I would like to ask my colleagues if they have any question.
I just.
Oh, there is a rebuttal. There is a rebuttal. Thank you. Yes. So that will be presented by whom? The rebuttal by the applicant. Is it going to be Chris? Okay. You have five minutes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you to everyone who came out to speak tonight. We really appreciate everyone taking their time and being here so late. I'll just make a few quick comments. As Commission pointed out at the hearing of the approximately 2,600 units that the city's trying to plan for, 860 of those are market rate. So there is a demand for market rate housing. We talked about the height and the general plan. That was brought up by the community a number of times. Just want to stress again that the Lakes is located in the Civic Arts Plaza specific plan, which is a different specific plan than the properties located surrounding it, which are located in Thousand Oaks Boulevard specific plan, which have a different height limit. Even though the general plan update has not been approved by council, it's not in effect and it doesn't apply to this project. You will recall that council approved to retain the height allowed by the existing specific plan in the land use alternatives update. So I'd just like to stress that. Regarding precedent, again, we are located next to an existing building that's about 107 feet tall, around 10 stories translated into residential terms. The 75-foot height building is about 30 feet shorter than that. A 65-foot height building would be about 40 feet shorter than that. We're also on a site that's about seven and a half acres large with a two-and-a-half acre park in front of us. And the building incorporates setbacks of 400 to 550 feet. So if there's another project in the city of Thousand Oaks that can bring that forward and propose a building that's 30 to 40 feet shorter than the adjacent building with those kind of setbacks, that may be a precedent that some of the community members speaking here tonight would actually support. And that I'd like to take a minute just to address the electric building, green building elements particularly. I know that's important to you, Mayor. We have incorporated 68 EV-ready spaces as part of the residential project. 25 of those will actually be installed, and as I mentioned, we're ready to install the rest if there's a demand. We are also incorporating bicycle parking. Some of those spaces will be ready for electric bicycles. We're installing the solar panels that I discussed earlier. The code does not require this. It requires solar ready. We've incorporated battery storage. The code does not require this. We're incorporating energy-efficient and sound-reducing double-pane windows and glazing systems. We're incorporating solar panel power to assist in heating of the hot water systems. The code does not require this. We've committed to heat pumps for heating and cooling, which again is above and beyond the code. We're also looking at roof membranes, reflective roof membranes, which are also known as cool roofs. We already talked about the stormwater measures that we're taking earlier. We're meeting the city's requirement to provide bins for rubbish recyclables and organics. We are committed to doing MERV 13 air filters, which is not required. And as I discussed before, we're incorporating low-flow plumbing fixtures. We met three times with the Canayo Climate Coalition in good faith. We understand that they would like an all-electric building, but we've committed to about 90% of what they've asked for. And just for the record, we are waiting for a return call from them. Thank you.
Very good. So that was just, yeah. Yeah, we had problems with the clock, so that was under five minutes. Thank you so much.
May I ask?
Councilmember Jones has a question for you, Ms. Robertson.
Yeah, what are your proposed rents for these apartments? If you could start with the bottom and then give us the top?
So as I mentioned earlier, the rents for the building haven't been established yet. Those will be established at the time that we move forward with bringing the units online. They will reflect market conditions, but we have incorporated a variety of units to appeal to a number of different demographics. We'll have a number of three bedrooms. We'll have a number of two bedrooms. We'll have a number of one bedrooms.
Well, I really wish you could tell me. I'm sorry. You have no idea, but you would expect people would have to have as an income to live? The mayor spoke about she'd like a teacher at Canayo School to live there. I've been a teacher all my life. Teachers start out at around $30,000 or $40,000 a year. I don't think they could afford these apartments, could they? I mean, the rent would take their whole salary.
$30,000 a year salary would require affordable, covenanted affordable housing, probably at a 30% AMI.
And you didn't ever, I don't mean to put you on the spot. I appreciate the presentation. It's been a wonderful presentation.
Thank you.
But you really never considered having affordable housing, I guess. Is that right?
We have considered having it. You know, when we were looking at the possibility of bringing residential to the site, we looked at a number of different scenarios. One of the things that drove the design is making sure that the project was the right size for the site. You know, we felt that bringing 303 units to this property didn't make sense given the existing uses and the balance that we're trying to strike. And we're, as the city mentioned, we're trying to strike a balance between a number of different priorities that are important to the city. Affordable housing, support of the arts, support of the Civic Arts Master Plan. And so bringing these residential units online will help to activate the space, retain the restaurateurs we have, attract new retailers and restaurateurs, and enliven the Boulevard, which will complement the city's efforts next door to re-envision the Civic Arts Plaza.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I haven't closed the public hearing yet because I want council to be able to still ask questions. But piggybacking on Mr. Jones's comments, it's the reason, the rents were the reason why I did a little bit of research over the Thanksgiving weekend. And I thought Americana brand is comparable, perhaps. 2,000 Oaks, where a studio apartment starts at, I thought it was $3,100 a month. And then two and three bedrooms go up to $5,800 a month, maybe even higher. So I would imagine that these new apartments here would probably run around the same. I'm just guessing. There were others, you have other complexes where it's obviously more expensive. But to be more realistic in terms of rents, I thought Americana would be more comparable. What do you think?
I mean, it is a different market. As I said, we have not determined the rents yet. They'll be established by the market at the time the units come online.
Uh huh, yeah. Mr. Councilmember McNamie.
Is this a time that we can ask questions of? People in the audience are asking for four stories. How they come up with four stories, it's not really important to me at this stage. What I am asking of you, why seven, why six, five, four, three, two, one story? How do you decide how many stories to build? And coming up with seven or six is where you need to be. Walk me through the process that you do here.
Sure. Well, there are a number of different competing interests. One of the things that we heard from the community is that preserving the character of Thousand Oaks Boulevard is very important. We've heard council also discuss that they want to avoid a canyonization effect. So we wanted to keep the building tucked as far away from Thousand Oaks Boulevard as possible. We also heard that access to surface parking for the commercial uses was important to the community, whereas parking for the residential made more sense tucked under the building. And so trying to balance those two things meant that we had to tuck the building farther back in the site, which meant that we had to go a little bit more vertical. You know, of course, we have to include a certain number of units to make the project feasible, and that's how we landed on the current design.
When you say feasible, are you saying to make enough money because you have enough units in order to pay for the construction costs?
Correct.
So if you went to four stories, would you be able to make it work financially?
Absolutely not.
If you went five stories, would you be able to make it work?
Absolutely not.
Six stories?
Six stories we can live with. We're committed to, we're committed to six stories if council is inclined to support that.
Now, seven stories is actually at the level, just slightly above the level of the sound wall, which currently exists and is part of the field of view that we have and we currently enjoy. My question to council is what are your thoughts on going to seven stories? Because it's about the same level as the sound wall. What are the other council members' thoughts on that? Would Caruso, if council says yes, seven stories would be just fine? Would you be willing to go back to seven stories if council feels to move in that direction? I'm asking, I'm asking Caruso, and then I'll come back to council.
We originally submitted a project for seven stories. We understand that there's been some concern from the community that six stories makes more sense. We also understand that the Commission made that recommendation. Look, we originally filed a seven-story application, but again, we're sensitive to the request for six stories. So we would be happy to listen to the conversation at council.
So what I would do later on, when we open up discussion with council and you're no longer have to answer any questions, then I'd like to open up that question to other council members, see what their thoughts are of moving to seven as compared to six.
With no affordable housing.
That's correct. I'm talking about the height of the building. That's where I'm at right now.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Mayor Potem Engler, any questions? Okay. Oh, comments. Okay. Mr. No, Mr. Jones, did you have any additional questions?
No questions.
Okay. I do have questions. And thank you very much, Ms. Robertson, for being so patient. I feel like because we've met several times, I can talk to you. So, and I'm asking this only because obviously I feel that I have a responsibility, an obligation to ask these questions. The, I'm the only council member here who was present for the two votes on this, on the original agreement, 2003 and 2004. I had nothing to do with anything that led up to that. So that's maybe why I would like to ask a few more questions. The, this project is still relying on the service road, correct? In the back, that is the artist's entrance behind, behind the parking lot.
Correct. That will provide access for 13 residential spaces and then additional 11 spaces.
Okay, so in addition to the land that is being sold, in my opinion, under value, it, I mean, it really is. It, you still need the easement from the city, and this will be an easement from the city, right? Or how will that work?
I believe it's an easement, yes.
And is that easement at any cost, or is that just being given for free?
So the easement is very similar to the other types of easements that are already associated with the property, allowing the mutual access and use of both the city parcel and the Caruso parcel. So this would, again, it's not an exclusive easement. It's an easement that would allow residents and employees to use the access road only for parking of those cars in those parking stalls. There'd also be limitations on their use. For example, if we have to close down the access road, we would be able to do so. They can't block the access road. They can't park along the side of the access road. So there's limitations to what they can do.
And the development agreement also includes the, your shared parking option, which is you have been allowed to park at the daycare center across the street and on the sixth floor of the parking structure. Is that, will that continue to be maintained?
That's part of the specific, existing specific plan, and it remains part of the specific plan as amended.
Yeah, I don't think it's part of the development agreement. Those are the provisions in the specific plan.
Okay, so residents at that complex will then be able to park at night when school is out across the street at the daycare center? The guests of the, of the residents?
Nothing, nothing with respect to that was changed in the specific plan. And I apologize, I haven't looked at the details of the specific plan, but if that's what was in existence, nothing has changed.
Okay.
With respect to the parking lot, the parking lot, I mean, the parking structure, it's a public parking structure. Anyone can park there. It just ensures through the specific plan, through a shared parking analysis, to provide for, you know, specifically provide for the opportunity of patrons at the Lakes to be able to park in the parking structure. But literally anybody can park in it, since it's a public parking structure.
And again, so guests of the residents at the Lakes can park then across the street by the daycare center. They cannot park at Select Plaza because Select Plaza has signs that they don't allow shared parking. So I guess guests might be parking over at the daycare center then.
I believe per the specific plan, that would require community development review.
Yeah, the Select Parking Plaza, that's private property. It's not owned by the city.
No.
So they have the right to enforce it.
Correct.
And shared parking, I just want to be really clear on what shared parking is. And I'm looking back at my CDD team on this to make sure I get it right. Shared parking is typically looking at the uses on a particular site and whether they're, whether it's more prone to allow for reduction in parking requirements based on the shared uses on that site. Did I get it right?
Nailed it.
Okay. Let's see, the HVAC system, where is it going and how high will that make the building?
So it will be rooftop mounted. We've incorporated a parapet around the building to screen the equipment. And there's also a condition incorporated as a, I think it's attached to the development permit that would require the equipment to be screened.
And how high?
So the parapet extends about a three and a half feet to four feet. So the idea is that it will extend about that high.
Above the sixty-five feet?
Correct.
So it will be maybe sixty-nine feet?
Correct, in very targeted locations.
Okay, so if the building were seventy-five feet, it would, could be up to eighty feet then, or seventy-nine feet?
The mechanical equipment, but it would be screened.
That's what I'm referencing, yes. Okay. So when you, when you made the community outreach presentations, you presented the design and the benefits of the, of this apartment complex, what it would bring to the community. But details of any development agreement negotiations were not disclosed during those community meetings, correct?
The development agreement negotiations weren't known yet, really, until, you know, right before commission. So we had a series of community meetings. One was just sort of a blue-sky listening session. The follow-ups were us presenting back to the community what we heard. And then the third was us presenting the project plans and getting feedback on that.
Okay. So I'm mentioning it because we didn't know how much the parcel was worth, what the appraisal was, or anything like that. And to be honest with you, I still didn't understand why the city spent twenty million dollars thirty years ago, and now it's worth less. But at any rate, it's, I guess we can blame the two thousand and four deal for that. Let's see. Do you anticipate the same service as at the other residential Caruso projects that offer concierge service, boutique service at this particular location?
Some of those details are still being worked out. We will have onsite security. We will have leasing. We will have management, and we will have some sort of services. But those exact details, you know, we're very, very early on in the process.
And then on the general plan vote that we took, the general plan is not effective, obviously. We did vote to have it mixed-use low at fifty-eight feet for the entire parcel. But as was mentioned by staff, the specific plan identifies still seventy-five feet. But the council's vote that night was to keep it at mixed-use low fifty-eight feet. So I just wanted to, so it's in conflict.
Madam Mayor, just want to make sure we get that right. So there's, and I'll have, Kelvin can speak to it because the action the council took was a little different than that.
So when I look at the map, the whole parcel was in that purple or magenta color, which was the mixed-use low.
That is correct. So when council took action on that parcel, they agreed to mix use low.
Yes.
However, there was a caveat that specifically called out to leave the height existing as it remained, which is seventy-five feet for that particular specific plan. So there was a policy in addition to the mixed-use low that did allow for that additional height to be applied through the specific plan.
I thought that's what I said, that the specific plan still allows for the seventy-five-foot height, even though that night the vote we took was for the commercial area there at fifty-eight feet, right?
That is correct.
Yeah, that's, that's what I thought I had said. I'm sorry if I wasn't clear. Okay. Let's see. I know at one point, we had envisioned synergy between the lakes and the campus master plan, and we're hoping for a public-private partnership, but it, we'll see how that will go.
Madam Mayor, I can speak to that because we actually did take a look at this concept as it relates to orientation. Granted that the campus master plan was in, is in still conceptual plan, but we wanted to ensure that anything that happened here didn't preclude what was envisioned and moved forward by the council on that. So alignment was looked at by both, by the planning team on that and discussed with Caruso. So nothing was precluded because of that. There are obviously likely to be some adjustments. The entire campus master plan will have to be kind of looked at in a post-pandemic lens. But that option still remains on the table, and certainly, nothing occurs here will preclude anything that was envisioned there.
Does that also include financial incentives or financial assistance?
Anything that happens on the campus master plan will be separate and apart. So it certainly doesn't stop us from engaging in discussions in terms of who and how we would like to partner moving forward there. So council knows you have about twenty-five million set aside currently for that, that priority. And, you know, we really are going to have to take a look at what happens here tonight and make a determination about what are the next steps regarding that and how do we revisit it, like I said, in a post-pandemic era.
Indeed. Does the development agreement contain anything about signage? I couldn't find anything that, given that the building is that high, that it might use signage for advertisement or anything like that facing the freeway. Was that discussed or considered?
Yeah, that was considered, Madam Mayor. It's actually contained in the specific plan. It allows for a certain number of signs. There's a sign program existing now for the commercial portion, but there are building signs and monument signs allowed as part of the specific plan.
But not on the residential building?
On the residential building as well.
Okay, signs that might be visible from the freeway?
Not visible from the freeway. It was on the, the north elevation, facing Thousand Oaks Boulevard.
Ah, okay. What kind of signs, like the name of the building?
Yeah, the normally, residential signs are normally non-illuminated, low-profile, just, or a monument sign out in front that identifies the name of the complex, but they're not illuminated.
I see, okay. And then I go back to, I'm sorry to have you stand there, but going back to the other project that, at three thirty-three La Cienega, which I think Caruso purchased in nineteen eighty-nine or so, and received entitlement and a vote by the LA City Council in, what was it, twenty seventeen or so. For some reason, I thought it had already been, it was already under construction. Now, that particular, and I'm using that as a comparison where there was, you know, gray-water connection, as I already mentioned, was offered. Affordable housing of ten percent, and it's a hundred and forty-five units and on one acre and a half. So I'm just curious why that is, then, now that you mention it, is not under construction yet?
We just haven't moved forward with design yet.
Okay, with a design, although, but there are.
We haven't moved forward into design development yet.
Okay, and, and here you would be ready to move much faster. What is the timetable for this?
We would like to start construction next year, which means we need to move into design as quickly as possible.
Okay. Let's see. I know it's been rushed, and I think the timeline has been dictated by the applicant. And I was just wondering why you are so eager to, you know, have us work through the holidays, Hanukkah, and all of that in order to get a vote. What is, was driving that expedited process?
Well, like I mentioned, we would really like to start construction next year, which means that we need to move into design development basically in December, tomorrow, which means that we need, we need the entitlements approved. Look, we want to revitalize the lakes. We want to attract exciting new restaurateurs and retailers. Bringing the residential online is a really important part of that, in addition to being part of a more comprehensive strategy for the city overall vis-à-vis Thousand Oaks Boulevard.
Okay, thank you. My other questions are for staff now. I appreciate it. Does anybody else have a question for Ms. Robertson? No, okay. Then I will ask some questions of staff, or council will, and then we can, but I will need a vote to go past eleven o'clock. All right. Madam Clerk, can you record that, please? Do you need a formal vote, or is a vote, okay, thank you. All right. Now to staff. So development funds are based on, of course, the construction costs and everything else, and that is standard for every developer that wants to build in the city, right? It's not anything special.
That's correct. Every development project that comes online is required to pay Quimby fees, is required to pay school fees, building permit fees. That's correct.
Okay, and we've been lucky enough to have had developers that are offering affordable housing units without seeking a density bonus.
That is correct. We have had some in the past couple of years that have done just that.
Okay. The... So, and just to be, also, again, to reiterate, as long as a parcel is owned by a public entity, no property taxes are paid.
That's correct. Governmental-owned properties are not subject to property tax. Unless it's leased out, then they pay the possessory interest taxes.
Okay. The workforce housing has been mentioned numerous times. Staff made the decision to focus on a revenue stream rather than on affordable housing. We've heard tonight that the emphasis really, or the need, is in low-income to very low-income. And we know that we are saturated in above-market or market-rate, yet according to the latest RENA numbers, we still could build more, I mean, not affordable, but market-rate or above-market-rate units. I think, what was the number, about eight hundred over the next?
Correct.
Sixteen years? But the emphasis, but we are lagging behind in the lower-income category.
That is correct. Eight sixty-eight for above-moderate.
And we haven't reached that because we allowed for the free market to dictate. And also, we haven't had an inclusionary housing ordinance that has teeth, or, you know, the in-lu fee was still at zero. We were, I remember last year, or earlier this year, we asked that an inclusionary ordinance be worked on, and it might come before the council in June or July. That didn't happen. And I think there were several reasons why that didn't happen. One was labor, correct, labor shortage, and also working on the general plan. And all the other projects put the inclusionary housing ordinance kind of on a, on a backburner, for lack of a better description.
The most important part, as our community development director mentioned, is the inclusionary housing piece is sequential, and it ties into the housing element. And so as council knows, you took action on the land use map in May. We've been working through our state process there, anticipate the housing element coming back to the city council. There's objective standards that'll follow that. And there is an inclusionary housing ordinance that will come in for consideration to the council after that component.
Thank you. And the reason I'm asking these questions is because we are making a decision to sell publicly-owned land, land that is owned by the taxpayers, which the city purchased at a, more than a premium thirty-plus years ago. And it has been, the value has obviously decreased quite a bit over thirty years rather than increased. I'm still in disbelief over the loss in value over thirty years. Nonetheless, we also discussed the importance of workforce housing, and that would be the teachers, and that would be the nurses, that would be the interns at Los Robos Hospital. I'm not sure where we're going to put them. Tonight, we'll set a precedent in that, for the first time, we have several speakers come before the council and said, you know what, it's Rick Caruso, he does excellent projects, and affordable housing is not necessary. Which, you know, we've required that of every developer, and yet tonight, we're not doing that. So that really bothers me. And I, I hope that this doesn't send a signal to other developers that will say, oh, look, you didn't do it for Caruso-affiliated, so why do I have to do that? Maybe you can speak to that? I mean, what kind of message is that sending to other developers that now see that they don't have to do or provide affordable housing?
Well, I think, one piece, and I'll let Tracy chime in as well, because I'm sure she has, has some thoughts about it. Certainly wish, we all wish we had different circumstances we were considering this entire negotiation around. We've said that from the beginning, but we have what we have, have a playing field working within, and we've done our level best to present council with a more compelling set of deal terms. It's certainly not perfect, recognize that. The beauty of this, though, is that we are prior to adoption of that general plan, and that gives council the ability to have this DA discussion, the development agreement discussion. As you look at development agreements, every project is different, and every project has its own unique set of things. We just heard Timber School, which had a historic reuse element as, as part of that. And so this tool that we have, and we have it for a finite amount of time here on these remaining projects, which is why they're being considered in the order in which they're being considered, gives us the ability to look at the issues as it relates to that parcel and that issue. And clearly, the glaring issue with this is the lease deal that's been in place. And so I, I don't think it's precedent-setting from that standpoint for future developers. Every project that is in the pipeline from a DA consideration today subsequent to this, I believe, well, some of them are still working through their works, but I believe they all have affordable housing because they're either all considering a density bonus, or they're, or they are incorporating affordable housing. So that's going to run us through this period in which you will have a consideration on an in-lu housing fee. So as you look downstream here, I can say with confidence that you're not creating a new precedent here. You're dealing with a very unique situation in this, this particular lease deal. And you have an opportunity for an off-ramp here. That's what we've put in front of you, and that's, that's really the truth about this particular project. We're hindered.
You know, I just wish that off-ramp included the actual units rather than spreading it out over, any payments spreading out over thirty-seven years because there is really an acute need for workforce housing.
So a couple of other things, just to tag on to what Drew was saying again. You know, I agree with him, this isn't precedent-setting because no other property in the city is burdened like this one. You know, I go back to what redevelopment law was created for, what it was intended for, you know? You, you find a piece of underutilized or blighted property, you redevelop it, you revitalize it, that adds more revenue to cities, and also had a huge affordability component. I want to be really, I mean, I want to be honest here. It's not just cities' lack of production of affordable housing. When you look at the lack of production, it relates specifically to the elimination of RDA.
Oh, yes, without a doubt.
Once that income source went away, there was no opportunity.
That goes without saying.
Absolutely. So you look at this property, when the city purchased the property back in?
Eighty-nine?
Eighty-nine. Obviously, I wasn't here for that, but, but the intention was, again, it had an RDA intention. You know, the intention was not by the city to make money on sale of the property. That was not the intention. The intention was to revitalize underutilized or blighted property. That was the whole reason why the land was purchased in the first place. So the burdens that are imposed on the property, they make a little bit more sense as to why those burdens were imposed on the property, because the city wasn't looking to make a profit off of the sale of the property. The city was more interested in creating a vibrant commercial retail venue. And so that's one of the things that staff focused on as well, is, is how to at least meet the intent of the initial purchase of the property. And then with, again, we've talked about the ground lease and the devaluation of the property. But, you know, you have to go back again to the true intent of the, of the acquisition of the property. And then finally, let's look at the housing element and the monumental task that you guys just went through back in May. You guys endorsed a land use map that will provide for housing opportunities for the next, how many years? Thirty-five years, forty-five years, fifty-five years? And a housing element that will show to the state that we will meet our RENA obligations during this next housing cycle. So we have other opportunities. And then finally, with respect to the community benefit fee, Clutter, you and I had a personal conversation about this. And if we had, if we had, if our inclusionary housing ordinance was above zero, they would have an opportunity to cash out. They would have an opportunity to pay an in-lu fee. And I look at this community benefit fee as very similar to an in-lu fee because it is being paid on a per-unit, on a per-unit basis, which is very similar to what an in-lu fee payment would be made in the first place. So, yes, there are no strings attached to that. It's always up to the city council as to prioritizing where that money goes, which is no different than other type of development. is no different than other type of development funds that are paid. But I look at this as very similar, very akin to an in-lu fee payment that is being made for not providing affordable housing on the particular site.
Yes, and we have had projects before us where an in-lu fee was negotiated by staff, and I think one of them, I forget which project it was, was over a million dollars, and it went into the Housing Trust Fund where it's collected.
Yeah, that was Centex back in, I don't think it was a million dollars, it was Centex back in, like, two thousand and six-ish.
And it went into a Housing Trust Fund, which is, which would have been my preference to have that, but that is not the case in this agreement either. So, at any rate, I think I've asked enough questions, and if there are no further questions by my colleagues, I will close the public hearing and then open it up for a discussion. And, discussion first, please, no motion. Discussion first, yes. No, discussion first.
No.
No, because, no, no, actually, Mr. McNamie had, Councilmember McNamie, discussion because he had a question regarding the number of stories.
I had my hand up first, mayor, so, please.
Okay, who did? I'm sorry.
But we can discuss all you want.
No, he wanted to ask the question.
It is going to boil down to a motion.
Of course it will.
Al, my thought was, if we discuss beforehand, we come down with a motion, it may be cleaner.
Okay.
So, Al, do you want to lead a discussion here, or you want me to jump in here? It's your choice.
Well, if it's okay with you, let me start, and we could definitely discuss the height, without question. And I think Tracy had a good point there, wait a minute, this mask off, about this, you know, this trailing income stream is, in fact, an in-lu fee. In lieu of affordable housing, we get this income stream. Anyway, and you also mentioned, we did a general plan update this year, the first one in fifty years in this city. It's amazing, and we all agreed on the strategies, the key strategies with this general plan update, and it's amazing how many of those strategies match this project tonight, that we all agreed on. A diversity of all kinds of housing types, protecting single-family neighborhoods from development, creating a meeting and gathering space, fostering a downtown here in the City of Thousand Oaks, revitalizing underutilized land, all these things we agreed on, and this project accomplishes those things. We also agreed on a downtown core master plan that would run from Herb's Road to Caneo School, and we agreed on a campus master plan as well, that would encompass the twenty acres that we're sitting on here. And one thing we, is part of that, is that our vibrant downtown core will be enhanced by a critical mass of people within walking distance, and this project accomplished that as well. So, this is really a test, a test about how serious we are about creating a downtown. This is our first real test. You know, this is a legacy project, there's no question about it, and it requires a legacy vote from all of us. And, you know, when I look at what a no vote would mean, when I look at the status quo, when I look at no income till as far out as 2099, when I look at a struggling retail center with a 50% vacancy rate, it could be even more at this point, and I've been there, believe me, on Sundays, nobody's there, you know? This is the heart of our downtown. This is a symbol of our city. When I look at a parking lot, an underutilized parking lot, you ever go to that parking lot on Sunday afternoon? Anybody there? No. Well, okay, but I go there, believe me. And it's without question, an underutilized, two-acre parking lot. But then, I look at the other side of it, a yes vote. I mean, this, folks, we have an opportunity here, in my opinion. We have an opportunity, and you ever hear the old expression, opportunity only knocks once? I think we're only going to get one knock on this. And we have an opportunity to get out from underneath an unfavorable deal, and how many times have I heard from my constituents, you gotta fix this deal? Okay? We have a chance to do just that. And think about this too, for a minute, and this gets overlooked. The Caruso Company's investing probably close to a hundred million dollars in our community with the construction of this building. A hundred million dollars. That's a lot of money. We get a thirteen-million-dollar income stream, we revitalize the lakes, the property tax goes up, the sales tax goes up, we get the economic multiplier effect. Ask all the little businesses around there. Believe me, I go to them on Sundays. Where is everybody? Leoni's Water Lice, Water Lice, beautiful, Water Ice, pardon me, you know, Mokeka, the Bunk Kakes, Beckman Dry Cleaners, I've been there. We need people, we need some people to help these businesses. And you know what? We're not taking up one acre of open space with this, not one acre, and we're not invading any single-family neighborhoods, are we? Fifty percent of the city's single-family neighborhoods, forty percent's open space, untouched, untouched, which is exactly what the constituents have asked us to do. In fact, our constituents have asked us to put in housing, and they've asked us to put it in on the 101 corridor, which is exactly where this is, the 101 corridor. So, just one other quick thing, you know, a call came in today from a fellow by the name of Peter Moglia. He is the CEO of Alexandria Real Estate Investment Trust. They are investing, literally, literally, hundreds of millions of dollars into our biotech hub. They're building buildings, they're building laboratories for new startup companies like Capsida, like Atara. It's incredible what's happening out there. Peter said, in no uncertain terms, this is exactly the kind of housing they're looking for, exactly, because these young professionals with relatively high incomes, they don't necessarily want to buy a house. They don't want the households of homeownership and the property tax and all the stuff that goes with it, because they're mobile. So, they might be here for two or three years, their company gets bought out, and they're gone. But this is exactly the kind of housing these folks will be looking for. And I know I've told this story many times, I went to Amgen, I think I was the mayor at the time, and we, as we went to the left, we were speaking with all the Amgen bigwigs, what can we do for you? What's the most important thing to Amgen? You know what they said? Build us a downtown. This is Amgen, Dow 30 Company, seven thousand employees. So, first time around, I guess we can look back, some mistakes were made. This time around, I don't want to make the same mistakes again. It's a legacy project, it's got a lot of pluses, way more pluses, in my opinion, than minuses. And so, you don't want me to make a motion?
You can go ahead and make a motion, but I know that Councilmember McNamie was going to present.
My motion would be simply that we approve Staff's recommendations, eight A, and all the recommendations.
One through six?
Yeah, one through six. We add that it will be, in fact, a six-story project. That's appealing to me, I appreciate the fact that they were willing to come down a story. And as Jamie mentioned, we accelerate that payment schedule, go from the first initial payment starting at two years versus four. Kevin?
Before you go there, I just want to interrupt, because before you take a vote, depending on whatever motion's on the table, I do need to add some clarifying language based on the changes that would be made. So, just give me, give me a moment to add all of that into the record, to make it clear before you actually vote on the motion.
Okay, but that would be my motion, but we can certainly discuss it.
Councilmember McNamie.
Ms. Noonan, you want us to wait on discussion while you write this down, or do you have to do it?
We can discuss.
Okay, great. Just don't want to, don't want to take you out of sync. Very good. Again, I look at six stories being below the sound wall. I want to preserve the sightline that we have for our beautiful mountains. Seven stories is only twelve feet above, which we don't lose that sightline, based on the renderings I've seen. By keeping it at seven stories, though, now we add eighty thousand dollars in legacy money to come in over the next thirty-seven years, which other councils and city can benefit from. So, I'm looking at the benefit of going to seven floors with not really losing anything as far as our sightline, and that's additional money versus six floors, we lose that money for future councils and city to benefit. So, that's why I'm arguing, is it worth going to seven floors to help the future generations that come into the city with additional revenue at eighty thousand dollars per unit? That's the question I'm posing to my fellow council members. What are your thoughts? Al, I mean, Bob?
No, that's a valid point, Kevin, a valid point with an extra, oh, I'm sorry, you said Al's.
Oh, Mayor Potem England wanted to.
Oh, I beg your pardon.
Kevin said Al, he looked over me.
You guys look so similar.
Oh, yes.
I appreciate that Caruso, in meeting the city and its bargaining with us as a city, listen to the public, listen to members of staff, listen to members of the council, I imagine, and agree to a six-story. I appreciate that seven-story might give us a little bit more in terms of legacy and money coming in, but in response to the public, I think keeping it at six is where I would like to be. In terms of the overall package, and I think we have to look at this as an overall package, I try to, I always try to look at these things simplified in my own mind as to where we can go forward with it. I also look into the past a little bit and see what was originally thought of for this area, and I'll hearken back to what my colleague Al said a little while ago. There's, this ties in a lot to our campus master plan, but I'll go even a little bit further back in the Civic Arts Plaza Plan. In nineteen eighty-two, the General Plan Review Committee recommended the combination of mixed-use, commercial, and residential uses for the Jungleland area within a height overlay. That was in nineteen eighty-two. So, those are the types of legacy things that I think we need to look at as well, in terms of what was planned for this area over the years, and the fact that now we are looking at a possibility of bringing that forward is exciting, in my opinion. After all these years, nineteen eighty-two is, what, forty years since we've been planning this thing? So, I look at, I look at this really in three ways. There's really three steps here. There's a sale of the property, there's the, we have to decide on whether we're going to change the zoning to a mixed-use type zoning, and then there's the overall, as the city manager pointed out, the overall development agreement that we have been saddled with over the years, and then we have a chance to maybe adjust. So, the sale of the property. You heard the questioning from the public, from the council, how did we get to this number of two million dollars? The appraisals came in, and that was almost the center point of the negotiations. So, two million dollars, that's the sale of the property. I would agree with the mayor, it seems ridiculously low to me, but I also recognize that the property was heavily encumbered and could not bring anymore. We had professional appraisers giving us that information. The change to mixed-use goes back to nineteen eighty-two. Let's make this a mixed-use property. Let's do a horizontal mixed-use that ties into the campus master plan. This is an important aspect of what we're trying to do to create this downtown, that since I moved here in nineteen ninety, the public has been asking for a downtown to Thousand Oaks. So, this is another step along that way. So, moving to a mixed-use approach for this property is probably the way we should go. And finally, the third point of the discussion, in my mind at least, is converting this 2004 agreement that, in my mind, was not a great deal for anybody. It was not a good deal for Caruso, it was a terrible deal for the city. But that is water over the bridge, well, under the bridge and over the dam. So, what do we have now? What are we coming forward with now? We have a proposal for a hundred and sixty-five units, and in my mind, we could call it what we want, you know, we could call it a community fund, or we can call it a housing fund, however we call it, it's still going to be eighty thousand dollars a year per unit, going into the future, that, in my mind, is a steady stream of income to help us with our affordable housing. I think the mayor and I probably are some of the strongest advocates for affordable housing. And on my balance sheet, on the negative side of this, is that there is no embedded affordable housing in this project. That is ameliated, in my mind, by the cash that is going to be coming to the city over a period of the next thirty-five years. That is, it makes it a little bit better for me. It is a large building, it's a large, and one of the speakers said that one of the council members didn't like the building. It's not my favorite style of building. I prefer more of a building that is more akin to what the promenade is, but that's my personal style, that's my personal liking of a building. But, and it is not a hundred percent electric, which I would probably like, but there's two people in my life that I've always thought, had good points and spoke well. One was Ronald Reagan. Ronald Reagan said, if I get eighty percent of what I want, that's a win. What Caruso is proposing here in terms of the environmental aspects is definitely a win. And it may not be in writing, but I think Caruso is a firm that we can trust, and I think they have integrity that will bring forward those things that we would really like to see. And then, the bottom line for me is that it provides housing. Whether or not it's, you know, officially affordable or not, it provides housing, and we need housing across the board, and I appreciate what the mayor's saying, is that we need low-income housing, but we also need housing, and this will provide a hundred and sixty-five units. Finally, I think it's, there's never a perfect project. This is, this is a good project. On balance, I think, it's something that I can support, and it's being brought to us by a company that has quality behind their name. We have examples of it in our own town, you can go elsewhere in LA and see a company that builds quality product. And I appreciate Caruso coming to Thousand Oaks and trying to revive this Lakes project.
Okay, so, I'm sorry, Councilmember Adam, did you want to say something, or was, are we still asking, or, Councilmember McNamie, you were asking about seven stories?
Well, as you as the mayor, I was hoping you'd just perhaps pull the council members to see your thought. Bob is happy with six. Al, I don't know where you are.
No, I definitely hear where you're coming from, and you're right, it probably would mean a few more units. However, I think even at six stories, we could be looking at maybe a hundred and forty-five, maybe a hundred and fifty. So, I just feel more comfortable with the six. I really do, yeah. And that's the motion I made, so.
Okay. Ed, what's your thoughts?
Well, I don't mean to be a wet blanket, but I'm not in favor of the project. I'll be glad to give you my reasons if...
No, that's okay, no, we're fine.
I mean, I know Al said that he couldn't understand how anybody could vote no, but I guess I'll have to tell you.
Thank you. Good, thank you, Paul, I appreciate that.
I'm disappointed, that, I just wrote down some notes, that this project will have no affordable units, and I am not opposed to apartments. I voted for two projects in Newbury Park, I voted to give the green light to two large projects, you know, Rancho Caneo and so forth, so, I'm not opposed to apartments, but I would like to see affordable units. Rather than a high-rise of market-rate apartments, I would support a lower building with affordable units. And I don't think the belief that this may be a good financial arrangement should influence our evaluation of a land use project. I think a land use project ought to stand on its own, and I don't, I think there's the temptation of doing, you know, giving into something on a land use project, because you might get a better financial benefit, and I don't, I don't like that. I think the financial... I think the financial results may be significant, but they are not precise, and they would be hidden from view. If you build a six or seven, 165-unit apartment building, that's going to be very obvious to everybody. I still think there are problems with traffic and the parking lot. I think this will generate more cars, 165 units, than is anticipated. I think there will still be people who want to use this for the Civic Arts Plaza, and I think there will be a conflict with the people that want to use it to go to the Lakes Mall. So that bothers me. Also, we've been told that affordable housing is, a low income housing for a small family is $85,000 a year. I don't believe, there are many young professionals that are going to be making $85,000 a year. If there are, they'll probably make less, and that would mean, it would probably take two incomes, I think. I think it's logical. It would probably take two incomes of young people to afford this housing. I know teachers couldn't afford it, beginning firemen, cops couldn't afford it. They'd have to. And if they have another income, it's probably a spouse, which would probably indicate children. What would the children do for recreation? Or would they ride their bikes or their skateboards? I spoke to a park professional yesterday, someone that all of us know, and I said, what would you do if you had children and you lived in these apartments? He said, well, I'd put them in the car and drive somewhere where they could have recreation. I saw the part of the Planning Commission meeting, and they said Estella Park, Byer Park, and Parque de la Paz are near. Well, Estella and Byer are less than a half an acre, and there's no place for softball or soccer. So these are tiny parks, and, and they'd have to cross Thousand Oaks Boulevard to go to Estella or Byer. But the main thing I'm worried about is the precedent. I've heard there's not a precedent. There's not a precedent? Well, there may be not a precedent if somebody knows all the intricacies of the fact that this land was somehow given a higher, you know, ability for a higher building, okay? But you can bet that there's going to be somebody that says, wait a minute, you built a six or seven-story, 165-unit apartment house there? You know, well, I want one here. I mean, I think we're starting down the wrong path. So the main thing I'm worried about is precedent, and I think people will try to use it as precedent, even though maybe technically they shouldn't. You know, my wife and I grew up in Southern California, she in Burbank and I in Glendale. When we were young, these were semi-rural cities. The highest building except for the Masonic Temple on, on Brand was two stories, okay? I was there the other, we, we both went back and we were dismayed at what we saw in Burbank and Glendale. In fact, we had a traffic jam on Brand Boulevard, some people were trying to get into a parking structure, and the line of cars went clear out to Brand Boulevard. I think that's what we're starting down the road to. I, I just worry that pretty soon the Thousand Oaks is going to resemble, you know, downtown Glendale or LA even. And let me just say in conclusion, I'm, I'm not a dramatic person. I've sat here for, what is this, five and a half hours, and I've tried to be open-minded about everything I've heard, okay? But I believe the day this project goes forward is the day we will begin to abandon our rustic, lovely, semi-rural community and start down a road toward urbanization, and I'm, I'm afraid of it. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. And we have a motion on the floor. We will vote in, in just a minute. First of all, I want to say that I, I have frequented, I don't know whose phone that is. Oh, the police chief. All right. The, the, look, 2004 was a vote that I, I didn't really want to relive, and, and, and I have come to appreciate the lakes quite a bit. In fact, there were many times where my friends and I and their kids from school, we felt that we were the only ones, you know, supporting the lakes because we were, you know, almost, I mean, several times a week we would go to CPK, or Mommy Burger, and Sabor, and PF Chang's, and I remember going when it was a Ben &amp; Jerry's, or when it was a Coffee Bean. So I've really come to appreciate the lakes. It's gorgeous, and especially the ice rink. And I was disappointed to see that this year we didn't have the ice rink again, but I understand because we have COVID, and we're still dealing with that. So don't get me wrong, I, I totally, totally appreciate the product, the brand that is Caruso. It is world-renowned, it is respected, and everything he touches seemingly turns to gold, except, you know, with, with, with the lakes. So I, I really, I feel that there is a history in Thousand Oaks with Caruso, with Village at Moore Park and so forth. Caruso is known to, to give you experiences. I mean, how many tree lightings have there been? Families with their children, those are memories they will forever, forever remember. Those are experiences that Caruso is known for, and I have no doubt that this particular building will be leased at 100% in no time, because that's what his other projects show. There is, there is no doubt about that. And, and I think that's, that's wonderful. That's wonderful. So don't get me wrong, you know, I, really, I, I mentioned the concern that I have regarding the affordable housing, and I'm very sorry that that did not come to fruition and that a different off-ramp was taken. I, I do regret that. I feel that with the acute need for workforce housing, we, we need to provide workforce housing. I don't think that the interns at Los Robles can, will be able to afford by themselves a one-bedroom apartment, and will probably have to have roommates. And, you know, it's okay to have roommates. Overcrowding is apparently also one of the issues that we have in Thousand Oaks, but we, we, we can't kid ourselves to say that this is going to be workforce housing unless it is a dual income. I don't think that two first-grade teachers at Cunejo Elementary are going to be able to afford it. I mean, and that's just my guess. I hope I'm wrong, but that is why I was trying to do some research as to the rates, the rental rates that Caruso has. We have now listened for almost two years from local groups, very much for high-density and affordable housing, and it is surprising that it was crickets tonight from them, that there was no mention of affordable housing at all. So when I say that I'm for the Inclusionary Housing Ordinance, I mean it, but I can't do it if, if I'm by myself. When I say we need workforce housing, I mean that. And we have demanded that of every developer that has come before the council with a pre-screening. And it, I find it extremely tough to approve a project nowadays that doesn't provide enough workforce housing. And remember, workforce housing, I just had this piece of paper here, the Cunejo Valley Unified School District Schedule. Someone with a BA, starting out, makes $54,000 a year, $54,000 a year. Someone that has a BA or more, or a doctorate, starts out at $62,000 a year. I, I mean, please tell me that they will be able to afford to live there. I, I don't know if they, if they will be. So when a family has an income of $90,000 a year, a household of four persons, that is considered low income already, and then the numbers go down from there. Unfortunately, $90,000 sounds like a lot of money, but it isn't in California. It isn't. So I, I don't want to give up on my commitment to provide affordable housing, and I wish this hadn't been rushed. To give us this development agreement on the eve of Thanksgiving, and then to have to read it and not have any time to discuss, to renegotiate, I wish we would have been given an extension to look at this again and see if we can reverse some of the items that were negotiated, and then see if we can provide affordable housing. Then I could afford, I mean, then I could support this project. But there is no time. There is no time. It couldn't wait until the second meeting in December, apparently. It couldn't wait until the first meeting in January. This is a major, major development agreement that needed more scrutiny, and I regret that I don't have a chance to go back and find some wiggle room there. It's unfortunate that tonight is take it or leave it. When I voted yes for the pre-screen at the beginning of the year, I was really, really excited at the option of renegotiating something. I was really excited. And I agree, this is an important vote, and nothing would send a stronger signal than a 5-0 vote. But I, I'm sorry to say that I can't do it. It's going to be a 3-2 vote, just like it was in 2004. And that's that. And again, I, that's, that's all I can say, but I wish you the best of luck. I know it will be a quality project. It's nothing personal. And looking forward to the new energy and vibrant downtown. And with that, Madam Clerk?
So prior to taking the vote again, I just want to make sure that the record is clear based on the reduction of the floors from seven stories to six, and the modification to the community benefit schedule starting at year, month 24 rather than month 48. And also, there's also some other areas in the omnibus resolution in particular with respect to what the Planning Commission did. I, I just want to make it clear that staff will be making revisions to the omnibus resolution and the development agreement to make it clear that it is a reduction of six stories, that the site plans that were submitted on November 8th, which are referenced in the omnibus resolutions, that those will be modified to reflect the changes that the city council approved as part of the project. And that, and also, I just want to clarify, there was one mistake made in one part of the resolution where it indicated that the measure allocation was for 165 units. Again, it was for 228 units, but the actual project in totumis will be 165.
And you got, and you got the typo that Councilmember Engler found.
And I got the typo. We'll fix the typo, too. So there are going to be some, some, some cleanup language, some changes that are being made, but they're just minor modifications to reflect what the city council is.
I wanted to also express my thank you again to Chris Robertson and Bryce. You, you were really good about, well, more, Chris, I met with you once, Bryce, really met and discussed and gave updates and all that, and you worked really hard, and I do appreciate that. I mean, you are a Class A team, and I expect nothing less from Rick Caruso. So it was great. All right. And with that, Madam Clerk, would you please?
Well, wait a minute. I have to, since I made the motion, I have to.
Oh, go ahead. Yes, yes.
Well, I just accept, you know, Tracy's insertions into the motion. That's all good. And, you know, Claudia, I don't really feel rushed on this. The staff's been working on it since April. We don't have to get in debate about it, but I'm just saying how I feel. And I, and I'll say this to you, with all due respect, and I mean this, you know, you and I are friends, I hope you will reconsider some of your positions on some of the upcoming housing projects, specifically the Kmart project, which, which includes 50 affordable units.
The Kmart is not before us tonight.
What's that?
The Kmart is not before us tonight.
I understand that, but I'm just speaking to you.
Is he lobbying me?
No, no, I'm not lobbying. Al de Claudia.
Tracy is shaking her head. Don't make me jump out of my seat.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, this is, yeah, it, yeah, it would be.
Well, we've already, we pre-screened the project. It's public knowledge about how the vote went, and.
No, Tracy says no, stop talking. Sorry. Sorry about that.
I know. I, a little bit thin. Anyway, the, the motion stands. I accept the insertions from our city attorney. Take it away, Mayor.
No, thank you. No, actually, it, it was rushed because while we got some updates from staff, it wasn't really made public until the October, November 15th, well, a few days before that Planning Commission meeting, and still it didn't have all the details until Wednesday, the eve of Thanksgiving, when we had power outages. So I, I didn't think that that was fair to the residents. But at any rate, yes, I call for a vote now. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Adam?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
No.
Councilmember McNamie?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Engler?
Yes.
And Madam, Mayor Bill De La Pena.
Madam Mayor Bill De La Pena. And I regret to say no. Thank you very much. Congratulations.
Yeah.
Mayor, that motion carries 3 to 2 with Councilmember Jones voting no and Mayor Bill De La Pena voting no, and I do have two ordinance titles to read into the record. An ordinance amending specific plan number 11, 2200 East Thousand Oaks Boulevard, and its associated general plan amendment and authorizing the land uses and development standards in said specific plan, applicant TO Lakes LLC, and an ordinance approving a development agreement, 2200 East Thousand Oaks Boulevard, applicant TO Lakes LLC.
Thank, thank you very much. Appreciate that. I was really hoping for a unanimous vote, but it didn't happen. All right. Then we are now going to our city manager, Mr. Drew Powers.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just to wrap up, our next meeting will be a week from tonight. It'll be our annual reorganization meeting here on the 7th of December. I would be remiss if I didn't take just a quick moment to acknowledge that, A, I know this was a difficult and challenging hearing for everybody involved, but B, to say a moment of appreciation to our entire team. This has been a very, very complicated process. I know it didn't meet everyone's mark where it wanted to be, but our team worked really hard on this, and I'm incredibly proud to be surrounded by these professionals that worked on this to bring the package here. So I just wanted to give a moment of appreciation to them.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, I, I'd like to say that I, reading that staff report, there was an awful lot of work that went into that, and a lot of people, really. And I'm really proud of our staff for being able to do that, all of you. Thank you.
And at the rate of speed you did it, so that's also very impressive. All right. And with that, I don't think we have any other issues to discuss, and then the meeting will be adjourned until the reorganization next Tuesday. We will be electing or selecting a new mayor, and Mayor Protem. This was officially my last meeting as mayor. Have a good night.
[applause][1670.76]